Mayor Phil Seth. Mayor Phil Seth. Vice Mayor Fine.
Here.
Councilmember Niss.
Yes.
Councilmember Koo.
Yes.
Councilmember Tanaka. Six present.
Hi, I'm Divya, nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
So the first item on the agenda is a joint study session with the Palo Alto Youth Council. And could the Youth Council please introduce themselves? Go ahead. Starting with Divya.
Hi, everyone. My name is Divya Ganesan. I'm the president of the Palo Alto Youth Council, and this is my second year serving.
Hey, everyone. My name is Faisal Oje. I'm the vice president, and this is also my second year serving.
Hi, my name's Emily Chan, and I'm the secretary for the Palo Alto Youth Council, and this is my first year serving.
Hi, everyone. My name is Jonathan, and this is my fourth year on the Youth Council.
And my name is Tyler Stetson. I am the community services manager for the Coverly Community Center, and I'd first off like to thank the council for giving us the opportunity to present tonight. And I'm going to go ahead and turn it back to our president, Divya.
Anishka. Anishka.
Hi, I'm Anishka, and this is my second year on the Youth Council.
Hello, my name is Justin Cho, and this is my first year serving as a member of the Palo Alto Youth Council.
Hi, my name is Julia Zeitlin, and this is my first year serving on the Palo Alto Youth Council.
Hi, my name is Daniel, and this is my second year on the Palo Alto Youth Council.
Hello, I'm Sarah Martenson, and this is also my second year on the Youth Council.
Thank you. First, we want to say thank you so much to the city council for hosting us today. We're excited to share our thoughts and also our goals for this year. I'm going to start by talking about who we are. We come from a myriad of schools. We represent Gunn, Pali, Castilla, Cahela, and U this year. We represent Harker as well, which is very exciting for us. And our goal is to address the youth needs and communicate city affairs to them. And we use city funding to promote these activities as well as our purpose as well. Again, here's a summary of our officers. We are so happy that more of our officers could come today to represent us.
Okay, so we're just going to give you a little rundown of our 2018-2019 projects from last year. So our first project that we did was the final study cram slam. So we threw the study cram slam last year in December. The event lasted for three days, each day starting at 5:00 and ending at 8:30. The event took place in two rooms at the Mitchell Park Community Center. We partnered with AYM, a Calgrate grad group, which provided us with tutoring services for no fee. We also partnered with a service dog group that provided service dogs. Lastly, we provided dinner for each night. The first night pizza, the second night Chipotle, and the third night In-N-Out. This event was one of our most successful events, and we had over 200 people present there. These are pictures.
And another event that we have last year was a racing hearts, and it was really successful in terms of publicizing PAYC with the local teachers, high schoolers, and prospective members. And during the event, we also supported the racers for the race with water and our merges.
Another event we're very proud of here at the Palo Alto Youth Council is the vape survey in which we publicized the detrimental effects of vaping, and we gave the city council a better idea of why teens in this community vape. Yes.
So in the 2018-2019 term, PAYC helped updated the Mitchell Park Teen Services website. Through the website, we compiled new opportunities for internships, jobs, and volunteer work in the Palo Alto area. The website has also been a helpful tool to help publicize our events as well as TAB's events.
So last year, we hosted one of our biggest event collaborating with TAB and TAC. And it was inaugural inter-school bonding event, and we had many student performers in terms of informs of bands and dance groups come performing at our open mic. And we also had fun activities such as glow-in-the-dark graffiti and silent disco, and there was also food trucks during the event.
So the results from Palo Palooza, so over 200 teens attended last year from Gunn, Pali, and other high schools. Approximately 30 teen groups auditioned for the open mic, and then 90% of the teens surveyed after the event highly rating it. And so we would like to continue this this year. So next, we're going to be talking a little bit about our upcoming projects for this year. So to kick off the year, we had a democratic debate watch party, and it was a really successful event with over 30 members attending. And Emily will be talking a little bit about our political engagement theme in a bit. But basically, the main purpose of this event was to provide a resource for teens interested in policy.
And adding on to Anishka, we're now going to talk about our goals for this year. You may have noticed that many of our events were focused on integrating the teen community, and we want to continue to do that. And we also want to focus on engaging more with city council. As a group, we've decided that we want to focus on representing the teen community in the best way to city council, focusing on policy and using a combination of events and projects to do that. The second thing we want to do is increase the presence of the city council and Youth Council on city council meetings. That means coming to more study sessions and having more input from the council in general on your opinions on what we need to focus on as a teen community.
So now, we're going to talk about our specific themes for this year. So one of the themes that PAYC is focusing on is political engagement. Our goals are to engage and prepare youth through voter registration drives and debate watch parties.
Another one of the themes that we want to continue pursuing this year is vaping. So last year, we conducted a survey with relative success, and we kind of want to build on that this year. And what we want to do is first, we want to, so last year, we distributed a survey asking why people vaped, and this year, we want to kind of ask for solutions. What do people think we can do to address the vaping problem? And collect student responses, and then also use that student response to kind of help inform the parents, and maybe host potentially a parent information session to give them more information on like what they can do and what, for example, a lot of parents we've talked to, or I've talked to, they don't even know what a jewel looks like. So maybe giving them more information, and then maybe doing some policy analysis as well. So like what can politics councils as a group do to help this problem?
So now, we're going to move on into our individual projects this year. We have three main ones. The individual project that I'm working on is about philosophy. I've been very interested in philosophy, and I've studied philosophy for the past several years. And seeing that Palo Alto doesn't have many opportunities in the way of philosophy for teenagers, I wanted to create an opportunity for middle and high schoolers to engage with philosophy, current events, and public policy. As such, I created the Teen Civic Engagement Program, which is a bi-weekly philosophy seminar at the Mitchell Park Community Center. We actually had our first meeting two days ago, and it went very well. Most of the students were genuinely interested in public policy and philosophy. Looking forward, I also want to create a possible philosophy newsletter or online forum for teens in Palo Alto and possibly connect that with teens outside of Palo Alto. Although that is more in the future.
Another individual event that me and another Youth Council member will be pursuing this year is an intramural basketball tournament. So we had this event for two years in the past. We didn't have it last year, but we would like to continue it this year at both Gunn and Pali.
Yeah, and the event was aimed to force students to bond and to relax and to take a break from school and all the personal stresses that they undergoes.
Yeah, and the event will also be used for publicity for Youth Council. So like distributing t-shirts and like wristbands, stuff like that to gain more publicity so people know who we are for our future more serious events.
My individual project would address the issue of food waste in our community. Most people are unaware that food waste is one of the top contributors to climate change. And so, but fortunately, it is an issue that everyone, including the youth, have the power to address. So this project would manage, track, and record the food waste in local high schools. And from there, the students and green teams would unite to talk about simple and effective solutions for how to reduce the effects of global warming that are happening right now in our community.
These three projects are examples of the new structure we're taking upon in the Youth Council this year, where we are not only focusing on large group projects, but also giving our members the opportunity to use the council as a way to pursue their own individual projects with the resources we have to access to the other teen community and access city council as well.
We greatly appreciate all the support we've been receiving from the Youth Council and the Youth Council hopes to continue receiving support through things like publicity for events, city council member engagement, such as city council meeting greet for all the teens, which we're attempting to find a date for now. And we'd like to keep the ongoing communication we've been having for the last couple of years. With that being said, is there any advice, suggestions, questions the city council has for us, or any specific direction you'd like to see us go through this year?
I think that's what we're going to discuss. Cool. Thank you very much. Councilmember Koo is liaison to the Youth Council. Want to make a few remarks?
So I've served with the Youth Council now. I think this is going into the second year. The first year was mostly observing and just supporting. And through the way, along the way, I've noticed the Youth Council coming along, and actually, it was very worthwhile to see that the Youth Council has moved from being an event-based council to a more wanting to be a policy-based, so learning more about how to come forward and put together policies, and most importantly, to be the conduit between the youth in our community and to bring it back to us here at council. So we are fully aware of what the youth are in need of, what they're experiencing, and what they hope that they can see from council members and from the city itself in support of their livelihood, their quality of life, their studies. So I really appreciate working with the Youth Council. They're a funny group. They have bright ideas. They're very, very enthusiastic. And a lot of them, I see their individualism come through, and so I hope that you could keep that and recognize that you're your own individuals. And I appreciate meeting all of you, and I look forward to the continued relationship. Lastly, I just want to say, they have really great advisors. Tyler Stetson, he's been very, very supportive of them, as well as Jacqueline Paris. She's also been very supportive of the group. So I have to say that thank you to the both of you also, and they've guided me along as well.
Super. Thank you guys very much for joining us tonight and putting together this. You, I'm tempted to ask what you do with your spare time, but I don't think you got very much, to be honest. Although, I'm looking forward to hearing what a silent disco is. Councilmember Cormac.
Thank you, Mayor Phil Seth. It's nice to see some of you back and to meet a few of the new people. I'm the one who's new on council this year, so I know just how you feel. Takes a while to get used to the microphones, et cetera. But we're going to get new ones. So if you're here next year, you're going to have to learn the new ones. So one quick question, like were the therapy dogs more popular at the cram slam, or was it the free food? Like dogs, hamburgers, what was the bigger draw?
So actually, we didn't get that much attention to the dogs, which was really sad because I was really excited that they were there because a lot of people were studying. However, they were nice to some people, like some people really liked going to them, but the food was the reason that they were drawn in, so yeah.
That's understandable. So grateful for the vaping survey that you all did the time before and for the extensions that you're talking about doing. Councilmember Koo and I serve on the city-school liaison committee, and we're talking about this frequently. We've attended events at the summit. Whatever we choose to do here at the city will be part of a solution. But I know I fundamentally believe as a mom of young adults that the answer is going to come from, you know, the students who are working with their peers. It's a public health thing, so really very, very grateful that you guys are willing to spend some time on that and keep everybody healthy. Wondering about the website and internships, how we can help with that? Is that pretty useful? Do you feel like, do you know how many people found jobs with it?
I can speak on that. So the website is actually just recently being renewed, and we've had a new graphic designer come in and renew it. And so something that would be really great is that if we had a clear way to access the teen website from the city council website itself, I'm not sure who has control over that, but that would be a great advertising point. I know for us, if there are internships and job opportunities within city council or political engagement opportunities, that would be a great way, even through sending us a quick email, we're happy to make a post on our website about that. In terms of engagement on the actual website, we lack the ability to access some teams in the sense that the website is new and otherwise was previously incorporated in the old website. And so we're trying to figure out how to direct our traffic to the new website rather than the old one.
So one thing, perhaps Director O'Kane can share this with Megan, Horrigan, Taylor, is there's a monthly email, weekly email. This sounds like something we could give a little, you know, a boost to. Okay, fantastic. Almost done. Yeah, Palo Palooza. Wow, great job. First of all, thanks for doing a survey. Councilmember Tanaka will be happy to hear that. We're all happy, but he'll be particularly happy. It looks like you got some great numbers. On political engagement, one thing I didn't see you list was the census. So that's one thing to think about next year, especially censuses tend to undercount kids. So that's one thing as you're thinking about this, to consider adding to your political engagement thing. And then finally, just in terms of, you know, council meet and greet, wow, yeah, scheduling is really hard with us, you know. Talk to, you know, the clerk, she's, you know, spends a lot of time doing it, and it's not easy. But you all should certainly consider letting us know when you have events that you'd like us to attend. I don't know that I feel like I get notified of that. You probably are, Councilmember Koo, but, you know, if there's something that you'd like us to come to, you know, let us know. So thanks so much.
Councilmember Niss.
Thank you all for being here. It's a little more fun actually than our usual meeting. It's nice to have a real mix. So I want to ask you, and this is for no one in particular, but I just mentioned to Faisal, you had all, you all ran for your office, correct? How do you then select your leadership? You have a president, vice president, and so forth. How is that done?
So the leadership that we have is, in every year, we meet for a retreat, everyone who got accepted into the Youth Council. And there, we hold speeches in which people run for the various positions we have, and through that comes a winner. And yeah, that's it.
So what you're really doing is you're getting ready perhaps for a political career at some point. A lot of people who serve in office like we do have run for something before. Sometimes, they ran for first grade president. I mean, it can be really simple, but I want to particularly say, I admire you for running and for taking this on and having your retreat selecting someone who would represent you. It's very impressive. So how do you think, a couple of you, how do you think it's going to change your life or your involvement when you go on from here to college? What do you anticipate?
So I definitely think that my experience on the Youth Council has been great for helping develop teamwork skills and also being able to like recognize issues I see in my community and work with others to help solve those. So I think in general, what I'll take with me later on in life is just the ability to be informed and aware of what's going on in the community and thinking about how to like work on it.
Anybody else?
Something I think a lot about in general, especially in the position I have, is how do I best represent the people that I am representing? How do, because in a sense, that's what we are as the Youth Council, the representation of the youth. And so the actions I try to take, what I want to take away is how I can best not only put myself forward, but really bring the people with me who I'm trying to represent, and how do I share their viewpoints and also take the action that they're going to want because that's who really matters.
So you all had campaigns, correct? No? So some of you have been elected and some of you have been selected, correct? I just don't want to mix it up.
I think actually what happened was, I think I misspoke and misinterpreted the question. So the way that each Youth Council member is put into their position is we go through a somewhat vigorous application process in which we have a board of maybe, say, three people, four people, and they review our, they review our application, our video. We have a meeting, and then we're selected to serve. And then, yeah, I think this is where I misspoke. And then once you're elected, once you're selected, then you are elected.
So you start with selection, and then you go to an election.
Yes.
So, and four of you are elected to serve in leadership roles, right?
Yes.
Good. I think it will serve you well when you apply to colleges. I really do. I think it makes a difference. So is there anything that, we're asking of you tonight, is there anything else that we can be doing that supports you in either your quest, as the president just said, for supporting other students or anything else you can see as you look at our council that you would like to see happen that isn't happening, that you could be involved in? Just whatever comes to mind.
Yeah. I think the biggest thing that we would like to see is a bridge between the city council and the youth in the city. And I think as much as we do try to help that bridge, I think that there's more that both of us can do to have that communication.
And just to take it a bit further, how would you like to see that bridge constructed? How would that come about?
There's different ways and different, like, in those ways that can connect. And I think that I love coming to you guys and speaking to you, but not everyone in, not all the youth get to do that in Palo Alto, especially people that go to school in Palo Alto but don't live here in Palo Alto. And so maybe send, sending emails and bringing in like groups and events and trying to bridge that. I know it's hard, but there's different opportunities that might be able to bridge that gap, yeah.
And if there's something at your school at some point that you would love to have us come to, I know Lydia has been your liaison, but send us a note or send us an email that says we've got this fabulous thing happening in wherever it happens to be, say your journalism class, we'll come by because it's really very interesting to watch everything that goes on. We have a complicated school system. So come see us.
Councilmember Tanaka.
Yeah, I just also, I think you guys coming out, it seems like you guys are doing a lot of great work. I'm very impressed. And when I was in high school, I never did any of this stuff, so I'm very, very impressed with what you guys have been able to do. One topic in particular I wanted to ask a few questions on is around vaping. So we got the survey, we got a lot of data about, you know, what the results are. It sounds like it's a fairly prevalent problem in the different schools, maybe not all schools, but a lot of schools. I guess my question, and I'm distracted to no one in particular, but I'd love to hear feedback on what can we as a city do to help kind of dampen or perhaps even stop kind of the use of vaping, especially at school? I'd love to hear feedback, thoughts, just kind of open discussion on this topic.
I think with vaping being such a prevalent issue, especially in our town and our city, I think publicizing the detrimental effects of vaping, I think that scares and that, you know, warns off a lot of the kids in our, in our community. So I think help with that, I mean, the city council wields so much influence in the town that you guys, you guys helping us out a little bit through that would definitely convince a lot of possible people who would vape and people who are to stay away from it.
I want to be cognizant of the fact that Santa Clara County does have their own legislation that the city will also be following. But I think one of the things we want to do as a council is ask students what they think would be helpful. Because I think there's a difference between adults telling us what would be helpful and students coming out and saying that. From my experience, I've often found that while education is a path that many take, it, students, the students it reaches are not the students you often want to reach, if that makes any sense. And which is, which is why the new survey we want to do is asking students themselves, what would be effective in changing your mind? Like what type of education? I think that is the information we really need to reach people that otherwise would not be reached in that sense.
Any other feedback or thoughts about this? Because one thing I heard was that enforcement is not really, maybe at some schools it's different, but maybe at Pali or Gunn, it's not really well enforced in terms of a ban on vaping. It's like people go in bathrooms, there's bathrooms known where people are vaping and to avoid. I guess what are thoughts around that? Because I actually agree with what you're saying, which is you should ask the students because you are the expert, you guys are there all the time. And for us, we're not. And so I'd love to hear feedback on what about the enforcement topic? Should there be stricter enforcement, or how do you enforce, or what are thoughts around that?
So adding on to that idea, I think a more firm law of enforcement would really help to limit teen vaping issue because from personal experiences, I know a lot of people, like they would get their vapes or their jewel in like Walgreens, and then it's like they can buy it from a convenience store very easily, and there's not much of a, like, an enforcement to prohibit them from doing that, so.
Adding on to that, I think that it's going to be most effective to focus not on the people who are vaping, but the manufacturers and the sellers of vape. So I'm not entirely sure on the current like legislation surrounding selling vaping to teenagers, but I do know that teenagers are able to obtain them pretty easily, as you said. So if I had to propose a legislation, it would be regarding that, regarding like preventing or at least mitigating the sale of vapes to teenagers by like these stores at these like easily accessible areas.
So that's the sale. What about the use on schools? Because I've heard that use at schools also is happening. I'm not sure if it's a, have you got, have any of you not seen vaping at your high school? No? I mean, all of you have? I mean, everyone has? Okay. So that's kind of disturbing, right? Because, I mean, this is supposed to be a place of education, right? And you would think of, there are going to be rules enforced would be at school, right? So like how do we, how do we change that?
I'd like to add on that, especially the schools like Pali, I mean, that's the school I'm at. I know that Pali does a very, like, they do the best that they can do to enforce their strict no vaping policy and on campus, obviously. And, but I feel like there's only so much they can do. I feel like the way we stop it or the way we affect changes at the root of it, because I don't know if you guys have ever seen a vapor before, but such a small device, it's very hard to, it's very hard to manage, and it's very hard to manage and enforce laws on that. So I think, I think that where we really stop it is at the core, is that, like Divya said, educating the youth and find the reasons why they're doing it and stopping it there, rather than trying to stop it at schools, because it is being really enforced, but it's very hard to, it's very hard to find and track.
I've heard that you guys walk into, like, there's certain bathrooms you just walk into and you can smell vaping. It's not that hard to find because people do it almost, not quite openly, but semi-openly. Is that true, or am I misinformed? Is it really like very secretive and discreet and people, you just don't see people doing it, or is it more open than that?
From my knowledge, there are certain types that are more discreet than others. There are certain types that are very, they have like a pungent smell, but others are very discreet and...
Oh, not talking about the smell, I'm just talking about the use.
Well, the use can, the use can go undetected, I think, quite easily. Yeah.
Okay.
If you're asking, I think, I think the long line is if students are seeing other students vape or jewel, are they going to like say something? Or are they going to like acknowledge it? Probably not. And I don't think it's ever been an expectation for students. And so I think one of the conclusions I reached is that if we want to focus on education, it may not be the students we need to educate. They seem to know a lot about vaping and dueling as it is. It's rather probably the parents and teachers who are the people who are going to be closest to them who don't tend not to know a lot. I know as a council, we want to focus on hosting an informational session led by kids for adults. I think that hits in a different way than adults to adults, talking about what is a vape? What is a jewel? What does it look like? And what are things that you can do that are actually effective, rather than like a lecture that is often almost pushing people towards the things we're trying to take them away from?
So I've heard that, you know, when vaping is reported at school, not much happens. Is that true? Or is that, I mean, has anyone here ever reported someone vaping in the bathroom? Or do you guys even know who it reported to? And does anything actually happen? do you guys even know who reported to, and does anything actually happen when you do that? Because I've heard nothing happens. I'm not sure if that's true, but that's what I heard.
I feel like it's not very common for students to report other students, because generally when you walk into a bathroom and there's people vaping, you just kind of like mind your own business, but I feel like if you did report it, I'm sure administration would take action.
Okay. There's no smoke detectors or, I guess, vaping detectors in the bathroom?
I'm not entirely sure how that would work.
Interesting. Okay, you know, for me, I'm looking for you guys for wisdom, because you guys are there and see what happens, and like you guys said earlier, I think you guys were probably more expert in knowing how to kind of stop this than we are, so we're looking for guidance. I think education is great, we could try to do that, but I'm just trying to think if there's anything concrete that we as City Council can do to support this more substantially than is being supported already, because we already have bans on cells, right, especially to minors, right? Maybe just better enforcement, that's kind of county level. But I'm just trying to think of something concrete that we could walk away from as a council tonight, thinking about like how do we address this issue? You guys have a lot of great things, but I'm just trying to think of what can we do from this meeting today that's actionable, right? So, I'm still looking for ideas. Thank you.
Let me just ask a question on top of that one. Hey, Kristen, the discussion we had this morning about sort of the working group and the number of agencies and so forth, is that something that might make sense for there to be some connection between Youth Council service and that group?
Hi, Kristen O'Kane, Community Services. I'm not sure I was in that discussion.
This morning at pre-council, we talked about a working group of staff, and the county was involved, and a number of nonprofits and so forth, and I wonder if it would make sense that YCS have some connection to that?
Yeah, I definitely think so. So, the working group, the Healthy City Group, yeah, so Healthy City, Healthy Community Initiative has been in place for a few years, and one of the things we're tackling this year is vaping as a community convener, so a group that will bring experts together, and I think having youth council or teens from the schools would be a great addition to that.
So, is there somebody on Youth, on YCS who they ought to contact?
From Hanson?
Yeah.
Adolescent Counseling Services?
Is there a YCS contact person that ought to be the point contact for this Healthy Cities group?
Usually Tyler, if one is...
Sorry, I'd just like to clarify, so YCS, the Youth Community Service, being a separate organization from the Palo Alto Youth Council, we do have a partnership with the YCS that we...
I misspoke. Youth Council is what I'm talking about.
So, having contacts from the Youth Council that could be part of that?
Right.
I definitely think there would be interest in that, and that's something that we can bring up at one of our upcoming meetings to see if we could form, have them be part of that committee.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Could I ask a clarifying question? Is this as a way to join the committee, or just to have us comment on a few topics?
I think TBD.
TBD? Okay.
Vice Mayor Fine.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, first of all, thank you all very much for serving and coming here tonight. It's a real pleasure to see you all and each year hear about the new issues. Just a couple quick comments. So, Councilmember Cormac did mention we have a new Chief Communications Officer that may be a great person to get half an hour with and chat with quickly. The city is also updating our city website right now, and so like if there is an opportunity to connect it to your website, I think we should be happy to do that. I noticed one thing about City Council member engagement. So, Councilmember Niss mentioned, you know, if there's a good event, please feel free to email all of us or the clerk, and we will try to attend. The other thing you mentioned, somebody mentioned, is kind of staying on top of issues going through the city and doing more like deeper policy analysis, and I guess my advice would be there is, you know, each Monday we meet here, we go through a lot of issues, and some of them are very interesting and maybe contentious or diverse, some of them are not so interesting, but we still need to get them done. So, I'd really encourage you to like choose one or two or three issues that you think you can follow for a year, and so I'm just wondering if any of you have an idea that's, you know, on your mind, or you've seen come to the city a couple times, that that may be a good issue to follow over the next year.
I'd like to echo your thoughts. I know one of our concrete goals for this year is to have at least one Youth Council member at every City Council meeting that discusses a topic relevant to kids. That's one of the ways we want to engage more this year, and we want to be aware of the fact that there are some issues that while youth voice is important, we may not have the best expertise to talk about. An example of that would be housing, where a lot of students are very interested in the topic, yet may not have the knowledge or perspective needed to add to the discussion. So, we want to make sure that some of the topics that we're commenting on really do affect youth. One example of that is the new coverly improvements. That is something we want to be involved in, so that we help frame that space for youth engagement. Based on the interest of our council so far, we are interested in the environment. If there are things that affect the environment, that's one of the things that we would like to be included on. I also want to offer an invitation for you, for you all to come to any of our meetings as well. I think something that we've noticed is that generally when we put on events that are very politically focused, less students will come out and attend just because there's less of an incentive to, and so I think it'd actually be a great opportunity for more City Council members to come to more of our social events, because that's when you will truly meet more students, and they'll be excited to be there. The worst thing that could happen would be for us to throw an event and then have a lack of student turnout, which is not a good use of your or ours time.
That's nice to hear. Just a few thoughts. One, like if you want to use any of us for like a question and answer session, that's also totally open, right? Like, and if that gets a lot of your colleagues and friends to come out and ask those questions, that's great. Your ideas of coverly, housing, those are certainly interesting. The environment, later tonight, if one of you wants to stick around, we're going to be talking about building codes and how we can look at future electrification in Palo Alto's constructions. So, I mean, there's a lot of issues, I guess, it would just be helpful, like pick a couple threads, and then maybe like talk with our staff a little bit and figure out when are those things coming on the calendar? Because if you come every Monday night, I'll tell you, it's probably going to be a little boring some weeks, but I'm happy to hear. Any other issues that like any of you think are super relevant to youth that come to the council once in a while?
Adding on to Divya, I think environment is really important, and maybe finding ways for us, the Youth Council, to make like the Climate and Sustainability Plan for Palo Alto and policies and documents like that more accessible to the youth, so they, they're more aware of what the plans are and how, if they want to see change, how they can come to you.
So, I will just volunteer myself. If you want somebody to come speak about the Sustainability and Climate Action Plan, I will come and I'll try to drag along a staff member and, you know, tell you what it's about and how you might engage more.
So, I have a question. If we were to coordinate something like that in the future, can we just contact you by email, for example, or how would we contact you?
So, you can write, I think, city.council@cityofpaloalto.org. It may be best to work with our city clerk's office to coordinate if you want a couple of us or something like that, but yeah, we are, you know, public people, and it's our job to respond to you, so you can also just write, you know, our name at City of Palo Alto, too. Thank you all.
So, I just asked Viceel what the age limit was for a vape, and you can tell I don't vape because I didn't have any idea, but apparently it is 21, over 21. So, when someone has it at school, it's illegal?
Yes.
Or I'm going to presume they bought it illegally unless somebody else supplied them? Is that, is that correct?
Yeah. It's illegal, it would be illegal to have with you, yes, I think, yeah, if you're not at the age of 21.
And yet, it's a big problem at Pali?
Yes.
That's unfortunate. Thanks.
Let me ask a, so let me, let me try one here. This, you guys did a lot of stuff this last year. In fact, my recollection from this meeting a year ago was that there's a lot more stuff this year than the previous year, so kudos to you folks, right? And it all, it all sort of makes a lot of sense, too. On the, on the cram slam, how often do you do that? Do you do it every, every term, or is that a one-off thing, or?
So, that was during the December finals, was actually our first time doing it. We did not end up doing it in the spring. We did Palapalooza instead, and we're hoping to do it again this December, but we'll see if we'll end up doing it during the spring. We'll probably have Palapalooza again, yeah.
So, what fell off the list? What did, what was on, what was originally that you wanted to do that, at some point you must have cut it off and said, okay, there's only things. So, what were a couple things that were close but didn't quite make the list?
So, last year, we started off with subcommittees, and so, if I can recall, there was like a newspaper, there was like reflective, like mindfulness one, and I can't remember the others, but we felt that we didn't really reach our goals for those subgroups, and so we felt that it was best to work as one group instead of have subgroups and then do big projects also. But at the end, as you saw, we have the list of opportunities on the website. We changed the newspaper into that opportunity site.
And this year, I thought something that really cool that we all decided to agree on was that when there's something that we don't feel like we can do or doesn't meet with what we're going with through the year, we encourage individual projects, independent projects, and with, through the independent projects, we give the time of the Youth Council, and we give like the marketing and the advertising and all stuff like that, so we would kind of limit those things that fell off last year from happening again this year.
That makes sense. I'm struck a little bit on the, on the climate change issue, which, you know, as the Vice Mayor pointed out a minute ago, we're going to be talking about some aspects of that later this evening. One of the things that, that is inherent in this kind of effort, there's a notion of sort of education and, and spreading of knowledge and so forth, and you know, I got, I think we got a pretty good example coming up this evening, which is, you know, the notion of do you need gas in order to cook, right? And, you know, I think there's a, there's an education and people's awareness component of that kind of stuff, and I think that, that you folks, I mean, young people, have maybe a disproportionately large role in awareness to the community of things, right? And I think that's in, some of these kinds, I think that's an area that's ripe for potential is sort of how do we educate people, and how do we get people thinking a different direction? Because, I mean, the world is different today than it was, you know, 20 years ago or 40 years ago or whatever, right? So, it seems to me that there's probably fertile territory for a role for, for Youth Council and high school in some of these kinds of forward-looking kinds of things. Anything else? Anybody else on council? Yes, please.
So, Jonathan, will you share with us when you have your mural basketball? Because we have council members that might want to come and play.
Yeah, do you let old, do you let old people in?
We have, well, Tom is, Councilmember DuBois is a basketball player.
And Adrian's about 6'10".
Yeah, let us know. Let us know. Also, if it's okay, Mayor, if we could have the other attendees from the Youth Council come and introduce themselves at the, at the microphone here and just say your name and your school, that would be really great, so we're all-inclusive of all of you.
Hi, I'm Hema Agarwal, and I'm from Gunn.
Hi, I'm Andrew Kim. This is my first year on Pali Youth Council, and I'm from Gunn High School.
Hi, I'm Aditya Tadamedy. This is my first year on the council, and I go to Harker.
Hi, I'm Monica. I'm from Gunn, and this is my first year on the council.
Hi, I'm Samarth, and I'm from Gunn, and this is my first year on the council.
Thank you.
Welcome, and thank you for coming tonight.
One more question.
Yes, ma'am.
So, always a good indicator, how many of you would like to do this again? Not meet with us, serve, serve on the Youth Council. How many of you who are serving would like to do it again? Put your hand way up, you know, otherwise we really can't. Good.
Looks like a clean, looks like a, looks like a clean sweep.
Yeah, yeah.
Those of you who are seniors are excused from putting up your hand.
Well, good luck. It's really, it's so enjoyable to meet with you, and as the mayor just said, we've given you a, we've given you a world that has a climate issue, and we know that you're going to have to deal with it, so you look like you're ready to handle it and maybe solve it for us. Nodding heads.
There you go. Okay. Thank you very much for joining us, and look forward to another full year here.
Thank you all for coming. So, Viceel, you're a junior?
Senior.
A senior.
Yes, last year, unfortunately.
Yeah. Unfortunately. So, where are you going to go next year?
No clue yet. I haven't, I haven't, I haven't...
That's a, that's a good, that's a good question. We have a, hang on a second.
I'm probably in our next meeting.
Where are you hoping?
Wait a second. For everybody to, hang on, hang on. Before everybody departs, do we want to take a picture up here? So, why don't, why don't the students all come in and into this area, and we'll sit back up here? Okay? So, you, yeah, can we rally the troops in here? So, everybody...
Adrian. Divya, I want to talk to you about coverly. Okay? All right? Oh, we're going down here? No, no, I think we're staying here. We'll, we'll be up, and they'll be down. Bye. It's all right. It's all right. It's crowded. Yeah, it does. Yeah.
Thank you.
So Liz going on centennial.
And next up is agenda changes, additions and deletions. Sorry? I'm sorry I missed him. Let's move on to city manager comments then.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Just a few items of note for your information this week. First, just in terms of our fire department and their duty on strike teams, addressing fires around the state. Our teams have actually been various parts of the state. As you know, they were up north at the Kincaid Fire, but then redeployed to Southern California. Our two units, one from Engine 65 and the other Engine 365, returned last night from Southern California. They were part of a strike team fighting the fires threatening the Getty Museum and Ronald Reagan Presidential Library. So they've done a lot of traveling over the last few weeks and thankful that they're back safe. Let's see, second, Public Works Department notably achieved its re-accreditation, accreditation. As you may recall, the city's Public Works Department received its first four-year accreditation a few years ago. And over the past couple of weeks, a team from the American Public Works Association, APWA, visited and was impressed by our Public Works Team, best practices, documentation, reviewed and facilities toured during the visit. This team identified four specific model practices that set our Public Works Department apart from other agencies, including our civil, our city facility, safety and evacuation procedures, our urban forest master plan, our urban forest tree benefits calculator, and our quality assurance plan procedures applied at the earliest stages of a capital project. Next up, related to Coverley, our renovated track, we have now seasonal solar lighting that is on at the newly renovated Coverley Track and Field. These solar powered lights will be used until 8:30 PM each night until March 6th. This is the third year for this seasonal lighting program and look forward to being able to use it after sun goes down.
They, they did a really nice job on that field, by the way. People haven't been out there to the new Coverley Track and redone field. They did a really nice job.
I hope to be running out there sometime soon. Not, not quite yet, in a few, a few more weeks. Let's see. Palo Alto Police Department is participating in Movember, the month of November. Our Chief Johnson is encouraging members of the police department that are so inclined to grow mustaches during the month of November to raise awareness of men's health issues and support for the Movember Foundation. So if you hear from residents that our officers are looking a little straggly, at least in the next few weeks, rest assured that it's not, probably not due to overtime, it is intentional. So word to the wise, given the visibility our officers have in the community. Let's see. Now turning to the library department, we are tracking an issue in the library community nationwide. Due to new eBooks licensing terms that went into effect this month, Palo Alto Library, among others, can purchase only a single copy of a new title upon release. Macmillan Publishers is involved with this, will then impose an eight-week embargo on additional copies of the same title sold to libraries. So this new eBook lending model could increase customer wait times, especially as a title is new, obviously, and the Palo Alto City Library maintains a hold-to-copies ratio in order to minimize wait times for popular titles. But I do think this is a topic that is getting some attention, again, nationwide, so want to make sure that you and community members are aware of this. Now turning to your upcoming calendar, just a few items of note, just a reminder that tomorrow, we have our deadline for board and commission applications. We have openings at the Parks and Recreation Commission, one position on the Planning and Transportation Commission, and three openings on Historic Resources Board. Information on that, on all of these are at our city webpage, homepage. We also have this week on Thursday, the Connecting Palo Alto Community Meeting, kicking off our next phase of community meetings on railroad grade separation planning. Neighbors can use this opportunity to get up to date on the options that will lay the groundwork for council decisions in the April 2020 timeframe. Meeting will be held in the El Palo Alto Room at Mitchell Park Community Center. Census, this Thursday, also, US Census staff will be at the downtown library to explain how community can serve as census ambassadors to make sure everyone is counted as a part of the Census 2020 effort. This Saturday, we actually have a community meeting inviting, inviting community to provide input on the proposed Bolweil, Bolweare Park and Birch Street property modifications. Meeting will be at Bolweare Park, 410 Fernando Avenue, Saturday, November 9th, from 10:00 AM to noon. And finally, our Coverley artists will be holding open studios this Saturday at noon to 4:00 PM, where artists will open their studios to the public. This is a free event and a chance to see diverse artwork being created, meeting artists and participating in art making and workshops. That concludes my report.
Thank you. We now move to oral communications where members of the public may speak to any item not on the agenda. And we have four speakers so far, and so you'll have three minutes each, and the first speaker will be Ken Horwitz.
Yes, thank you. And since three council members weren't here last week, I wanted to reiterate some of the comments I made. And that is regarding the Coverley Community Center and the lease agreement that's going to come up at the end of this year. And what I'm suggesting is that as a council, you walk away from the agreement. Foothill College walked away from a lease with the city regarding its satellite campus. Stanford just walked away from their agreements with the county, and I would suggest that you walk away from this lease agreement. What I posted up there, as you can see, this is the original lease agreement from 1989. Lease and covenant not to develop. Councilmember Cormac wrote an editorial in the Palo Alto Weekly, which he asked for a champion. The champion should be the city council. That's who I viewed as, and the way that this, the city council can be a champion is to not it, negotiate any more agreement with the Palo Alto Unified School District. They're getting a good deal. They're really getting a good deal. This is a, a map, I was over there today. This is a map of the Coverley Center. I'm sure you all have been there. You know, we own, the city owns eight acres, and most of the nonprofits are in the eight acres. What the city, what the school district owns are the recreation. We just heard from the city manager that you just improved the track. The school district owns the track. Why should this, why should the city pay $1.8 million for a track that's owned by the school district? It's crazy. One of your priorities these days is fiscal sustainability. You can no longer afford seven, eight, nine million dollars a year. We should be using that money for our residents to deal with the infrastructure in the city, not giving it to the school district. The school district tomorrow night is going to be One of your priorities these days is fiscal sustainability. You can no longer afford $7, $8, $9 million a year. We should be using that money for our residents to deal with the infrastructure in the city, not giving it to the school district. The school district tomorrow night is going to be giving raises to their teachers. Where'd they get the money to get the raises? From the city. The city's giving them $7, $8 million. They're getting a free ride. You don't need Coverly anymore. You own eight acres, plus you now have the Mitchell Community Center, and there are other places to put those people. Don't do the agreement. Let the school district take responsibility for Coverly. It's a rundown place, number one. And lately I hear there's a pest infestation, they got cockroaches all over the place there. It's pretty awful. Go over there, check it out. You don't need to have Coverly Community Center anymore. Walk away from the agreement. And I'll be back when you, when this becomes an item to be approved in late December. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council and staff. My name is Papia Gamblin, and I am with Platinum Advisors, a consultant for the Valley Transportation Authority. The Valley Transportation Authority has retained RSM to perform an independent study to evaluate VTA's governance practices. Platinum Advisors was retained to assist with a robust community outreach. I'm here tonight to invite the public to participate and provide their feedback on how VTA is governing in relation to bus ridership, light rail highways, bike and pedestrian pathways, congestion management, and county-wide transportation planning. There are several platforms available for community engagement and participation that we would like to share with you. RSM will be hosting an in-person community meeting on November 20th at 7:00 PM in the county building on 70 West Heading. There will also be a virtual town hall webinar on November 21st. This will be an interactive webinar open to the public and will allow comments and questions. The webinar will also be recorded, so community members can watch at their convenience in their location after that date as well. There is also a dedicated voicemail for members of the public to leave anonymous and confidential feedback by calling 408-952-4200. A webpage and survey at vta.org has been dedicated to this effort to provide more details and gain feedback. RSM's findings and recommendations will be presented at the December 17th Ad Hoc Board Enhancement Committee meeting. Further information on this will be available at the VTA website. Our team will present the same information at every city council meeting and at the county with the goal of promoting the in-person and virtual town hall meetings to gain the maximum amount of participation with this study. In that spirit, we will also follow up with your city clerk to provide this information electronically, so that you can post it on your website and share it with your social networks. We appreciate the opportunity to share this information and partner with each of you at our cities throughout this independent assessment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Evening, council members. Evening, Mr. Mayor. Evening, citizens of Palo Alto. My name is Eugene Bradley. I am the founder and CEO of the Silicon Valley Transit Users, a independent public transit advocacy and watchdog group. One of the challenges that I've read about Palo Alto since I first moved to Silicon Valley back in 1999 was how VTA had basically just used the North County as just a whipping post for everything San Jose related, such as BART inexpensive beneath the bus lines. I want to challenge every Palo Alto resident, just like you, to come on down and join me in San Jose and help fight for better public transit, which we've been paying for since 1972. As I was reading articles from Dave Price of the Palo Alto Daily Post, I couldn't help but wonder, where are he and every North County resident not in San Jose demanding better from VTA? That said, I would challenge every council member, every resident of Palo Alto like you. It's easy to forget, you own VTA, not the other way around. Let's make, I want to talk to your group to help teach you basically things like how government, how government works in terms of how local transit decisions are made, and how to best hold VTA's officials accountable together in San Jose, and at least start having them come here for once instead of them, us going down to San Jose. As someone once reminded me, we are the bosses of VTA, nobody else, and we includes you too. That said, you can learn how to be the boss of VTA, how to hold them accountable for better public transit at www.vta, let's check that, www.svtransitusers.org on your smartphone, computer at home, or computer at any public library. Or if you can't get to a computer, you can call me at 408-888-2208. Any citizens group that wants to join me in the fight for better public transit, come on down. See you soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Fred Ballen.
Good evening. After six weeks, the Planning and Transportation Commission reconvened on the 31st for one minor item. The year's bimonthly schedule now records 11 regular meetings and nine cancellations. One meeting is planned for this month and one for next month. Last year, there were 18 regular meetings. In 2017, there were 20. The average going back to 2008 is even higher, punctuated by the 2010 powerhouse that included new member Greg Tanaka and held an astounding 30 meetings. Only 15 action items have been heard this year, and few that were not mandated. Workforce housing development standards were completed last year, but a Palmer fix, renter protections and development impact fees still await arrival. Expected return of parking rules went directly to council, bypassing the commission. Is staff playing keep away? It's understandable the way they have been treated by certain commissioners. The August 28th outburst from chair rigs to new transportation staff was sadly reminiscent of Commissioner Alcheck's interactions with city planning and attorney staff, other commissioners, and the public over the years. Without trust, this commission cannot build a desperately needed positive culture of cooperation and collaboration with staff. And the actions of a few are a disservice to other commissioners who prepare, attend, speak succinctly to the point at hand, challenge issues in a respectful way, deliberate, are able to break from preconception, and serve solely in the public interest. Going forward, carefully interview and appoint only those candidates whom you are convinced will meet that standard. If not enough do, leave positions open. Chair Riggs should apologize in person to Chief Transportation Official Kami and his staff and do whatever it takes to repair the damage. Regarding Alcheck, his disrespectful behavior that I touched on tonight is well-known and can easily be compiled and documented. And you have my report on the carport caper, to which I now add a short coda. Alcheck's attorney, David Lamfermans, wrote to and addressed the commission hearing on January 30th on behalf of AJ Capital regarding the grandfathered facilities ordinance. Alcheck did not recuse. How does that look? To restore trust, credibility and proper functioning to the commission, the council must see to it that Commissioner Alcheck moves off it. When all those items are completed, meet jointly with the commission and planning staff and set expectations. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is minutes approval, and I will move approval of the action minutes from October 21st.
Second.
Seeing no lights, would you vote on the board, please? And that passes unanimously. We now move to the consent calendar, and I have a light from Councilmember Tanaka.
No, I pressed the wrong button.
I'll move the consent calendar.
That's good. Okay. Now I will second, so consent calendar moved by Councilmember Cormac, seconded by me. Seeing no lights, would you vote on the board, please? And that passes unanimously with no no votes. So with that, we move on to the action calendar. Sorry? Sorry? Ah, yes, sorry. It's, it's traditional that, that we take a step here, that one of the actions we just approved was the appointment of Monique Zizenhanna as Assistant City Manager, and I'm going to, I'm going to ask her to come up and give a speech. Welcome, welcome Assistant City Manager, Zizenhanna.
It's, yeah, Zizenhanna, Zizenhenny, pick your flavor. I will answer to most anything, so thank you. Mayor Phil Suth and council members, thank you very much for your support. I'm honored to be appointed Assistant City Manager. In eight and a half years, I've worked hard to earn the community's trust, to meet and work with the valuable groups and nonprofits who are our partners, and to improve the services we offer every day. This will continue. Though I began my time here in the library during the middle of the library bond construction projects, I've also had the great fortune to work in community services and in the past six months as part of the city manager's office. I've learned a lot, most notably, the professionals I work with throughout the city are a tremendous resource. It is truly a pleasure to have been selected to work with them in this new role, finding ways to collaborate and to achieve the goals you set. As a career-long local government professional, I'm always working to find ways to innovate and to improve, whether it is through learning, technology, services, or processes. I like to be responsive. I like to think about problem solving. I expect this to continue, as I support the departments in their work, ensuring that outcomes and accountability to the community are part of our systems. And I will work with the city manager to ensure that his team is cohesive, his office runs smoothly, and he's supported in his daily work to support the activities of the council and the activities for the community. Thank you to Ed for your trust in me and my abilities as part of your leadership team. That means a lot. And I look forward to working with all of you in the years to come. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, and welcome. So we now move on to the action calendar. So the first item on the action calendar is a TEFRA hearing, and this is a, a public hearing. And so what I'm going to do is open the public hearing, and I'm going to, I don't have a lot of instructions on this right now, so if I, if I do, if I do this wrong, I'm going to look at the city attorney and ask for correction here.
We'll, we'll get through it. It looks like the staff may have a few words, and then you'll just want to hear from any members of the public who want to testify at the public hearing.
Sounds good. Welcome.
Hi, we do, good evening. My name is Taryn Orion. I'm manager of Treasury, Debt and Investments. Staff recommends the city council open a public hearing and conduct a TEFRA hearing for the Bowman School, which is an IRS pre-resquat for nonprofit to issue tax exempt bonds. Bowman School and staff requesting city council adopt a resolution making the issuance of the tax exempt bonds possible. Mary Beth Ricks, the head of the Bowman School, she's right behind me, is present and available to address any project, bonds, or related questions. Bowman School plans to refinancing existing bonds and finance the almost completed new school campus. Mary Beth tells me they're days away from getting their occupancy permit, so that's how close they are to completing it. An important point, which we mentioned in the report, and I want to emphasize, there is no financial impact or obligation to the city from the council's approval of this bond issuance. Thank you.
So with that, the hearing is opened. Is there any public, public comment on this? Seeing no, seeing no public, public comment, we will close the hearing. And Councilmember Niss moves approval of the adoption of the resolution, and I will second. Okay? Oh, Councilmember DuBois will second. Care to speak to your motion, Councilmember Niss?
No, I would mention, though, that we've done this frequently before, so it's, it's not unusual to have this kind of a hearing and to give this kind of support.
Councilmember DuBois, would you like to speak to your second?
I just didn't know what Councilmember Niss said.
Councilman, I have a light from Councilmember Cormac.
This is my first time participating in one of these, so I did go ahead and look up the CETA and who serves on it, just so we know who actually is making the decisions based on who's a member. And I understand we're associate member, and the city is being recompensed even for holding this hearing. Compliments to the staff for a concise and informative staff report. Very helpful. Thank you.
Seeing no further comment, would you vote on the board, please? And that passes unanimously. Thanks to the council and staff for an expeditious, expeditious item here. We now move to item number nine, and we have both, there are two, two, two tranches of this, 9A and 9B, and I think what we should do is take them both up at once. And so one has to do with updating city ordinance to follow the state, and the other has to do with discussion of potential reach code modifications. So is there a staff presentation?
Whoa.
God, this is getting a lot faster.
Well, I, I think we'll, we'll do the staff presentation first, and hopefully we'll be on schedule with oral comms.
Hey?
Just noticed that we did, we separated the time, which is not really what we sort of meant to do.
Right.
So maybe that members of the public who want to speak to this may be trailing in, maybe after the staff report? Could open public comment again?
Well, I haven't opened it yet.
Yes.
So, but, but if we get finished the staff report and it's well in advance of that time, then I agree, we should keep public comment open. Right? We're, we're, we're somewhat ahead of the posted time, especially for item 9D.
Even, even for staff, unfortunately. So I think we're trying to gather up the right people who are ready to go here. Okay? All right. If you could just give us a quick moment, we'll be ready to go.
We, we, we took a break about half an hour ago, so I'm loath to call another one, but if we're just going to sit around waiting, you want to take a 10-minute break right now while staff gets, oh, she's here. Okay. Why do we not then proceed?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Thank you for your patience. I'm Michelle Poche Flaherty, Deputy City Manager, and with me this evening is Yvonne Bailish, our Assistant Building Official, and she will be kicking us off on this item.
Good evening, council members. Thank you for inviting us here tonight. I am going to do a short presentation on the building code updates, the 2019 building code updates, and the city of Palo Alto amendments to them. Okay, so first I wanted to start out, Title 24 of the California Code and Regulations is what we call the California Building Code Standards, or Building Standards Codes. And the Title 24 is set up in 12 parts. So on the chart up on the screen, on the left-hand side are the 12 parts of Title 24. They cover the building code, the residential code, the electrical, mechanical and plumbing code, and the fire code. And then on the right-hand side of the chart are the corresponding municipal code amendments. So they are Title 16, 16.04 through 16. So they are Title 16, 16.04 through 16.15, and the fire code is 1504. So today, I'm going to talk about the municipal ordinances that amend the Title 24 codes, all except for the energy code. Okay. So first, I just want to go over the local codes and local amendments. So the California Building Standards, or Title 24, are updated and adopted every three years, and they go through a rigorous code development cycle on the national level. And then they're adopted by the state of California. So the 2019 California Title 24 is formally adopted, they're formally approved in January of 2019. And then they're published six months later, July 1st, on 2019. So local jurisdictions have to adopt the Building Standards Code, or the Title 24, within six months, 180 days later, and they become effective January 1st, 2020. But in the meanwhile, local jurisdictions can amend Title 24 with amendments for, can make local amendments for geological, topographic, and climatic conditions. So the timeline, oh, great, thank you. So the timeline that we have for code development is, so once it starts, so this code cycle it started July 1st, once the Building Standards, or Title 24, was published. And then we had green building public engagement meetings in August. And then we started drafting the local amendments and the staff report. They got reviewed by the Attorney's Office, and then we bring them to, and then we've brought them tonight at council. And then once they're approved and adopted, then we file the file ordinance with the Building Standards Commission, and then the effective date will be January 1st, 2020. So I'm just going to go over just some of the highlights, highlighted changes of the building code and the residential code. So for the building code, one of the highlights of this code cycle is that we adopted Appendix Ordinance O, which is for emergency housing. This is an event of a local disaster or emergency, such as a fire, flood, or earthquake. There'll be minimum standards for emergency housing facilities, such as sleeping cabins, tents, for occupancies during a state of emergency. And then also, in the building and the residential code, we have now changed the building permit expiration. So now residential permits will now have their, will expire in 12 months. It's extended from six months, and this is actually mandated by the California Legislature through AB 2913. Okay, so also part of this adoption is we're adopting the International Swing Pool and Spa Code. And this is not part of Title 24. This is part of the, what we call the I-Codes, the international codes. So it provides standards for safe pool installation, for standards for diving water envelopes, for diving equipment, enclosures, and pool covers, emergency shut-offs, and construction requirements that are not in the building code or the residential code. Okay? And then finally, I just want to touch upon some highlights in our Green Building Standards Code amendments that we call, also called the CalGreen Code. So currently, in our CalGreen amendments, we require special inspectors, we call them green building special inspectors, and they are required on residential projects for what we call Tier One, CalGreen Tier One, and Tier Two projects that are above the base, the state code. And so now we're going to expand the green building inspector inspection program to now be required for non-residential projects. The other thing I just wanted to talk, touch upon is our electrical vehicle charging ordinance. So contrary to popular belief, we have a very stringent or very high-reaching electric vehicle charging ordinance. So for example, the one- and two-family dwellings, we, our green building ordinance requires that we install conduit-only and electrical vehicle supply equipment, that we call the EVSC for short, ready outlet, or an EVSC-installed outlet, or I guess, equipment. So right now, the CalGreen Code only requires just the conduit only, and then just a box for the outlet. For new multifamily apartments, our green building ordinance requires one EVSC-ready outlet per unit, or one EVSC-installed per unit. The CalGreen state code only requires 10% of the parking to be EVSC-ready. For new hotels, we require 30% of the parking, available parking, to be EVSC-ready, and then of that, 5% of the total has to be EVSC-installed, and to a minimum capacity of a Level 2 charging station. The CalGreen state code, or the base code, only requires 6% of the parking be EVSC-ready. And for new non-residential buildings, 25% of the available parking has to be EVSC-ready, with 5% of the total has to be EVSC-installed. Once again, CalGreen only requires 6% of the parking to be EVSC-ready. So those are just some of the highlighted changes, overview of the 2019 building codes, suite of building codes. We recommend to adopt the attached eight ordinances of Title 15 and Title 16 of the Palo Alto Municipal Code. Okay? Any questions?
Thank you. I'm going to suggest here, if staff concurs, that maybe what we ought to do is just take up 9A by itself and move to 9B, and we'll take public comment on 9A, and then we'll deal with 9A, given the sort of the timing that we're at. So with that, is there, so for folks in the audience, there are two parts to this discussion tonight. There's 9A, which is adopting the, updating our codes to follow the state. And the second part, 9B, has to do with the reach codes, electrification, use of gas, and so forth. 9A is somewhat procedural, although I think some of the EV charging stuff is actually interesting here. So are there public comments for 9A? If you want to talk to 9A, wait for 9B, there'll be opportunity for 9B. Seeing no public comment for 9A, we return to council for comments, questions, and motions. Councilmember DuBois.
Yeah, thank you. So the presentation was really useful. And just to say, for the staff report in 9A, it was really hard to tell, like, what had changed and what was substantial. And it would have been nice to see kind of, a lot of these are pretty straightforward and anything that was unusual.
Yeah.
So you pulled out a few things. Was there anything else in there that was either more Palo Alto-specific, or that you saw as a more substantial change?
Yeah, this time around, excuse me, this time around, there was not any substantial changes as the previous code cycle. Most of the effort was, at this point, concentrated on the energy reach code.
Okay. But you did call out EVs. So why was that included in this section?
Well, that was included because in reading staff reports from other cities that had did comparisons, they had mentioned that Palo Alto had no EV charging ordinances, and we do. So I just wanted to highlight that, so that you know that we have a pretty high standard in Palo Alto.
Okay. And so if I understood, the multi-unit, it's not 100%, but it's at least one per unit. So if they were one bedrooms or studios, that would be effectively 100%, I guess. It's just if they have two spots, only one of the spots has to be?
Has to be EVSC-ready. So just so that the wiring and the conduit is ready for the conversion. When somebody buys an EV car, buys an electric vehicle, then they can easily install an outlet for charging.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Cormac.
Yeah, I concur with Councilmember DuBois. Lot of detail in here. So presentation is helpful, although I confess to being curious about what a diving envelope is.
Oh, it's just the shape of the pool at the deep end, so that you don't hit your head when you dive in.
Okay. All right. Sounds good. The inverse of a building envelope. Okay. I wonder if I could just ask a process question. There are an awful lot of ordinances in here, and while, you know, I'm sure my colleagues and I have read them, it's not for sure that we would have caught if there was a problem. Would you mind sharing with me the review process that these go through in the city?
So currently, right now, the, like I said, the Title 24 are published in July 1st, but you can also get an advanced copy through the Building Standards website. So we try to start early on and get what we call the final express terms, which are the early review, sort of more like the red-line marked-up versions of the code reports. And then we go through them and divvy them up through staff, and we start to review them, make a comparison with the previous code cycle, and we try to see if there are any significant changes in the code cycles, to see that affect our ordinances, and whether or not we need to address them either. And you can only make ordinances that are more stringent. You can't relax the building codes.
Okay. And then?
Okay. And then, once we complete the review, then we go through staff, and then we also have a public comment where we invite the Green Building Advisory Group to review some of our changes and have them make recommendations. And then, once we draft the ordinances, then they go through the city attorney's office for review.
And I think we only received one comment from the public with, in relating to this, and it had to do with gray water and toilet standards and some drywall. I don't remember all the details. Did you have an opportunity to look at that? Do you feel there are any changes we should make based on that comment?
So I think we talked about that in the Green Building Advisory Group, about the gray water, and people didn't feel comfortable. Well, there was gray water, and then there was also black water. So for gray water, that is when you actually take water from plumbing fixtures, and then you use them in landscaping. But it's a kind of a large develop, design process, because the, transferring the water into the landscape has to be subsurface emissions. It can't be overland flow. So a way we've addressed that in the Green Building Standard is now we've decided to, since it's such a large process, that we now allow that to be not counted as just one elective for green building, for water savings. We count it as two electives.
Okay. So you feel that?
So we're trying to make it more favorable, yes.
You feel that the ordinances do address the issue that was raised?
Yes.
Okay. Great. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Niss.
Actually, a small question.
Okay.
But I can recall in the past, someone asked me to help them facilitate installing the kind of swimming pool that simulates being in the ocean. Do you know what I mean by that?
Is it the swimming where you feel like you're swimming, or swimming against the current?
Swimming, yes.
Yeah. Okay. Does it have a name?
Is it waves?
Well, it's, it's, it's the kind of, it continuously mimics that, as if you were in the ocean, and you keep swimming and swimming, you go nowhere. But there's a lot of action to this process. And I don't know if the state ever ruled them out or not. I remember not being, I couldn't help, actually, it was Google. I know they wanted to put one in on their roof, and as I recall, the code didn't allow it. So if, maybe at some point, you could find out, especially if I give you a more accurate name for the pool, but I'm not quite sure what it is.
Okay.
Other than it's sort of like an endless.
Yeah, I think it's similar to like an in-ground spa, or something like, it's a prefabricated unit, is it not? Or is it actually built on-site?
I think it's different from a spa.
Okay.
But I know that it's considered really good for exercise, and if you can't get into a big pool, this simulated that action. And if anybody in the audience knows what that is called, you might just text it to me.
Okay.
Because I can remember there was a lot of, a lot of discussion about it at the time, and maybe they've now been outlawed. And it would just be interesting to know that.
Okay.
Thanks.
All right. Thank you.
I want to make sure that I understand that the EV, in fact, can you pull that one up again? That's the previous slide?
Oops.
Next one? Next, that one?
That one. Okay.
So I just want to make sure I understand this. So standard practice in most multi-unit buildings around the valley and elsewhere for EV charging is, you know, you've got 50 or 100 units, and you've got a handful of EV chargers. And so if you live in the complex, you've got to go find that EV charger to park your car at and take your turn, and then the next person goes and takes it. And if I understand what this ordinance says, it says that going forward, each unit has to be wired so that there's a dedicated charger for that unit. So the model of, you've got 100 units and five chargers, that's not that model. This is 100 units and 100 chargers, wired for 100 chargers, so that all that the person that lives in that unit has to do is go get a charger, and the rest of it's there. Is that what I understand this ordinance does?
So what it does is it prewires for that space that's assigned to them, so that they can easily, when they pull a permit for an EV charging station, then it facilitates the wiring a lot faster.
Are there any implications for the metering of those, of those spots, or is that left to however that the unit wants to do that?
So it does require that the service panel can handle an additional?
So a dedicated meter for each?
It's not necessarily dedicated meter, but that the pan, the service panel that handles all the outlets can handle additional?
Can additional, the additional load.
Right.
But suppose I live in one, and Liz lives in the one next door, and we're each wired, how do they know to bill me for the electrons that I use and not Liz?
So they're not, they're not the metering type? They're the type that would be outlet that you, you know, like if you had it at your home, you would have an outlet, and you'd plug your electric vehicle charger to it. You don't, it comes out of your bill.
So it's still up to the, it's still up to the multi, multi-unit operator to figure out?
How they do the billing.
Who gets charged for which charger?
Right.
Okay.
Correct.
I, okay. I actually, I actually think this is one of the most important pieces of policy that we're going to do in this, in this area, given over 40% of Palo Altons live in multi-units, and most people charge their, charge their EVs at home at night, as opposed to, you know, at Superchargers in Harris Ranch or something like that, right? So I think this is, this seems pretty fundamental and high-impact to me.
Yeah. So this really helps?
Am I reading that right?
Pave the way.
Right? Okay. Councilmember Koo.
Well, thank you for the presentation. I too just have to say that, you know, when you bring these kind of code changes, that there should be a red-line version for us to look at, because at the end of the day, I had to go back to the code itself and compare. That was a lot of work, and obviously, there has been some changes. So while I appreciate, you know, this, this is not too much of something that I'm going to have to look at and be, after all, it's the code from California, from the state. But still, it would be nice, so that we're doing our due diligence, that we're looking at the red-line version, and what was before and what was after. So that's what I'm going to ask that you do do moving forward.
Yeah, I think it's worth noting, in this particular case, that unlike a typical situation where we're revising a code that is basically static, in this case, because the California Building Code itself has changed, that things that we felt previously needed a local amendment, or maybe moot at this point, because the California Code has incorporated it into the statewide. So we're really just dealing with the modifications to the new statewide code. So I think the red line could actually be more confusing in this particular case, because the baseline has changed. But again, point well taken, and I think it's really an issue of just trying to be able to articulate the voluminous kind of issues that we've got here, and figure out how the best way to do that.
Right. I appreciate, it is voluminous, and therefore, you know, when you just state a few of these codes, like the presentation tonight, there's a whole bunch of other ones that we haven't really had the chance to actually understand. So, you know, I mean, this shouldn't be a problem. But say, for example, Package Page 86, there is the exception, Certificate of Occupancy are not required for?
Okay. But I know what she's?
What is Group R? What is Group U? I mean, so some of these things, I can't even find in the municipal code, and I would like to understand it, and not just say, yeah, okay, staff knows it, and so, do you know what they?
Yeah, there's essentially a technicality in the code. So right now, for commercial buildings, we have, we issue what we call a So right now, for commercial buildings, we have, we issue what we call a certificate of occupancy. So once the building has been completed and final, we issue a certificate of occupancy for office buildings and restaurants. But for residential buildings, like houses and apartments, we don't issue a certificate of occupancy, a COO. What your final building inspection, your final inspection approval is your certificate of occupancy. So that's what that's just stating.
So the Group R and Group U are for commercial?
So Group R is residential.
Residential, oh, I see, okay. Also, in the code, state historic, does any of these code changes involve state historical buildings?
There were no ordinance changes to the historical code, per se. Most of it was the state itself essentially reformatted the whole historical code and the existing building code. So they changed, they made a lot of changes on the state level. So when they reformat on the state level, any ordinance changes that we make have to be reformatted to the same section and the same numbering. So a lot of it is, you know, sort of, you know, just sort of incidental, because they made the change, we have to make a corresponding change.
Do you just happen to know off the top of your head where I might be able to find the state historical codes in the-
So on the Building Standards Commission website, if you go on to the codes, you can find the 2019 codes, and then there it lists all the 12 parts that I listed previously, and you can look up for the state historical code. And there should be, you can look at it online, it is available free online, you just can't print it.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Tanaka.
Yeah, thank you for your work on this. Looks like there's a lot of work to update all of this. So I have to agree with Councilmember Koo on this in terms of, it would be nice to see like a table of differences. I think maybe a table of differences would have been better, where, you know, here's what's new, here's what it was before, then here's what we have discretion on. Do we have something like that? Or is this something, because it's so we can understand, like, but some of the stuff is mandated by the state, we've just got to do, right? So it doesn't, in some ways, it's almost mute to us, it doesn't matter, right? And there's some things that we may want to, like the EV may go beyond the call of duty, right? Above what's mandated, and we have discretion on that. Do we have a list of that somewhere?
Well, so a lot of it, we do go through our advisory groups to go through, to vet them through first, before we actually make the changes. So they're not just changes that we just arbitrarily make, we actually go through public vetting on them. And so we do have the red line copies, but they are very difficult to read, because we go through multiple versions of them.
Yeah, no, I was thinking more like some sort of table, like an executive summary, where we could see, you know, what the old one was, right? What the new one was, and more importantly, what we have discretion on.
Yeah, we don't have such a comprehensive table. Sometimes we just come up with a table of just some of the changes for the new ordinances.
I guess the only issue though is, by not having that makes it very difficult for us to really understand what's changed, right?
Well, in essence, the changes, a lot of the changes are also just the changes from the 2016 to the 2019 code. And so for staff, even in the building department, we take, you know, eight-hour training on the building code, and eight-hour training on the residential code. So it's not a really simple thing to, you know, to go over. They are, in fact, we don't, you know, we're still learning all the code changes.
Sure, no, I understand. I guess maybe what's most relevant is what, what parts of the code are discretionary on our part, where we didn't necessarily have to go to that level? Like what, where did we go above and beyond?
So Councilmember, if I might direct your attention to Packet Page 102 and 103. These itemize the sections of the building code as to what is being amended by local action. I mean, effectively, the council has complete discretion on whether to amend or not. And that's really the essence of the topic here this evening. And I recognize this is a bit maybe too shorthand, but on the far-right column, and I'm sorry for the public that doesn't have the packet, this is for Item 9A, it's the Exhibit A, that has Page 21 on it, that is a three-page tabulation of the codes that are being recommended for amendment. And again, on the far-right, there's this shorthand letter designation that explains the rationale for a local amendment. And so on Page 24, or Packet Page 105, has a key to what those, the justifications are in. Again, it's a shorthand way of explaining why we're recommending a local amendment to the statewide codes.
I see, okay, great, this is what I was looking for. So basically, basically, as an example, Section 1.1, Title, amended means, that's something that we went above and beyond that, above and beyond what was mandated by the state? Is that the way you think about it?
Title's probably not the best example of that, but maybe a little more substantive reasons in other sections. But yes, you're right. You know, to make it Palo Alto-specific, we are making amendments on that basis.
I see, okay, okay. And, but yeah, I do agree with you, it is a little bit more too shorthand, because it's kind of hard to know, like, okay, expiration, it's one word, expiration, so what was amended? So that was a little bit, I suppose we could look it up ourselves, one by one, by one, but are there, what are the, what are the major ones that you think that might be contentious?
This time around, there weren't any really large-
Or might cost people a lot of money to do, let's put it that way. We are like, like something that goes above what the state mandates, that's going to cost whoever is building a lot more money, for whatever reason.
It's still going more closely to the REACH code at this point, as far as more strenuous and more stringent. A lot of the green building codes are, the Tier 1 and Tier 2 are more stringent, but most of them have already been adopted in the previous code cycles. So it's sort of a continuation of the, of the, what we've done is, we've adopted voluntary measures, Tier 1 and Tier 2 is mandatory for new construction and for large alterations. So a lot of those haven't changed, we've just continued them on from the previous cycle.
I see, okay, great, thank you.
So, did we have a motion on this already? I will move a staff recommendation on 9A, seconded by Vice Mayor, sorry, seconded by Councilmember Niss. And I've already spoken to this. Councilmember Niss, care to speak to your second?
I think we spoke amply to it.
Seeing no further comment, would you vote on the board, please? And that passes unanimously, thank you very much.
And could I mention that I know the name of this device? It's called an, I'm looking at Beth, Endless Swimming, Endless Fitness, okay.
There's one of those that had Michael Phelps as their spokesman, too, I think, at one point.
Oh, really?
Yeah, I think so.
So Endless Fitness, that's it.
Hey, let me, before we leave this completely, let me ask another question on the EV one. So the, each unit has to be, each unit has to have a charger-ready parking space. Is there anybody else that hasn't, any other city that has an ordinance like that?
No, not that, not as high. I think San Jose was talking about a certain percentage higher than the state, but we're definitely one of the higher qualifications, requirements.
I mean, other people, you know, weigh in, too, after this meeting and so forth. I think this one's really, really seminal. I think it's fascinating that something that's this much policy impact is sort of buried in this. But I think, you know, we're going to spend the next hour or two talking about electrification and gas, and I think this is potentially on that order of magnitude of impact, because, you know, 1 in 3, 1 in 3 new car registrations in Palo Alto is an EV. And every one of those essentially goes to a single-family home, because, you know, with very few exceptions, you know, the mainstream of EV adoption requires a home charging, right? And you can't get home charging in a multi-unit building without what you just did here, what we just did here, okay? And, you know, given that half the population of Palo Alto lives in multi-unit buildings, I mean, we have the potential to double the EV adoption rate in town because of this?
Yeah.
And, you know, we're going to talk about electrification and gas, but the reality is, gas accounts for a third of our emissions right now, transportation accounts for two-thirds, right? And this is a sizable chunk of it. So I think this is pretty important, what you guys just did here, what you guys just had to do, so thank you.
Eric, can I make a quick comment?
Yeah. Councilmember DeBois.
Yeah, so I agree with what Mayor Phelps is saying, though I do think, I think we require 25% in offices. I think those are just as important. I think a lot of people charge for eight or nine hours, whether at work, and, you know, it shouldn't extend beyond yourself, but, you know, I have an electric car, I don't charge at home, so-
I went, I never charge at the office.
So I just wanted to ignore the office side of this as well.
Okay, with that, we move on to 9B, REACH codes, and I apologize that we're a little bit ahead of schedule, but I see that we have plenty of people here already, so why don't we proceed?
Okay, all right, good evening. Okay, so now I'm going to continue on the presentation, and we'll start talking about the REACH code. Okay. All right, so just back to the slide, the original slide that explains Title 24 and the 12 parts. This time, we're going to concentrate on Part 6 of the Title 24 code, the California Energy Code, and then the municipal code Title 16.17. Sorry. Okay, so first, I want to talk about the Minimum Base Code. The base code, we call the California Energy Code, which is Title 24, Part 6, and it's the California Energy Code. So the two are the same, when somebody says Title 24 and the Energy Code, they are the same thing. So anyhow, the Title 24 sets the minimum standard for efficiencies in building, design, and construction. Every three years, we get a more stringent or more efficient Energy Code. So this time around, for 2019, it's going to be anywhere from 7 to 30% more efficient than the 2016 code than the 2019. Energy Code is effective January 1st, 2020. So what is a REACH code? So a REACH code overlays the base code of the 2019 California Energy Code. The local ordinance, with the local ordinance, we're allowed to make more stringent requirements than the state in areas such as energy efficiency, renewable energy, and electrification. Also, a requirement of the California Energy Commission is that this REACH code has to be cost-effective. So we have to have a cost-effective study to show that it's not, it doesn't create undue burden on the building owner, and that the efficiencies, the additional efficiencies, still meet the base code or the California Energy Code. Also, in a requirement of the REACH code is that we cannot preempt federal appliance efficiency standards, so we can't require, specifically require efficiencies higher than what the federal, what the federal standards require.
Before we go into more details, I'd like to give the council a high-level overview of where we are and how we got here, and then Yvonne will take you into a more detailed description of the proposed energy REACH code, and she will be assisted by Christine Tam from our utility department, who will also be talking about some components of our proposal. But just to set the table for this, we wanted to introduce the public to and remind the council of the context of all of this, going back to Palo Alto's Sustainability Climate Action Plan, which, as you know, you adopted in April of 2016, setting a goal of an 80% reduction in greenhouse gas below 1990 levels by 2030. And one of the things we've understood since we established the Sustainability Climate Action Plan is that 43% of the emission reductions we would be targeting as a city would be obtained through electrification. So electrification has been one of the key leverage points that we've been seeking to use in pursuing the SCAP. Can you slide that over for me? We understand that this slide, the font on this slide is too small to read, and we weren't suggesting that everyone would read all the text on this slide, but we wanted to show it to you as a reminder of what the council has been presented with in the past. This is a slide that was included in the city's presentation when the last REACH code was brought to the city council in 2015. And it shows you our journey and our goal. And if you look down at Item Number 1 here, you can see that Palo Alto did its first energy REACH code back in 2009, and it was one of the only cities in the country that was doing a REACH code back in 2009. So Palo Alto has a history of being at the forefront of these conservation measures. We were the first to do the original EV requirements, and just this year, other cities are now adding EV requirements to their REACH codes for the first time, but we did that back in 2015 and 2014. And so we've already done a lot, and what's been happening is, the state of California, as it does its code updates, has now been actually looking at Palo Alto as a model for where the whole state should go. So as the state starts to catch up with Palo Alto's standards, and Palo Alto continues to reach beyond the state's standards, we start to get to a point where we maybe aren't quite as far ahead of the state as we would have been originally, because they're starting to catch up with us, and our ability to continue to make gains starts to shrink and shrink as we get closer to the top of this mountain we're climbing together. As Yvonne described, we have a broader green building vision that includes a lot of different components. It includes water efficiency, indoor air quality, material and waste recycling, and those were all parts of the more comprehensive strategies that our building department has been using to try to strengthen our building codes. Energy is just one piece of that. And those conversations started this time around in this code update a year and a half ago, in February of 2018, when we convened the Green Building Summit at Mitchell Park. We had over 100 community members come spend a full day with us, and we had representatives from the CEC in Sacramento, committee staff, as well as one of the commissioners, come spend the day with us and be a part of those conversations, because they recognized Palo Alto's leadership on these issues. So we were very proud of that. We spent the morning listening to experts and speakers talk about these issues, and then we spent the afternoon getting feedback from the community, environmental activists, builders and developers, contractors, all talking about how they see these different issues playing out and what their recommendations were for prioritization in the building code updates, that Yvonne was just describing to you in the last item, and also in this item. We then revisited our green building advisory group, which includes members from all of those stakeholder groups, and convened a subset of that, the Technical Advisory Committee, for an extended period of time to do comprehensive community engagement about this. And if you look at our timeframe, you'll see, after the Green Building Summit in February of last year, the Green Building Technical Advisory Committee met from May until December of 2018 to go through all of those different topics and sections and really take them apart. During that time, Palo Alto initiated its own cost-effectiveness study, and we were the first in the state to do that this time around. And then, just as we were starting to bring our discussions with the Technical Advisory Committee to a conclusion, a statewide cost-effectiveness study was initiated. So Palo Alto joined that as well, along with other jurisdictions, and did a much more comprehensive cost-effectiveness study that took us to this past summer. That then informed staff's ability to develop the REACH code proposal before you today. As staff's draft recommendations were first taking form, we went back out to the community again, did several community meetings, which I think some of you were able to attend as well, went back to our Technical Advisory Committee a couple more times, and then finalized the proposal that we bring to you this evening. If you approve it, we will then go to the CEC in Sacramento for review and approval for implementation in the new year. What I'd like to do now is give you a quick flyover of six different areas that are in the proposal as sort of categories of topics, because it's pretty wide-ranging and complicated. the proposal, as sort of categories of topics, because it's pretty wide-ranging and complicated it, so we wanted to give you some buckets to think about that Yvonne and Christine will be talking about in greater detail. So the first category at 12 o'clock on the diagram in front of you is the notion of all-electric construction. And the idea here is, we, our staff proposal suggests that we would incentivize all-electric new construction by offering lower standards for all-electric new construction than for non-all-electric. So the standards would be a little bit lower as an incentive to build all-electric. We would also recommend to the council that you consider announcing now a goal of mandating all-electric new construction for residential in two years, and for other kinds of commercial, perhaps, as well. And Yvonne will talk about that in more detail. The next category to think about is mixed fuel, which means gas and electric together in the same building. And the staff proposal proposes extremely high new standards for mixed fuel, and I think some of that can get lost in the conversation as we talk about, should we go all-electric? When should we go all-electric? I think it's easy to lose track of the components of the staff proposal where the standards for mixed fuel are actually extremely high, and Yvonne will talk about that in more detail. The next category is new certification standards. The staff proposal recommends requiring a third-party compliance certification. This is a place where we're trying to up the enforcement side, so that we're not just levying mandates, but we're also actually holding folks accountable in a more substantive way, through enforcement. At 6 o'clock on the diagram, we have an objective to better define substantial remodels. And this is staff's recognition that if we pass an ordinance that is focused predominantly on new construction, we're only getting at a small sliver of the impact in the community, and we have to look at remodels as part of the solution here. And so, what staff is proposing we do is spend a period of time going forward, over the next year or two, to work with the community to figure out how, when does a remodel become new construction, is essentially the proposal. When does a remodel become new construction? If you're remodeling just one room, probably not. If you're remodeling the entire building except for one wall, perhaps we should be calling that new construction instead of just a remodel. So taking a look at how we define those terms would allow us to capture more activity out in the field under the category of new construction. Going around to the left side of the diagram, we have a category for incentivizing electrification of existing buildings, and the fact that we have our own utility allows us to do that. Most other cities aren't able to operate in this area, but we're looking at creative ways to do that. And lastly, market development via outreach and education, which is the notion of trying to cultivate an appetite in the community to go all-electric before imposing a mandate to do so, so that we can cultivate that voluntary interest in going all-electric. And all of these are designed to strengthen greater building efficiency, and what you'll see in the staff proposal, as Christine and Yvonne talk to you about it in more detail, is we tried to look beyond just how much are we electrifying, and get to how much are we actually gaining in efficiency? And those are two different things. And so, our methodology is focused primarily on building efficiency and not just electrification. So with that as a summary, I'll turn it over to our experts, and they'll take you into it in more detail.
Okay. Thank you, Michelle. Okay, so I am going to start talking about the details of the proposed Energy Ordinance. So first, we'll talk about the residential Reach Code ordinance improvements. So we have proposing two pathways. The first pathway is an all-electric design. So for residential new one- and two-family dwellings, and also for new low-rise multifamily, three stories or less, if you go all-electric design, you don't need to design your building to any additional efficiencies. And so this is the preferred path of our Reach Code. The other pathway would be for mixed-fuel designs. If you decide that you want to use a mixed-fuel design in your house, say you want your gas range, for example, then you have to design with what we call a total EDR reduction of 10 or more points less than the standard design. And the standard design is, once again, the base code based on the California Energy Code. So what is an EDR? In the footnote of that table, we define what EDR is. It's an energy design rating, and it's a metric for energy performance, and it's an index measured from 0 to 100, where a score of 0 is a zero, a zero net energy building that is very efficient, the most efficient, and a score of 100 is an inefficient building designed with the energy consumption of a building designed to the 2016 International Energy Conservation Code. So the lower the EDR, the better it is for the building. So in addition, if you choose to use the mixed-fuel design route, you also have to pre-wire the building for future electrification, for water heating, space heating, cooking, and clothes drying. Similarly, for low-rise multifamily apartments or apartments, they also have to design with an EDR reduction of 10 points less than what the standard code is, or standard design, which is the base code. And they also have to design, they also have to pre-wire the building for future electrification, for electric water heating, space heating, cooking, and clothes drying. Next, we'll talk about the proposed Reach Code for commercial and high-rise multifamily improvements. So once again, we have the two pathways, all-electric design, so for new office and retail buildings, and also for new hotels and motels and high-rise multifamily, if you go all-electric, you don't have to design with any additional efficiencies. This is the preferred path of our Reach Code. If you decide to choose a mixed-fuel design for new office and retail buildings, this requires that you have to design with 12% more efficient, more efficient building than what the standard design is, or what the California Energy Code requires. And once again, you also have to pre-wire for future electrification, for water heating, space heating, cooking, and clothes drying. And for new hotels and motels, it requires that you have to design to 5% more efficient than the standard design. And I just wanted to point out that these numbers are actually from our cost-effective study, based on our climate zone and based on our utility rates. So these additional percent increase in efficiencies are based on a cost-effective study. Also, if you do mixed-fuel for hotels and motels, you still have to do pre-wiring for future electrification, for water heating, space heating, and cooking. Okay. So next, I want to talk about residential and commercial Reach Code compliance. So I want to sort of talk more about the chart that's on the upper right-hand side. So I know you can't read it too closely, but it's just sort of diagrammatic. So on the left-hand side of the bar chart, the blue code, the blue box is representing what the minimum design standards are for 2016, a building designed to 2016 Energy Code, which we call the base code. And then on the right-hand side is the 2019 base code. So the difference between the 2016 and the 2019 is that the 2019 can be, is anywhere from 7 to 30% more efficient. So it's, the box is a little bit higher, because it's required to be more efficient. So the Reach Code that we're proposing, for if you use mixed fuel, is we're proposing anywhere from 5 to 12% better than the standard design. So on the right-hand side, it shows that we're still higher, we're so much higher than what the 2016 base, 2016 Energy Code is. So buildings next year will have to be designed much more efficient than what they're currently required to be designed to now. So the more stringent the energy, more stringent energy measures will have to be built into these buildings if they decide to do mixed fuel. Also, the, another, another recommendation that we make for the Energy Reach Code is that the Energy Code, or the Energy Report, or what we call the Title 24 Report for the building, has to be performed by a certified energy analyst, who is registered with the California Association of Building Energy Consultants, and this will be required for residential and non-residential new construction. Next, I want to touch upon residential remodels and commercial tenant improvements. So, once again, Michelle talked about how electrifying existing buildings accounts for 38% of our SCAP emissions on that donut chart that she showed early on. So this refers back to achieving that 38% reduction in our emissions of the 80 by 30. So the planning and building development services is, will be going back and will be analyzing what is the significant and substantial remodel in existing buildings. And at some point, a building is so substantially remodeled, it will trigger compliance to new construction requirements. So for example, we have a lot of, Palo Alto is a fairly, is a built-out city, so right now, in order to build a new structure, you essentially have to buy an existing structure, tear it down, and rebuild it. Well, a lot of these, a lot of the construction that we also see in addition to complete tear-downs is, they'll take an existing building, and they'll tear it down to maybe just the foundation, and build a new building, and call it a remodel, and not have to comply to new building standards. So we're going to go back and try to redefine when this constitutes essentially new construction, and then we can capture the Reach Code and other ordinances in this new definition. So we're working on defining this substantial remodel in planning and building. Okay. Also, in our Reach Code ordinance, we have, we're proposing a resolution to declare all-electric Energy Reach Code by 2022, in two years. And so this is a path to go to zero emissions. As Michelle says, we're planting a flag in 2022 that we will be all-electric at that time, and this is to meet our sustainability climate action goals of greenhouse gas reductions. Also, this allows for time for public outreach and education programs to promote electric appliances for fuel switching and electrification. And in addition, it also allows time for improved technology and the availability of these efficient electrical appliances for consumers. So this is what the all-electric Reach Code by 2022 will look like. For all the building types, from single-family to low-rise multifamily, to new office buildings, to new hotels, will be required to be all-electric with no additional efficiency required, and the mixed-fuel design will not be allowed. So next, I want to talk about emissions from, emissions reductions from the Reach Code. So if we look at this bar chart, on the right-hand side, I'm just going to go over this chart a little bit. So on the far-right-hand side, you see a diagonal legend, and it talks about the three rows. So the front row is what we call the mixed-fuel design building, the back row is the all-electric building, and then the middle row is what we call a hybrid. So if we look at this bar chart, and we look on the left-hand side for the base, base code with base efficiency, we see that in the third from the back row, you can see that Berkeley is an all-electric using the base code. So that's Berkeley, and then I guess San Jose is also coming back with their residential to acquire all-electric. And then in front of that, in the yellow bar chart, is Menlo Park. And so Menlo Park is proposing, for their Reach Code, do all-electric heating, so that would be water heating and space heating, but they still allow for gas, cooking appliances, and fireplaces. So that would be a hybrid in this case. So right now, with our Reach Code proposal, we are in the upper bounds as far as efficiency, because we're requiring more efficiency for mixed fuel, and I guess San Jose has that for their non-residential. So as far as looking that these high-energy efficient codes still, that still allow natural gas, will still yield smaller emissions because they use less energy. So even though we are not going all-electric, we still have pretty low emissions because we're using less energy. Okay. So next, I'd like to pass this along to Christine Tam.
Thank you, Yvonne. So, the proposed Reach Code that Yvonne just described only impacts new construction projects in the city of Palo Alto, and that approximately accounts for under 1% of the total building stock in the city. To really make an impact on the greenhouse gas emissions reduction, we need to look at the existing building stock, the 99% of the buildings in Palo Alto, and we need to find ways to help homeowners to switch out their gas appliances to electric alternatives. So about three years ago, the City of Palo Alto Utilities launched a heat pump water heater rebate program to incentivize homeowners to replace their water heaters before they fail, because we don't want any last-minute emergency replacement. So by planning out their water heater replacement, they can put in a much more efficient heat pump water heater. And we currently have a rebate of up to $1,500 for such a replacement. And we are looking to expand the rebate offerings for home electrifications to the homeowners in Palo Alto. As shown in the slide up there, I have the different type of rebates that we're hoping to roll out over the next six to nine months timeframe. As you can see, the water heater there, that's a heat pump water heater, and it really looks just like a gas tank water heater, and even size-wise, it's very similar to a regular gas tank water heater. And on the bottom left, that is what we call an air-source heat pump, is an electric heat pump system for space heating and space cooling, so that can take the place of a gas furnace and a central AC, is very efficient, and, and works for, it works for all kinds of home HVAC systems. We are also hoping to roll out rebates for induction cooktops. So this is a technology that is relatively unknown to a lot of homeowners, and we'll probably, I'll get into more about the induction cooking in the next slide. We're also looking to offer rebates for electric clothes dryer. A lot of homes, about 30, 40% of the homes in Palo Alto have gas clothes dryers, so we are hoping to incentivize homeowners to replace these gas clothes dryers with very efficient electric alternatives. And the last rebate in this list is the EV charger and electric panel upgrade. So a lot of homes, if they don't have the adequate electric panel capacity, most likely they're not going to move to any additional electric appliances. And if they are planning to buy a EV, that is actually a really good time to upgrade the panel, and that gives them the additional capacity to add other electric alternatives. So we currently have other types of programs to support home electrification, including an induction cooktop loaner program, and this is a partnership that Palo Alto has with Actera to loan out induction cooktops to homeowners, so that they can give it a try, test drive one of these cooktops. Induction cooking is cleaner, safer, and faster than gas cooking, and it doesn't require really any new appliances, any, most cooking pans are compatible for induction cooktops, cast-iron pans are compatible. So in the loaner kit that we're offering, that includes a single portable induction cooktop, a pan that works with the cooktop, and also a piece of magnet, so you can test out your cooking pans to see if that works with the induction cooking, because it does need to be a magnetic pan in order to work for, to work, to be compatible with induction cooking. We actually are just ready to launch the new Home Electrification Readiness Assessment Program, and this is a program where we will send someone to your house, and they will take a look at your electric panel to see if your panel has the capacity to accommodate a new heat pump water heater, or an induction cooktop, or even a clothes dryer. And as you can see in this table, most of these type of projects, whether you're adding a Level 2 EV charger, or a heat pump water heater, it requires additional amperage. And for an older home with a 100-amp panel, it would be very difficult to accommodate these type of electrification projects. So for $49, you can get someone to come out to your house to look at the panel to see if you need an upgrade. And the websites for the induction- And the websites for the induction cooktop loaner program and the Electrification Readiness Assessment Service is also on this webpage, I mean, on this, on this slide. We are also going to be increasing the market adoptions of electrification through public education and outreach. So, just a couple of weeks ago, we, the city hosted a home electrification expo. We invited electrification experts to come in as speakers, and we also had representatives from different manufacturers to come in to answer questions from homeowners. Over the course of six hours, we have over 400 attendees coming to this, to this expo. And so far, we have received very positive feedback on the expo, and we're getting a lot of requests for something similar in the future. We plan to host additional workshops, cool block meetings, and other neighborhood meetings to help homeowners become more familiar with building electrification. And we're also posting, actually, just recently, also in the last month or so, we have a new electrification landing page on the city's website. And that's shown, that's a kind of a screenshot of that webpage that gives more information to anyone that comes to our webpage to learn more about the different types of appliances. And we also plan to launch a social media campaign also to help promote electrification to homeowners and help them become more familiar with the different technologies. Besides these type of workshops and homepage, we're working with other entities in the Bay Area, including Bay Ran and other cities who have, actually, community choice aggregators like the Silicon Valley Clean Energy and San Jose Clean Energy to influence the supply chain. Palo Alto is a very small city. We don't, we only have about 80,000 residents in Palo Alto. So, to really work, to get the contractors to promote electrification, we need to work with contractors and distributors throughout the Bay Area. So, the Bay Ran program that we're working with, they will be targeting contractors in nine counties in the Bay Area to provide training and also to provide mis用incentives to the plumbers so that they will start carrying these heat pump water heaters or So, as part of staff's effort to develop the proposed energy REACH code, we have been a part of the statewide REACH code team to study the cost-effectiveness of different types of REACH code requirements. There are a number of cities that have already adopted local ordinance that restricts the use of gas equipment or incentivizes all-electric design through the REACH code in new construction projects. And I wanted to just briefly describe a few of these other cities, what they're doing. So, in the city of Menlo Park, they have recently adopted a REACH code, as Yvonne also briefly alluded to, that requires that all-new low-rise residential buildings be all-electric. However, they do allow gas cooking, gas fireplace, and gas grills in these new residential buildings. For non-residential, non-residential buildings, Menlo Park ordinance will require that they be all-electric. There are a number of exceptions for the non-residential buildings, including life sciences buildings, public agencies-owned and operated emergency operations, and also non-residential kitchens. And in all of these, in all of these exceptions, they do have to be all-electric-ready. They need to be wired for future electrification. As for the city of San Jose, they have just actually, last week, adopted a prohibition on gas infrastructure for new low-rise residential buildings, which means that all-new low-rise residential buildings cannot have any gas line or gas appliances. For non-residential buildings and high-rise residential buildings, San Jose has adopted a REACH code very similar to what staff Yvonne has described for, for non-residential buildings. Essentially, for mixed-fuel projects, they need to meet additional efficiency and electrification readiness requirements. San Jose also adopted a policy that all new municipal buildings have to be constructed without natural gas infrastructure, and there are a number of exceptions for the municipal buildings as shown in this slide, and I won't go into the details of the exceptions. As for the city of Berkeley, they were actually the first one to adopt a natural gas prohibition that was back in July. And this natural gas prohibition will apply to all-new low-rise residential buildings beginning in January 2020. For non-residential buildings, however, Berkeley will still allow mixed-fuel usage. Berkeley recognizes that there is still some compliance software glitches in the CEC software, so they are planning a phase extension of the natural gas ban to these commercial buildings as they, as CEC fixes the software. There are some exemptions to the Berkeley gas ban that includes the internal accessory dwelling units, and also if the projects demonstrate that the use of natural gas serves the public interest. So, so, one might ask, why, why wait until 2022 to begin an all-electric mandate? There are a number of reasons that, as staff discussed internally and also with our, with our public meetings. A lot, most homeowners are still very much in love with their gas cooktop. When they build a new home or when they do a kitchen remodel, they are still very excited about their new 25,000 BTU gas cooktops and their gas fireplaces. So, there definitely needs to be some additional education and outreach to kind of change the hearts of these homeowners. Also, there's a lack, general, a lack of awareness of efficient electric alternatives to water heating and space heating among homeowners and architects. And currently, from our public outreach sessions, a number of questions came up about heat pump radiant floor heating in new construction projects. It is possible to put in heat pump systems for radiant floor heating systems. However, there are limited options, and a lot of contractors are still not really familiar with how to install these systems. So, we've also felt that we need to give the market a little bit more time to become familiar with these technologies and how to build them. As for non-residential projects, heat pump equipments currently that are available to meet the air conditioning low for life sciences buildings and for labs and also for large commercial buildings may not be available or can be very expensive. And also, as Yvonne also pointed out, for the CEC energy compliance software, central space heating and central water heating systems are currently really difficult to model in the compliance software, so it makes it more difficult to pass the Title 24 standards. So, over the next two years between now and 2022, we are hoping to continue to collaborate with our customers and with other partners to step up the education component of our proposed plan. We want to increase the availability of the products and also to help train these contractors and designers to help them to become more familiar with heat pump products. And we want to help our customers and chefs, local chefs, increase their adoption of induction cooking in their homes and in restaurants. And overall, we have been and will continue to work to remove barriers of all-electric adoption for new construction projects.
So, our last slide is the recommendation from the staff memo, and that concludes our staff presentation. At this time, we'd be happy to answer questions.
I think what, what we should do is go to the public. How many speakers do we have?
At this time, we have 21.
We have 21 speakers. So, let's do that, and you'll each have two minutes. Let me ask a question to make sure I understand one of your slides, though. If you look at slide 32. So, if you look at a number of the other ordinances, you know, there are a variety of exemptions for this or that or the other thing and so forth. In the far-right column here where we say "not allowed," are you assuming no exemptions or are you assuming that, that there will be some exemptions in Palo Alto as well?
We're assuming there would probably be exemptions in Palo Alto as well. We would need to, that's why we would need a couple of years to nail those down.
Okay, understood. All right, thank you very much. So, let us go to the public, and the first speaker will be Judith Wasserman.
Good evening, council members and Mayor Philseth. I'm going to try and keep this to two minutes. One thing that has not been mentioned is that photovoltaic panels will be required on new houses, so there will be a little extra electricity available for some of these electrical appliances. Before I get any further, I want to say that we should do it now, that I, until the, the new report came out a year ago about how much more rapidly things were changing than we thought they were, I thought, yeah, sure, let's take a couple of years, let's look at this. I don't think we have that luxury. And this is not, I would like to point out, a question of saving the planet. The planet will do quite well without us, perhaps better. What we're talking about is saving human beings and the way we're used to living. So, if you want to keep doing that and not cooking yourself all the time, we got to cut down on carbon emissions. It's not a matter of energy efficiency anymore. It's really a matter of carbon emissions. And if you allow people to put in their, oh, I love my gas cooktop, they love their high-flow showerheads too, and we didn't let them put those in either. If we let them put that in, they will have stranded assets in no time at all because the city is going to be all-electric and they won't have gas service anymore. So, I would strongly suggest that we bite the bullet and go all-electric as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Mayor Philseth, Vice, Vice Mayor Fine, and council members. I'm here to basically remind council members that while everybody in the city is working towards cleaner resources and energies, we need to make sure that we are evaluating this further until Title 24 catches up because right now, Title 24 regulates energy use in buildings and actually prohibits explicitly electric-resistant heating. And in commercial buildings, that's a big problem because the only alternative is heat pumps. And as stated in the staff report, there are no heat pumps that actually can service the capacity needed in commercial buildings today. And so, that needs to be considered prior to full adoption. And secondly, I want to give an example because in one of our projects on Page Mill, we actually achieved LEED Platinum, which I believe was the first LEED Platinum building in the research park, and we achieved 94% efficiency with electricity because exactly of this issue, the heat pump issue that's not allowed or technology that doesn't exist. And secondly, I wanted to also emphasize the, the cost study that does not address buildings over 53,000 square feet. So, there is no study right now that addresses larger commercial buildings and the impact that they have, or the impact that electrification has on those buildings, full electrification. So, like what staff said, with life science buildings, large commercial buildings, all of that still needs to be studied further. So, I would encourage council to look at having the mixed-fuel option and even a high standard for that, 90%, 90% or so of electric building standards for those type of buildings because, again, the technology efficiencies don't exist today for large commercial buildings.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Philseth and council members. My name's Diane Bailey. I'm director of Menlo Spark, a local climate advocacy group aimed at a zero-carbon future for our region. We're also a proud member of the Fossil-Free Buildings Campaign for Silicon Valley, which has 25 other groups aligned with us, working to accelerate a phase-out of fossil fuels in our buildings in the region. And I want to urge you to do the same as Judith, which is to move as quickly as possible to get our buildings off of gas. We urge you to adopt as strong of a REACH code this evening, but then also make a commitment to come back as quickly as possible with a full gas ban. And we're asking this because we're watching other cities do the same, and we know that Palo Alto can. Palo Alto has a history of climate leadership, and we're watching San Jose, Menlo Park, Mountain View, and even Morgan Hill adopt gas bans or all-electric REACH codes. And so, our challenge to you is, please match them and protect the residents with cleaner, healthier, and more resilient homes. I want to point out that if you trace natural gas along its path, natural gas, also known as methane, is really polluting and hazardous from the wells where it is fracked, leaking methane all the way throughout the pipeline distribution system to our homes at the meter outside our homes. And then, it produces noxious pollution when it's burned in our appliances and stoves, and this in turn causes respiratory illnesses such as asthma. And so, and it also poses serious fire risk and carbon monoxide poisoning risk. These health and safety hazards are something that we know as fact and that are extremely preventable. We've been working with experts around the state to analyze and compile examples of all-electric buildings. We have an all-electric multifamily guide as well as a commercial guide that details large commercial projects that have used heat pumps successfully and have saved money while doing so. And so, we are at an inflection point in a climate crisis and strongly urge your bold action to commit to a gas ban as expeditiously as possible. Thanks.
Thank you. David Cole.
Hello, my name is David Cole, and I was on the Technical Advisory Committee for the Green Building Task Force. I'd like to thank staff for all the great work that we've done, and it's been quite a journey. Staff stated that the preferred path is all-electric, and I believe that is correct. And I need to say that we need to get there now, as the previous speaker and the first speaker mentioned. They said, the, the other speaker said that all-electric heat pumps cannot be done for large buildings. Correct me if I'm wrong, but the entire Stanford campus is heated and cooled by heat pump water, heat pump technology. Sven Thiesen's house is a radiant-heated all-electric house with heat pump technology. So, it's seven years old. The technology is there, we can do this, and we need to do it now. Title 24 talks about efficiencies, but what is really on tap here is emissions, greenhouse gas emissions. This is one of the top priorities of the council, and we need to address this now. If you could please bring up slide 14. Slide 14, if you look at bullet point four from a 2015 planning document, shows that we were to be all-electric already at this time. In fact, we are supposed to be net-zero energy homes at this time. So, we are already behind by our own planning that was done a long time ago. Why did this happen? Change in council, change in city staff, change in city manager, our Chief Sustainability Officer, and our Development Department head left. So, we are behind, we need to catch up. What's not mentioned is that Mountain View is already thinking of all-electric, and so is Morgan Hill. So, we cannot afford to do business as usual. Some people may bring up resiliency. The greatest threat we have actually is not power outages, it's earthquakes. And to remove gas from our homes and reduce that stranded asset and the hazard that goes with it is very important. Please support an all-electric REACH code now.
Thank you. David Page.
Hi, everyone. I wanted to thank you all for voting the way you did on 9A, and thanks to everybody that's doing all the hard work that you're doing, that is behind the scenes, maybe sometimes invisible to those of us that just look at you at the meeting once in a while. I also have an apology. It seems like a lot of your business that you do as city council members is hearing people complain, and I'm here to complain, so I would just wanted to give you a heads-up and an apology. What I heard tonight was about mixed-fuel, energy efficiency, natural gas, and emissions reductions. I didn't hear anything about poison, poison gas, or poisonous natural gas. And why would I say the word poison? If somebody, some animal, some plant, some human is If somebody, some animal, some plant, some human is being killed by a gas, then wouldn't that make it poison? Natural makes it sound good, like, oh, natural, that's great stuff. My son's ex-in-laws got burned out of their house a week and a half ago in the Kincaid Fire, their barn or house, they lost everything. I don't think they were thinking, you know, natural, gas, yeah, that's great stuff. I think they were thinking more about poison stuff kills people. And how much methane do we have to put in the atmosphere? And how many dead bodies have to show up across the whole earth before we start calling this stuff poisonous gas? And if you called it poisonous gas, would you really vote for a two-year delay before you say, oh, let's get rid of it? I don't think so. So I'm asking you tonight, every time you hear the word "natural gas," translate it in your mind to the word "poisonous gas," and then see how you vote. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Stephen Rosenblum.
Good evening, council members. I'd like to thank staff for this great proposal to reduce our dependence on carbon and fossil fuels. Today is kind of an auspicious day because President Trump has seen fit to withdraw the United States from the Paris Climate Accord. And that just, you know, I don't think anybody in this room needs to be convinced of the science of climate change and that it's human-caused, and that we have a very short amount of time to do something about it. Palo Alto has been leader on this issue for a long time, and I think we need to show our leadership even more by even bigger commitment than what the staff has proposed. And I think one thing that we could do is eliminate the ADU exemption. There's no reason to allow that to happen. These are small remodels, and they can easily be included in an all-electric scenario. The other thing is that we should accelerate the implementation as quickly as possible. The world doesn't have until 2030 to get to zero fossil fuels. 80 by 30 is not enough. We need to get to zero by 25. And we can see the ice caps are melting, the glaciers are melting, the tundra is softening and releasing its carbon. We're running out of time, you know, California's burning. I really think we have to get off our butts and really start doing something and not just let things slip. Thank you.
Thank you. Pat Burt, former mayor Pat Burt.
Good evening. Just three years ago, we adopted the SCAP. And since that time, we are now facing some very important developments. We now understand that the risks from climate change are even more severe and more urgent than we recognized at that time. We recognize that even greater importance of the local and subregional governments to addressing climate change and establishing new, higher norms for others to follow. And we now actually know that achieving our goals will take a series of clear actions, and that half-measures simply won't do the job. I urge you to move to all-new construction away from the methane gas hookups and fold the higher energy efficiency recommendations for Alternative 2B into Alternative 2A. They've already had to meet the cost-effectiveness standard. I'd also like to note that methane gas from cooking is itself a significant direct health hazard to those exposed to it. So who among us thinks that a decade from now will think it was a good decision to have continued to build new buildings using polluting energy and outdated technology? And lastly, when we look back in 20 years, we will not want to look at our kids and their grandkids and tell them that we knew the severity of our problem, but we chose not to do what we could when we still had time. Thank you.
Thank you. Kevin Ma.
Evening, council, staff. Climate change is already affecting our world. The bay water levels are rising, endangering the baylands. And we've had a power shut-off in everywhere basically west of the 280 just last month. So the effects are here. And therefore, I would like to support an all-electric, no-natural gas for any of the new constructions from now on, including for ADUs, anything. Because my generation and our generation, every future generation is going to look at this point now and say, what could we have done if the world just gets any worse? Thank you.
Thank you. Dashal Leeds.
Hello, mayor and city council. My name is Dashal Leeds. I'm a conservation assistant with the Sierra Club. I'm a president chapter. It's really hard to put this into words. We are in a crisis right now. 2018 was the largest and deadliest wildfire season ever recorded in California, and conditions are getting worse. I live up in a redwood forest, and it's pretty ominous to go outside and smell burning trees. It kind of feels like the apocalypse, and it really is in a way. We need action now. We absolutely cannot wait, and we know the science is there. When we look at natural gas infrastructure, these pipes are going to be constantly polluting methane into our atmosphere, leaking from extraction to source of our homes. And this is absolutely unsustainable. We need action now. We absolutely cannot wait. And if we do not take action now, what does that send to our future generations? I think it's time for us to consider strong action. I believe that Palo Alto is falling behind, and it is time for us to look to the leadership of other cities and take that leadership mantle on ourselves. Please consider a prohibition on natural gas in new buildings as soon as possible. If you look at Menlo Park, if you look at Mountain View, and if you look at San Jose, the city councils in those cities made motions on the dies to improve staff's recommendation on the reach codes. I think we need that kind of leadership tonight. Please pass an all-electric reach code now, and please consider a natural gas ban within the year. Thank you.
Thank you. Don Jackson.
Good evening, council members. We know today that natural gas combustion and greenhouse gas emissions are harmful to the environment. We know that natural gas combustion is a health hazard. We know that gas, natural gas line ruptures and fires as a result of earthquakes are a serious health, safety hazard. And we also know that the useful life of newly-installed HVA systems, stoves, and hot-water heaters is, can exceed 20 years. So every gas appliance that is installed will need to be removed, so why are we going to dig ourselves into a deeper hole? What are we going to learn over the next few years that we don't already know today? I'm extremely skeptical that homeowners, contractors, and architects are going to pause and learn about something until they are forced to do so. And adopting an all-electric reach code today will provide that motivation and force them to consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Alexandra Lee, to be followed by Ida Rose Sylvester. Alexandra, let's go to speaker number 12, Ida Rose Sylvester.
I'm Ida Rose Sylvester of the Fossil Free Buildings Silicon Valley Coalition, a group of nearly 30 people or groups working together to create a fossil-free future in Santa Clara and San Mateo counties. Thank you for your climate leadership tonight and all the work of staff that got us to this point. I urge you to support strong mandates by 2020. Pass the reach code, adding back in ADUs, and moving up the remodeling requirement to 2020. The remodeling requirement is innovative and shows true climate leadership. Please move up the passing of an all-electric code from 2022 to 2020. Please don't waste time building infrastructure and buildings that will soon be inachronisms. By January 2020, have staff share options for decarbonizing existing buildings. We need to move past this cautious studying stage. Our climate is changing faster than anyone predicted, ravaging our state with lost crops, drought, heat waves, and wildfires. The time to act is now. Menlo Park, Morgan Hill, San Jose, and Mountain View have passed nearly all-electric reach codes, and many more cities will do the same by the end of this year. Many of these cities began by suggesting model code or similar, and quickly realized that all-electric code has many advantages, including being easier to implement, faster to permit, more cost-effective for building and residents, and better for the environment, and adopted an all-electric code instead. All-electric homes are real. Hundreds of examples exist in the U.S. now, including single-family, mixed-use, high-density, affordable housing, commercial, and even laboratory buildings here in the Bay Area. Just around the corner is Project Green Home of Sven Thesen and Dr. Kathleen Kramer. For the past years, eight years, they've lived the all-electric life, finding it safer, less expensive than a mixed-fuel home, both in its construction and its ongoing operating cost, more convenient and more pleasant, and has a much lower carbon and energy footprint than their equivalent mixed-fuel home. We would happily give you a tour of this home at any time. Thank you.
Thank you. Suzanne Emerson.
Good evening. My name is Suzanne Emerson. I perform CalGreen special inspections on residential projects, including extensive experience here in Palo Alto, so I'm familiar with what a robust program you have. But what we really need to do is stop burning natural gas. Burning natural gas produces byproducts that include carbon monoxide, nitrogen dioxide, formaldehyde, and particulates. Studies have shown that in a small or medium-sized home, if you have a gas stove and you make a large meal on that gas stove, it can easily result in indoor air quality that is actually worse than the standards for outdoor air quality. That would violate national air quality standards if it were outside the house. One study of women who, it compared women who live in homes with natural gas cooking appliances to women who live in homes with all-electric cooking appliances. They found the women in the homes with the natural gas appliances are twice as likely to suffer the symptoms of lung disease and three times as likely to need asthma medication. There are also substantial impacts for children and small pets. Even just having the pipes in the house is a safety hazard. Half of all, nationwide, half of all fires in residences are caused by natural gas equipment. After the Northridge earthquake, half of the fires were caused by ruptured gas lines. In my work doing green building special inspections under the Green Point Rated-for-Homes program, I check for natural gas leakage and carbon monoxide production off of existing equipment. I routinely find leakage of the connections between the pipes and the water heater or the furnace or the range. I also routinely find carbon monoxide coming off of those equipment that is unacceptably high. In one project, they had a cracked heat exchanger in a building where they had a preschool run during the day, and they lived in it during the night. They complained about routine chronic headaches because they were getting heart carbon monoxide poisoning. Please go all-electric. Thank you.
Thank you. Debbie Meithels.
Good evening, council members. I'm speaking here tonight representing Peninsula Interface Climate Action. It's a group of about a dozen local congregations, many of which, of course, include lots of Palo Alto residents. We are participating in the Fossil Free Silicon Valley campaign because we think it's really important. Before I get into some of those issues, I do want to thank you for the comments that the staff made today, and particularly two items I thought were particularly valuable. One is that after the buildings are allowed to be given permits for under growing, building under the reach codes, that there would be an inspection by a specifically-trained energy analyst. I think it's really important that we really follow up on things that we do and really be sure that those buildings that are approved really meet those standards, especially if they include natural gas, along the lines of things that Suzanne just mentioned. Secondly, I personally also really appreciate the expanded rebate offerings you're suggesting for electrification of residential appliances. That's really important. You've heard a lot already tonight about the problems with natural gas. One thing I would just add is that San Bruno wasn't really an accident. It was an accident waiting to happen. Our whole area is interlocked with lots of leaking natural gas pipes, and this is something we really need to think about for safety, as well as for earthquake safety, as someone mentioned. So I also would like to encourage you to move faster on this. Let's put Palo Alto back in the forefront with Menlo Park, Mountain View, and San Jose. And to think about the fact that we really have very few new buildings happening in Palo Alto, so the impact upon them of having to move up a little bit faster probably is not going to impact a lot of organizations, and it's something that can be dealt with if absolutely necessary by a delayed permit or a slightly, you know, exemption could be offered or something like that. So I look forward really to seeing the day when we can turn off the natural gas pipelines in Palo Alto. Thank you.
Thank you. Bruce Hodge.
Good evening. Bruce Hodge from Carbon Free Palo Alto. I'd like to step back and provide some context for while we're here. Here are a few lines from Greta Thunberg's recent speech at the UN. This is all wrong. You have stolen my dreams and my childhood with your empty words, and yet I'm one of the lucky ones. People are suffering. People are dying. Entire ecosystems are collapsing. We are in the beginning of a mass extinction, and all you can talk about is money and fairy tales of eternal economic growth. How dare you? For more than 30 years, the science has been crystal clear. How dare you continue to look away and come here saying that you're doing enough when the politics and solutions needed are nowhere in sight? Let's unpack this a bit. We have a serious global crisis on our hands. Collectively and for a host of reasons, we're all in denial, and we're failing to address this issue. Let's be honest. Business as usual magnifies the crisis. Tepid incremental steps aren't much help either. No wonder Greta is angry. I'm with Greta. She's providing real leadership instead of platitudes. What will be our response? Palo Alto needs to wake up and pay attention to these issues. Requiring new construction to be fossil-free is not a big deal, frankly. We know how to do it. The new electric solutions are better, and these pitiful moans about not having gas stoves is pathetic when you consider the future impact. This should be a no-brainer. Let's follow Berkeley's lead on this and adopt an all-electric ordinance for new construction. With that out of the way, we can quit wasting valuable resources on the whole reach code approach and focus on the harder task of wringing fossil fuel usage out of our existing buildings and transportation infrastructure. Finally, we need to quit kidding ourselves about the staffing levels required to implement robust measures. We should be doubling or tripling the staff headcount and working smarter. Please support a voting-free ordinance as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Brett Anderson.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to address you again on climate change. As part of Carbon Free Palo Alto, we've been part of the Technical Advisory Committee for the Green Building Task Force. We've had a lot of discussion with them and also with the network throughout Silicon Valley on what it would mean to get rid of gas in new buildings. What this represents is a real kind of low-hanging fruit in terms of climate change action. It's something that for Palo Alto really will not cost us too much because we're not doing a lot of new building. All of the studies, all of the testimonials, most of the builders who are involved in the industry say that it's doable, it saves costs, it improves our health. It's kind of a win-win all around. So for new buildings, we're saving everyone money. We are getting some people to learn about these new practices, which are standard around the world, but just not in California yet. So it's, it's as if we're just bringing to California the building standards for all-electric building that have been used, tested, and are being implemented all over the world already. So we're really just saying, we're not going to expand our gas network anymore for new buildings. The real task for us is existing buildings. But the importance of this is for a kickstart of the development of all-electric solutions for existing buildings, to drive that cost down, to join with other cities, to make a clear statement to the suppliers and the installers that you can safely invest in all-electric technologies that are much more efficient, much safer, and there's going to be a future for your business. You're going to grow fast. We're going to very rapidly migrate our infrastructure in all our homes and buildings from gas to electric. So it's important that we stay ahead of the curve with other cities to push this forward. The CEC is also observing what's happening during this time, so they would really like to adopt what leading cities are doing. So we have a very important role to signal to the state what the next round of codes will be for the state.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tom Cabat. Tom Cabot.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Tom Cabot. I'm a retired 30-year utility resource planner with the city. I started in the building science area, helping do the solar program for the city, and then moved into electric resource area, helping get you to the 100% carbon-free electric portfolio. I live in Menlo Park. I'm a Menlo Park Environmental Quality Commissioner, and so I was very involved in their REACH code efforts. And then I also sat on the Technical Advisory Committee that others have been mentioning. So what I've been seeing going on is that there is an opportunity, and leadership really counts now. And in every city I've been looking at, staff... And I have to tell you what it's like to be staff. First, I'll contrast it with the IPCC scientists, who, in a consensus approach, tend to give us ever slower forecasts than how climate is really changing. And even theirs are scary. So it's changing faster than the scary reports they put out. But things are changing fast. They say we need to act rapidly in ways that are far-reaching and unprecedented. And as a staffer, that was an anathema to me. I could not do that. But we, as citizens, are coming to you to ask you to do what staff cannot do. You need to set this up and enact an all-electric REACH code and stop the practice of stranding any new assets. It will, as other speakers have said, transform the market and make the retrofits easier. Please lead on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve Itrim.
Thank you, City Council, for dealing with this issue, and thank you for your staff report. I'm just a Palo Alto grandfather trying to make a livable world, help to get to a livable world for my children and grandchildren. As you know well, we are in a climate emergency, and as so eloquently stated by Greta, we are way beyond... Too late to address it. So please help make methane an obsolete energy source. We don't need it. We can live better without it. Help electrify our lives. Please pass the Energy Efficiency REACH code. Thank you.
Thank you. Elizabeth Greenfield.
Good evening. My name is Elizabeth, and I'm a Palo Alto resident. I care enough about environmental sustainability to work in that field down the street at the city of Sunnyvale, but I'm here to speak for myself. I am very excited that tonight is the night to vote on REACH codes in Palo Alto. As you know, aside from transportation, natural gas is the largest source of fossil fuel emissions in the city, at 27%, or around 135,000 metric tons of carbon dioxide equivalent. Even with so-called natural gas offsets, powering our lives with electricity from renewable sources is a much better option than burning carbon-emitting fossil fuels. I am here to strongly encourage you to vote to approve the REACH code with the following provisions. Number one, make the natural gas ban effective as soon as possible, ideally January 1st, but no later than July 2020. There is no reason to dawdle and create more stranded assets. Don't wait for the market to change. Change the market. Other cities are able to act quicker on this same timeline, as was mentioned before: Menlo Park, San Jose, Morgan Hill, and likely Mountain View, and five other cities in Santa Clara County. It is also easier for builders to act in conjunction with the 2019 state building codes, which will be effective January 1. Remove the exemption currently given to accessory dwelling units and remodels. ADUs are the perfect candidates for all-electric building as they are smaller units and will benefit from avoiding the expense of a gas hookup. Finally, request staff to present on the options to decarbonize the existing building stock by January 2020. This is a big deal, and we need to get started with rebates, education efforts, and hard policy as soon as possible. I am of the generation that will inherit the legacy of your climate actions. Please act quickly to make up for the 40-plus years of lost time and maximize the effectiveness of municipal staff time and funds to not have to redo mistakes that happened over the next two years. Thank you.
Thank you. Julia Zeitlin.
Good evening, councilors and Mayor Filth. My name is Julia Zeitlin, and I lead the Palo Alto Sunrise Movement and am a member of the Palo Alto Youth Council. I'm an eighth grader at Castelaya, where I serve as our community action rep. I'm here tonight to express my support for electrifying new building construction and taking a further step to reduce Palo Alto's carbon footprint. I believe the climate justice movement is as strong as it's been right now, as it's ever been right now. As you're probably aware, just over a month ago, hundreds of people demonstrated right outside of City Hall demanding stronger action. This resolution is a great opportunity for Palo Alto to continue its leadership by example and a win for all of us concerned citizens, showing us that our activism matters and that we're capable of taking smart steps, big and small, to address the challenges ahead of us. Thank you for your amazing work, and I urge the council to support this resolution, as well as any opportunity to make these changes sooner. Thank you.
Thank you. Bruce Nagel.
Good evening, Council and Mayor. Thanks for the opportunity to be able to speak and for the work that you've put in already. Like all the others, or many of the others, I'm going to be saying that we need to accelerate getting this done. And the reason is the speaker that just came before me. If we don't deal with this, we're going to leave them a planet that isn't going to be habitable. During the discussions in Mountain View, the vice mayor basically said that her kids, her two children, were concerned about the fact of would they have a life to live as things continue. So we need to address this and address it now. You've got an 80/30 plan that may be insufficient, but you've got a set of goals at least to start to work from, and we do need to pursue this as rapidly as possible. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Scott Schell.
Thank you and thanks, staff, for working on this issue. I'm Scott Schell with EHD Architects, who are a 65-person architectural firm practicing here in Palo Alto and all over California. We've been designing all-electric buildings since 2001. When we started, it was hard, and they were more expensive. That's changed more than I ever believed it was, and it's now kind of a standard part of our practice, and it's very cost-effective right now. We've done large office buildings. We've done big science museums. We've done lots of schools. We've done all types of buildings. Our biggest clients are Stanford and the University of California system. They're both pushing electrification really hard. The University of California now prohibits the use of gas for heating and hot water in all of their buildings on all 10 campuses of all types. They're just finishing lots of large developer-student housing projects that are all-electric. They happened before this ordinance came into effect, or this policy, because they're less expensive, so the developers chose to go that way. The UC for all of their projects requires a 20% compliance margin. We have to exceed by 20%. A 5% compliance margin is nothing. I'm really encouraging you to not just incentivize it. You've been incentivizing it for three years, and it hasn't worked. Less than 10% of your current projects under your existing compliance margin have gone electric, is what I understand. So I encourage you to take this opportunity to pass an all-electric requirement. The industry's ready. I've talked to my colleagues, other architects, other engineers. They all say we're ready. I submitted dozens of projects, big projects, that show projects using current technology, current heat pumps. We're ready to do this, and we ask for your help doing that. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I ask Mr. Schell a question here? Are we... I guess I will. What do you do for space and water heating in a large office building?
They're heat pumps. Where I'm from in Florida, it's mostly all-electric. They have high-rise condos all over the beach. Most of the southeast and most of the northwest are electric, and they use heat pumps for that. Stanford, for their central plant, they have a... It's a heat-rejection chiller. So they take... The chiller is taking... I'm trying to explain the refrigeration cycle. They're taking the... Using the chiller to make cold air, and there's waste heat from that, and they're making that... Using that for making the hot water. And so you need both of those in most commercial office buildings. You're heating and cooling simultaneously. There's a reheat coil, and so commercial office buildings are actually great projects to take all-electric. There's lots of examples around, and I can show you those.
I understand. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
We now return to council for comments, questions, and motions. Councilmember Cormac.
Given the many details here, do you really want motions now, or do we want questions and comments first?
I think it would be pragmatic to do questions and comments first unless somebody feels like they really compellingly need to make a motion right now.
All right. Fantastic. Okay. So much here. I want to start by saying how grateful I am to the many members of the community who've been working on this for so long and providing so many details to all of us, seconded quickly by the staff who's been working on this for such a long time. I personally don't find it helpful to get into a debate about who's first and who's behind, and, you know, things change over time, and I appreciate Deputy City Manager Flaherty's description of where we've come. Do you have some questions? ADUs. So I see in the addendum here that staff currently considers it either infeasible or should be exempted due to space. Can you please elaborate on that?
Okay, I'm going to pull up a slide on that. Okay, so staff has looked at ADUs, and one of the difficulties that we've had in current permits, building permits with ADUs, is trying to go all-electric. And one of the difficulties is the heat pump water heater. So the heat pump water heater is sort of like a reverse refrigerator. It takes ambient air, and then it heats up the water. So in order to get enough heat from the ambient air, it needs 760 cubic feet. And so if you figure a seven-foot-tall ceiling, you need at least 100 or 70 square-foot area in order to make a heat pump water heater effective. So when you're building an ADU, most of the ADUs that we see that come into the building department are around 300 square feet or less. And so if you have to dedicate 100 square feet to the heat pump water heater, that takes a good majority of your ADU right there. And then... So that was one of the difficulties that we had. And then they're also difficult to install on the exterior because now they're in the setback, and so there's a noise ordinance. They have to be under a certain amount of decibels in order to be installed on the exterior. And what ends up being is that they have to be put into some sort of closet or something like that on the exterior, and then they can't be put in the setback. So there's been a lot of challenges right now with ADUs and the heat pump technology.
Is there a size of ADU that you think it would be currently feasible to do? I mean, you're saying the average is 300, or maybe you're getting a lot. I know there's some that are larger. What's a feasible size that'd be appropriate?
Well, I think the maximum right now that we allow is 900 or 1,000 square feet is the maximum. So for ADUs. So... But we're seeing most people coming in with a lot smaller ADUs coming in, given the limited site constraints on their existing property. So that's one of the... And we've had very difficulties. People want to go all-electric, but they've been having a lot of challenges with ADUs because of their size.
I'm going to ask our planning director to join in this conversation because I think there's some added complexities he can speak to.
Good evening, Council. Jonathan Leit, Director for Planning and Development Services. So regarding these challenges for ADUs, I think this council's familiar with the number of amendments that we've made to our zoning code over time. If we're trying to solve... Look for pathways to address this. There are options that we could explore with exemptions to floor area that are dedicated to the space needs that are needed for the heat pump. We could also explore whether or not there's some encroachment in the setbacks that might be appropriate to accommodate these other goals that the city's interested in advancing. So I think there's a way... If these are the constraints for ADUs, we can also find a path to address those.
Great. Thank you so much. I was waiting... Okay, all right. Buried in the staff report is a reference to an all-electric rate, but we didn't... I didn't hear a comment on this. Do you want to talk about when we might expect an all-electric rate?
So currently, utilities is exploring an all-electric rate for any residential customers who decide to pursue all-electric appliances. We're hoping to have some proposal wrote into the next budget year. So with the new fiscal year starting in 2021, we're hoping to include the analysis of the all-electric rate as part of the rate analysis, the electric rate analysis. So, yeah, I can't really get more into it at this point.
So it's still pretty far away?
No. Well...
I'm on finance. It takes a long time from the budget to the rates.
I think that the... We're hoping to have an electric rate available by July 1st of 2020. That would be part of our next electric rate analysis cycle.
Okay. I'd love some more... A better understanding of the exemption for life sciences. I understand that Menlo Park has done that. We've had a member of the public request it. What is it special about a life sciences building that would suggest that they couldn't go all-electric?
I think that's a question for staff.
We have been contacted by representatives from the Stanford Research Park, expressing a concern about the ability for life sciences to comply with an all-electric mandate, and we would need to explore that in more detail. But we would be very open to carving out an exemption for that if the council were supportive of that, particularly because there's some other complications with commercial. So residential is much easier to go all-electric. If the council also wanted to go all-electric with commercial, there's a... That's a whole other ball of wax for us at this stage.
Let me see what other questions I have, and then I'm just going to move into some comments. That's probably enough questions for now. So I'm usually a pretty moderate, rational person, but on this issue, I feel profoundly different about how we should make our decisions. Struck by one of the comments we got from a member of the public who said, and this exempts, like, probably two-thirds of the people in this room, "People will not do this voluntarily. Change is hard, and I think this is an opportunity for us, as we have many times, to demonstrate leadership." So there's also some confusion people have that we're going to be taking away their gas cooktop, like, right now if they have one. So let's be clear, people who have a gas cooktop today can continue to use it. We're also not raising the gas rates to discourage consumption. That was also a communication that we had. So we continue to set rates based on the cost of service analyses. I just want to make sure everybody is clear on that. So in terms of cost, we're at a point where it's pretty easy to make the decision, right? We've got the studies, and they seem quite clear, especially with residential. Reliability, I think we should talk a little bit more about. There are some people who are understandably concerned about going all-electric. We've had power outages. They see friends who can still take showers and cook. Could you just share a little bit more about reliability as we think about it when we go all-electric?
So that's also another area that utilities is currently exploring in terms of the resiliency of our electric grid. We are currently doing a pilot with one of our key account customers, commercial customers, to implement a microgrid on campus, and we're looking to explore other options for microgrid within the city to support backup charging stations in case we have an extended power Yeah, and we can come back to council once we have more findings on our research.
I would supplement that with, I think one of the things that we've also talked about is among consumers, there's sort of an assumption that if you have gas, you'd be fine if the power goes out, but quite often you have electrical elements to your gas. So I might have a gas furnace, but I might have an electric thermostat. So is my furnace going to run even if it's a gas furnace? So sometimes the assumptions that consumers have about how much...
So sometimes the assumptions that consumers have about how much service they would actually retain if they had gas is not accurate.
Thank you for that. And then I do just want to make a comment about preferences for cooking. And, you know, everyone is going to have preferences, but I think we're at the point where, since we have perfectly acceptable alternatives, that preferences shouldn't preclude us from making the right decision. I just want to commend anyone who hasn't had the opportunity to look at it, the presentation that is Attachment F by Bruce Niles from the Electrification Expo, which I'd be remiss in not thanking the, the staff for putting so much time and effort into. I know I learned a great deal. People say, well, why is it such a big deal to just change new construction when it's a small percentage? But I was really persuaded by his argument that the architects and developers for these projects set an example for everyone else to follow. So that changed my thinking. So encourage you to look at Attachment F. So I, I will look forward to hearing what my colleagues have to say. Personally, I'm interested in what we can do with ADUs. Absolutely interested in the all-electric for residential being in 2020. I think we have some work to do on the rebate program. Oh, here's a question. How many, is it 20,000? How many houses do we have in Palo Alto?
16,000 single-family homes and 10,000 multi-units.
Thank you. So 26,000. So if we're going to have 200 people, and that's if, if people take individual ones, I'm on Slide 45 now with rebates. I think, I think we need to think collectively this evening about a much more substantial rebate program in order to tackle the next part of it. So I'll stop there. Oh, one more thing. No, I was going to stop. The definitions for a substantial remodel, thank you so much for acknowledging that that is a very large gray area, and it's time for us to fix that. So I don't think that more time will necessarily get us a better answer, so I'll be hoping to give you a shorter timeframe to get that answer for us.
Councilmember Nist.
Thanks to staff, but also thanks to all of you who came tonight. I know you have been advocating for this for as long as I can remember. And I think, I'm, I'm going to look at staff. If we move this up a year, can you handle it?
Yes.
Okay. Then when the time comes, I think we can at least move this forward a year. We may need to do some tweaking of some of the other, other items that are in this. But I know that you have put some reasons why to wait, which I think is interesting, and I resonate with this. Talked about the gas cooktops and so forth, and gas fireplaces. What would happen to the gas fireplaces? What does happen? Because as an Airboard member, we have constantly told people to give up wood and go to gas. So we've had very good success with that. Tons of people have given up wood, which has its PM content, and gone to gas. So is there an answer? Is there an electric, something that looks like a little gas flame?
Yes, there are electric alternatives to gas fireplaces. And actually, at the Electrification Expo, we have one of the vendors that came to show an electric fireplace that has flames in it. So it looks just like a-
That has flames?
Yes.
And you can choose the color of the flames, Councilmember Nist. Any color you want.
Because I do think those are the kinds of things that we're going to run into, and we, we need to get a little more description, I think, of, of how you would actually move, move in that direction. And then you said that a lot of people don't know what the alternatives are yet, and I totally agree with that. They don't. But, but what we have heard tonight is, is a message of alarm, saying, "Come on, move on this. It's time for us to do something about the climate crisis and the survival of mankind." And so we've heard you all tonight. And I, I think, you know, at this point, Eric, I know you're keeping it to general comments, but I, I tend to think that there might be some support for moving it up, perhaps to January 1 of 2021 instead of 2022. But I'll be interested in hearing some of the other comments, and turn it back to you.
Vice Mayor Fein.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, everyone, for coming and speaking out and working on this over many years, and thank you to staff. This is a really complicated set of topics, and I thought the staff report and the presentation especially were, were quite helpful. Just a couple comments and questions. So first of all, comment, I was really glad to see the third-party compliance checks. I think that's actually an important feature we're introducing, and hopefully others can look to us. One question I had, if you look at Slide 28 of the presentation, why did it, just tell me, think through this. Why do the margins, the efficiency margins decrease for larger buildings?
Okay, so I can answer that. So this was found to be cost-effective based on the cost-effective study. So we pretty much can, we cannot require a larger margin than is, than what is-
Cost-effective by the state law?
Cost-effective, yeah.
Okay, so there's less cost-effective options for the larger buildings?
Right. And it, and it varies from climate zone to climate zone. So some cities can, you know, require a higher percentage because they're in a different climate zone.
Okay, that helps, that's helpful. Thank you. I think one of the things we're discussing is at what year we want to require electrification. Right now, staff's proposing 2022. I've heard councilmembers mention 2020 and 2021. So I guess one thing is, how many, across these categories, how many rebuilds do we have per year? And potentially, how many stranded assets would we be creating if we're leaving the option available for a year? So like, any given year, is it 100 buildings? Is it 500?
So, so currently for new residential buildings, we average somewhere around 100 buildings a year for the last five years. It's been around that order. And that's not including the substantial remodels, because we know there's quite, that would really raise that number if we were able to redefine a substantial remodel where somebody tears down all but the foundation.
We're getting, we're getting 180Us a year on top of that, is that right?
I'm sorry?
We're also getting like 180Us a year as well?
It's like 60 or 80.
Is it?
No.
Forty-ish. Okay. So you're saying 100 new residential per year. How many substantial remodels? Just a guesstimate.
I don't know. It's an estimate, maybe around 50% more.
Of that, okay. And then what about on the commercial side? I mean, hotels, you know, maybe one or two a year?
It's between eight to 10 non-residential buildings that, that covers hotels or office buildings, retail.
So these are kind of helpful numbers for us to think about, as, as we're thinking about whether we leave the state of full electrification out there or pull it up. You know, call it 200 buildings, something like that, including ADUs potentially. So I just encourage us to think about that. One question around incentives. Councilmember Cormac asked about potentially putting more resources towards those. I'm just wondering, do we look at what other cities are doing in terms of those incentives? I know you had quite a long list, but most of the comparisons to other cities were kind of more on the legislative side, not the incentive side. And I'm just wondering if we know what other cities are doing in terms of decarbonizing existing stock?
Most of the cities are not offering any rebate programs for electrification appliances. SMUD has a pretty robust utility program that incentivizes electrification, and SMUD is, they're, they're actually rate-basing the incentives. So the rebates are factored into the electric rate base, and we're trying to avoid increasing all-electric rates as part of our electrification rebate program. So we're looking at different types of funding mechanism for these rebate programs, and we're, that's something that we're still exploring.
Okay, that, that's helpful. I encourage us to keep on doing that. One of the reasons that staff argued in the, in the report for keeping the date at 2022 is that energy compliance modeling is not quite up to spec yet. And I, I guess a few things right here. One, wouldn't that affect our certification process? I mean, if, if the modeling is not up to spec, do we expect the external certifiers to be able to do their jobs?
That is true. So in the past, even when the Energy Commission has come up with new software, sometimes there's a lag. Back in 2013, there was like a six-to-nine-month lag from when the software was actually viable for the new code. So we're seeing a similar software lag as far as update, update lag for usable software.
Okay.
So we don't know what the timeline is exactly, but it could be anywhere in that time range.
Thank you. And that kind of is to my next question, which is more rhetorical, which is, let's say we do this 2022, and we find, you know, these software modeling systems are not caught up. Are we just going to extend the date again? And then one of the speakers mentioned this phrase, you know, "Don't follow the market, move the market," something of, of that nature. And, and I wonder if we don't have the ability to force that change ourselves. Councilmember Nist asked about bringing the date up to 2021. What about 2020? What does that look like to staff? Whether, I mean, maybe January, maybe July. I'm, I'm just ballparking.
So regarding the, the software for residential compliance, it's ready now. So what-
It's the commercial software that's not?
It's the commercial software, especially for central heat pump, space heating, and central heat pump water heating that's currently not ready.
Okay. I'm, I'm just waiting to hear from staff a little bit on the 2020, but.
Yeah, that, so the mayor's just indicating to me, what, what happens if the ordinance covers a building that's not model-able? I mean, what, what does that mean for us? What would we do? Wouldn't we force the builder or the certifier to go and find a model that works and that we just sign off on?
Good evening, Council. George Troy, Chief Building Official for the City of Palo Alto. Wanted to take the opportunity to answer your question, Mr. Fein. I believe we'd have to look at allowing for an exception.
Okay. I mean, which, which is actually reasonable as the software's catching up hopefully, right?
Yeah.
So, I mean, I'm definitely interested to hear from my colleagues on, on some of these issues, but I think we're kind of honing in around a couple, and I may try a motion and see if this works. But I'd still love to hear from staff about 2020. Is that crazy?
It's not crazy. What we will have to grapple with is where in the process it becomes effective in terms of-
Pipeline?
The planning process and the permitting process.
Okay.
So who's, who's grandfathered in, and who, where does the new implementation begin?
Where did you find it?
Yeah, so, so we would look for council to be clear about the, what we have traditionally called the pipeline. As you know, the preparation, planning process that individual families go through is quite extensive, and then the city approval process can be extensive as well. So where would you, where in that process would you wish to draw the line?
Can I ask our planning director how many residential new builds we have in the pipeline now and what it looks like towards the end of the year?
You can ask. I would say that we process about 100 individual review applications a year.
Okay.
On average. And so I think this point about pipeline projects, things that come to my mind is, what we've done in the past is for projects that have been determined to complete for filing is one date that we've used. Not all homes require an individual review. They, if it's a single-story home, they can go straight to get a building permit. And so there's some areas there where we'd want to think about. If you're contemplating this, you might want to say for projects that require a building permit or that have required individual review and deemed complete for filing as of a certain date, and knowing that it takes a few months sometimes for these things to be designed.
Okay, so could it be something like, we want the full electrification date requirement in January of 2020, but projects requiring a building permit or IR have to be complete as of that same date or end of the year?
Yeah, so-
Is that too strict?
So you certainly could do that. I, I don't know how many projects are at various stages in the process. If there was some latitude in that start date, and maybe we can come back with some dates after a little brief analysis on this, maybe it's not January, maybe it's February or something, this first quarter of 2020. But I think we'd have to do a little bit of research to find out what that timeframe is. And I'm looking to the city attorney and the city manager if we receive direction to explore and come back with the most reasonable date that advances the policy. I think we could probably come up with something in an updated ordinance.
Okay.
Can I try, can I try that one? I think, I think what he's asking is, you know, given that we think that the technology's largely there, although there's some disagreement about large commercial buildings, right? But that aside, you know, how soon could we do this where we're not going to sort of have a large number of people that have done a whole lot of work getting ready for something? We're telling them, "Go throw it away and start all over again."
Right.
So I think that's what he's trying to-
Exactly. And, you know, maybe you're currently in the pipeline, and that's, of course, you're exempt, and maybe we give you a two-month window after this goes into effect.
Yeah, I mean, different people will agree, will disagree on whether it's reasonable for us to do that, but I think he's asking the question, right?
Right.
Yeah, I, I think the answer is different maybe for a commercial versus residential. I think it might be a little easier to adapt from the residential side, a little bit harder when we're talking about some of the other larger mixed-use projects that we're processing.
Okay. I think I'm going to try a motion. I'm going to leave the pipeline thing open.
Can we just finish questions? We were doing kind of a round.
Yeah, why don't we do their, their questions? I'll, I'll come back here for the most-
No worries, thank you. And, and this pipeline issue, if others have a question on, I'm interested to hear your thoughts.
Councilmember DuBois.
Oh, thanks. You know, I was next. So thank you guys for bringing this. I do think the discussion about efficiency just as versus all-electric is a good thing to keep in mind. I know, I think it's going to be coming to council. You know, the UAC's been talking about how do we really measure our carbon-free electricity and making sure that our electricity is really clean. So I think that's something we also need to keep in mind. So we're having kind of this discussion about kind of new construction. We're talking about retrofits, remodels, and then we mentioned EV cars, which is another huge part of this. So starting with the new building piece, I would like to understand a little bit more. I think Councilmember Cormac asked about the life science building exemptions. I still don't really get it. The staff reports that something that it was hard to air-condition large buildings. Why can't that be electric? What is, what's inefficient, I guess, for a life science building versus an office building?
Okay, so for life science buildings, it's also similar with industrial buildings that they have a lot of processes so, that are not related to energy efficiency, to, that are not regulated by the energy, energy code. So they're designed to do certain type of chemical processes or mechanical processes where we have process piping, process ventilation. So a lot of that is not regulated by the energy code. In addition to that, the industrial buildings were not part of the statewide cost-effective study, so we can't mandate that because there was not a studied on, they were not covered in the cost-effective study.
Yeah, I want to get to that later, but, I mean, but separately for life science, you're saying that these industrial processes aren't regulated, but what about the building for just heating and hot water and that kind of thing?
I think since we knew that we couldn't take action on commercial right now because it hadn't been studied yet, we didn't spend a lot of time analyzing the life sciences concerns. So if you wanted to assign us to go back and start spending time on that, we could, but since we, we weren't looking at going with commercial until it's, meets the cost-effectiveness requirements, we didn't spend a lot of time on the life sciences analysis.
Okay. And Eric, when you say commercial, we're talking about the over 50,000 square feet category? So I, I think I did see that Berkeley passed, basically in their ordinance, it said that they will be required to once the software's available. So is that something we could do as well in this ordinance? Just say that'll be dependent on, as soon as- Just say that'll be dependent on, as soon as that software becomes available?
So. We can, but we have some thoughts on it that we want to share.
So that's, yeah, so Berkeley is proposing, or actually, they will have this kind of phased-in gas ban for commercial buildings as the software becomes available. It's somewhat of a moving target from an enforcement and from a project applicant perspective because not everybody necessarily is clued into when the CEC software gets updated. And when that happens, there's some communication that needs to happen to the public in order for them to know when this new code will take effect. So it's doable, but it's definitely some communication that we need to put in place to make sure everybody is on the same page.
So when it comes to motions, I'd be interested in maybe that clarification too, that maybe we give it six months to communicate. But when the software, just contingent our ordinance on the software being available to cover these larger buildings and just include it? So I wanted to understand, we haven't talked much about solar requirements. How does that work kind of versus trees on a lot? You know, they're required, I saw there was some exemption based on shade. But, you know, I do, I would like to see people keep a lot of the benefits of trees, which, you know, provide natural cooling, convert CO2. So I just want to make sure we're not setting up any kind of conflict.
So in the 2019 Energy Code, there will be a requirement that all low-rise residential buildings are required to put in PVs and ADUs are not exempt. The exemptions that they do have is if the lot is shaded more than 70% from existing trees or existing structures, then they do get an exemption.
So will people be incentivized to cut down trees?
No, no. So what it is, is then you're exempt from installing PVs is what it is. And if I could just go back to the previous question, as we were discussing the complications of waiting for those calculations for the software to kick in, my understanding is it's not that we're waiting for one software improvement and then we'll have clarity. My understanding is this would be one, and then another, and then another, and then another. So it would be an extended stepping of changes to the standard over time. So it's not, sort of, it doesn't happen once and then we just do it six months later. It would happen again and again and again.
Okay. We could look at the Berkeley ordinance and see kind of how they handled that.
I think they didn't, which is our concern.
Okay. Then the gas cooking exemptions, I think the staff report said that restaurants prefer gas or something like that. I mean, so it didn't really seem like a great justification. And so again, the current proposal here is for the next two years, I guess, residential could be mixed use. But is there a timeline on restaurants or we just have no timeline?
Our recommendation was to look at going all-electric at a maximum level in two years and spend those two years figuring out those kinds of issues.
So including restaurants and homes on the same timeline, basically?
Figuring out which exemptions would be palatable, if any, over those two years.
Okay. And then looking at the mixed use, I think one of the speakers, so we talk about hotels and apartments, they had a 5%, I guess, performance improvement measure. I think it was the architect that spoke that said that was basically nothing. What was the thought about having that be 5% while our office buildings are 12%?
So once again, it's all based on the cost-effective study. So we can't go higher than what the cost-effective study is for our, for our region and our utility rates. So that's why other cities may be able to go higher because maybe their rates and their climate zones are more favorable.
So we can't say that hotels have to be 12% just like other buildings?
So the way it's written is you can choose one path that is cost-effective. You could go that route. If all-electric was cost-effective, then you could go to a higher rate and then you force them to go to all-electric by creating a higher rate that's not cost-effective. So the California Energy Commission requires at least one pathway has to be cost-effective.
Okay, so we do, we have all-electric. Right now it says or 5%, but we could say or 12% or?
And I do want to clarify that just because the proposed reach code says 5% doesn't mean that there isn't additional efficiency available to a project. It is potentially feasible to design a commercial project, a hotel, that's 15% higher. But it may exceed the federal appliance standard. And as a local reach code, we cannot adopt local reach code that exceeds federal appliance standards. That's called a federal preemption. So we are limited in the type of efficiency that we can, we can mandate.
Okay.
Ms. Temp, can I ask you to just bring the microphone a little bit closer when you speak next time? I think it might be hard for some people in the audience to hear.
Yeah, you're a little soft.
Thank you.
And then to follow up on some of the questions about the ADUs. So we didn't, we didn't really seem to make a distinction between JADU and existing building versus new construction ADU. Basically said it applies to all ADUs, so I took that to be all forms of ADU?
So in the staff report, it was for freestanding new construction ADUs. So it did not include JADUs or?
Okay, so if somebody builds a new house that includes a JADU, they would, including the JADU would be under this, under the new code?
Right, correct.
Okay, that wasn't really clear. You might want to.
Well, if somebody's got an existing house and they put a JADU in the existing house, it's also covered under this, right?
It's a remodel, right?
It depends on the size, so there are triggers.
Yeah, so you just might want to clarify the language there to distinguish. And so appreciate the questions again. If we get to an ordinance, I mean, if we just said that ADUs of a size large enough to support a heat pump should have one or something, I would be supportive of that. And then, so that's kind of new construction. Just a couple of things on existing buildings, which is not in front of us tonight, right? That's going to come back to us?
The definition of substantial remodel would come later.
Okay, but then it would follow the same set of rules, I guess? Is that the idea or would there be a different set of rules for substantial remodels?
It would, it would increase the number of projects that are defined as new construction, which the new code then applies to.
Okay. So I do think, so I'm really curious about tenant improvements and how are those handled? I mean, is that, that's considered a remodel if a lease ends and then somebody else comes into a commercial space? Because I think we have, except we're mostly a built-out environment. So would that be handled under the substantial remodel?
So we're working on that definition. One of the thoughts and looking at what other communities have done. It's somewhere, can be on the order of 50% or 70% of, you know, replacement of the existing structure. So if there was a tenant improvement where they were to, you know, tear down and replace 50% or more of the structure, then it's possible that could trigger new construction. So it'd have to be, like I said, substantial.
It sounds like a substantial remodel, but what would we do for a commercial space that has a change of use and say goes from a store to a restaurant? Would it, would it not be applicable?
Bringing back our planning director.
Yeah.
Yeah, so thank you. I think that's part of what we're going to find out. I think for just changes of land use, most land use changes would probably not trigger a need to look at the building to see how it would comply with the, with the reach codes that you're discussing here today. What we're looking for is, you know, pretty significant construction projects where, that are not being captured today that are, you know, essentially new construction. So changes in uses unless you're doing a wholesale change.
Yeah, I guess somewhere in between, right? It's a change of use that requires some significant tenant improvements, but it might not be considered a remodel of the entire building.
Yeah, you know, I think we'd have to take a look at that. That's one of the things that is part of that menu that we want to look at in the next 18 months or sooner if we're instructed to come back before then.
Okay, well, I really urge you guys to, because I think, again, what we do with our existing built-out environment is going to have much larger impact.
Yeah, we recognize that as well.
Yeah. And then I just want to clarify, I'm almost done, a couple of comments on process. So are what we're voting for tonight, is this a mandate then two years that would convert? Or would this come back to council? Again, if we stuck with this timeline, if we changed the timeline, it's different. But I guess this idea tonight would be, we would have this kind of plan for the next two years and then we would go all-electric in two years. And, you know, would that come back to a future council at that point?
The staff recommendation is to declare a policy goal tonight and then the, how that gets implemented would come back.
Okay. And then also wanted to follow up. Councilmember Cormac hit a lot of the points I wanted to ask about. But kind of the question on resilience and obviously the PG&E blackouts are in the news. You know, I do think, and part of the education outreach bucket you had there is, I do think we need to seriously consider messaging around this. I think a lot of people was pretty absent from the staff report, but I think it's a natural question that's going to pop up. And maybe it's a separate thing, but I think we need to talk a little bit more about local generation, future storage abilities, backup generators. But also isolation from the PG&E network or microgrids. I think we've started to see a few of those pop up. But, you know, what does it really mean to be 100% electric? And then how are we going to be resilient in emergencies? Or even things like fires that are not, not in our community but impacting PG&E? And then the last point, which Councilmember Cormac also hit, was I was a little bit unimpressed or underwhelmed by the incentive program. It's $1.9 million. It looks like we'll reach 100 to 400 homes in some of these programs. And so my question's not necessarily just by putting more money here, but how can we reach more homes leveraging this money? You know, and should we, when we think about these programs, should we try to hit as many different homes as possible to get people started on electrification? I don't know if that's part of the plan, but if, you know, one household applies for all the incentives, you know, we're serving kind of one household versus potentially four or five households. Yeah, it looks like, I wanted to say something.
Here, one of the, one of the things we've been looking at is whether or not we could really leverage the Cool Block program, for example, to do education and outreach to a geographic area and see whether or not we can cultivate an interest in an entire geographic area volunteering to go all-electric, choosing to go all-electric. And if we had enough of a critical mass to do that, we could really look at starting to make changes in service. So.
Okay, that's interesting. I don't know if there are partners, suppliers, that we put in a little money and somebody else contributes money for rebates or incentives?
I also want to add that based on the track record of our current heat pump water heater rebate program, the uptake rate has been slow. So if we can somehow get the word up and get the community to really understand the necessity to start electrifying their gas appliances in order for the city to meet up greenhouse gas reduction goals, hopefully the uptake will go up. And there's also the constraint of staffing resources to run these programs. So that's why we have built into the staff report, we mentioned about the additional FTE to run the program. So if there is a demand for additional rebates, we will definitely, utilities will assign the, will allocate the necessary resources to make that happen.
And then, thank you. My last question is really, do we have ideas for incentives for commercial buildings? Like, are there also rebates and programs available that would incent kind of commercial spaces?
Yes, we will be exploring that. This is an area that actually, if we do offer incentives for commercial electrification, I think Palo Alto would be the first in the state, if not the country, to offer that type of a program. And we are looking into potentially a commercial incentive.
And so, you know, if we do end up with a general business tax, I think this could be a kind of program we could consider in the future. And I think it's, again, a reason to think about having some flexibility in a business tax so we could use it to do things like incentivize commercial electrification.
That's not really on the agenda for tonight.
Yeah. But, you know, it's important. Again, I think it's this built, we really need to think about the built-out infrastructure. So just to wrap up, when a motion's being made, I think, considering whether we want a higher performance for hotels and apartments, considering whether we want to include larger buildings based on kind of future compliance and software being available. There was one other thing. Well, and then considering requiring it for ADUs above a certain size.
Thank you. I'm going to go to Councilmember Tanaka in a second here and then come back to Councilmember Vice Mayor Fine for a motion. I just wanted to tag on to something Councilmember DuBois and also Cormac talked briefly about, which was the issue of. I'm really, I'm really glad to see staff trying to bite into the issue of legacy, right? As opposed to just new construction, but existing homes and so forth. And I think, you know, the way I sort of think of that is that, on the one hand, if you're going to remodel your bathroom, that's sort of went into the spectrum. You know, should the city say, no, you can't remodel your bathroom unless you rewire your house and central heating and water heating at the same time? And I think, you know, most people would think that's not a reasonable, some people would be okay with that. But I think most people would think that's not a reasonable thing to require. On the other hand, we're all familiar with these, these quote-unquote remodels where they need to leave one wall standing and then basically it's a new residence, right? And I think, you know, if you're going to do that, you shouldn't, you should have to go electric because that's what the ordinance says, right? And so the devil's in the details of trying to figure out how to draw the line in between. And I think, I think kudos to staff for digging into this issue. And pragmatically, it's going to take some time to sort out exactly how to parse that out. Okay, Councilmember Tanaka. Well, I'm going to go to Councilmember Koo after Councilmember Tanaka.
So, yeah, I also want to thank staff for your work on this. I think it's a really important issue and I also want to thank everyone for coming out. I think we had, in many cities, one of the hottest summers on record. I think Paris hit like 109 degrees when I was there, 108. It was like incredibly hot. So we definitely have to work on this and we have to solve it. So I think it's, it's good to be aggressive and good to take good steps in this direction.
The one thing I was thinking about though is, and it's just kind of discussion that we were having earlier, which is that it sounds like only 200 or so new houses get built or buildings get built a year roughly. And we have like 26,000 residential. So that's like less than 1%. So it would take us 130 years, right? For, for this change to happen, which seems like a really long time. And this problem seems a little bit more urgent than that. So what maybe you think is that looking at the existing, right? And for me, like page 45, even though, you know, it's only been a small part of your presentation, is actually one of the biggest, is one of the most important things that we should actually look at is the existing because that's, that's going to really move the needle. The, the, the new building, I think is great too because that's good long-term. It keeps paying dividends, but the existing is also really important to look at closely. And so can you page, go to page 45, please? Slide 45? So, huh? Slide 45? Oh, you just passed it. Yeah. So one question here is, I noticed that on here you guys didn't have, so like at Home Depot or Amazon, you could buy something called a zero-energy water heater. Depot or Amazon, you could buy something called a zero energy water heater, which basically you hook up your air conditioner, your condenser, then you hook up your, you hook it up to your tank water heater and then it will heat the water from your air conditioner. So it's kind of like a heat pump water heater, except it doesn't, you don't need to replace the water heater or the air conditioning unit, right? It's only $650, $645. You can get it both at Amazon or, or Home Depot. And, and, you know, you don't have to change your ductwork, you don't have to change your piping, you don't, you just, you just have this one box that you put in that hooks up both of them together. And I guess I'm just kind of curious to know, I noticed that, you know, there's rebates for heat pump water heater, which is much more invasive, you've got to replace your whole water heater. And there's an air source heat pump, which, you know, is also pretty invasive, you've got to change out the whole condenser unit. And so I guess I'm just trying to understand from staffs, why, why not have a rebate for, I think, like at Home Depot, it's called zero energy heat recovery water heater system? Why, why not have a rebate for that? Why, why, why only rebate for the most invasive type of replacements?
We'd be happy to look into that.
Okay. Well, you could look on Amazon or Home Depot, you could buy it today. So it's been around since 2011. So I just, I'm just curious to know the rationale, why not, why not have rebates for things that are easier to implement?
Can you repeat the name of that system?
Sure. It's called Zero Energy Water Heater Parts, or Water Heater. It's, if you go to Home Depot website, you can look at it there, or you could go see it on the Amazon website. Maybe, yeah, I don't know, staff, if you're at a web browser, you can just bring it up so people could see it. But it's a zero energy water heater.
Great, we'll look into that, thank you.
Okay. So for me, I think, I think having a rebate for something like that, it does have to be for this particular model, but something like it, I think would be a lot easier because it's not, it's a lot easier for existing homeowners, homeowners, or maybe even commercial to utilize this kind of product versus replacing a water heater or replacing a, a air conditioning So it was a reason why staff decided not to have a rebate for that?
I believe staff's already agreed to consider other technologies that they're not aware of for this.
I think it is important, though, to acknowledge that Christine and other utility staff have actually been working with the California Energy Commission over the course of years in looking at what potential appliances could advance against zero net energy buildings and at the same time reflect reasonable market share. I think what you're pointing out, Councilmember, is news, as Christine's not familiar with this particular appliance. And that tells me that it may not be something that is very, say, robust. Happy to look into it, but I also don't want to either get the expectations up that we found a new mousetrap or that, you know, we're trying to design a program around a specific product. Very important to try to recognize the role that our ordinances are having in trying to advance this conversion and electrification overall.
Okay. Well, yeah, I guess for me, just trying to make it easy for people to go electric. And this seems like an easy way of doing it. And then I've, I've thought about the discussion that we had earlier about, you know, life science buildings and, and, you know, large buildings and the software stuff. I guess the thing that I'm thinking about is, it seems like there's a lot of uncertainty because we're not sure when the software will be ready. And also, some of the, one of the speakers mentioned that sometimes equipment's not even ready, although we heard another speaker say that it's available in Florida. I know sometimes stuff that's available in Florida is not available here in California. So there's a lot of kind of complexity here. So I, I guess for me, I would think, especially for commercial, because you have a much longer cycle time, I would be interested in having a plan that's more, has a lot more certainty in it versus one where there's some sort of sliding window where it's kind of hard for people to know or hard to plan for. Because I think if we try and manage something that's not feasible, it just causes a lot of paperwork, a lot of kind of staff time versus actually being effective. So I think having a date that's actually feasible, right, as feasible as possible, I think would be good versus like something that just is kind of uncertain and unknown and it's hard to, it's going to be hard for us to enforce, because we're going to have to give exceptions, there's no, no way around it. And then my last point here is around, so I know the city does long-term contracts around natural gas, natural gas purchases. So I can't remember how long they are, but what, what happens? So let's say we're extremely successful in this program, right, which we all, we all hope happens. What happens to our long-term contracts?
We, we do not have any long-term contracts on our natural gas supply.
So this is yearly?
We buy gas on a monthly basis.
Oh, okay, then we don't have to worry about it. Okay. That's all I had, thank you.
Councilmember Koo.
Most of the questions have been answered by my colleagues and I just want to say thank you for bringing this forward today. Mostly my questions, I have two remaining that weren't asked, but back when the plane crashed and took out the electricity in the city, there was a discussion about establishing a second feed for redundancy coming from 280. Has that ever been done?
No.
No, right?
No.
Okay. I'm just kind of just wondering, because, you know, with, my understanding is we're still using PG&E transmission lines to bring part of our electricity in, or is it just some?
All of our electricity is over PG&E transmission lines. So I think the earlier discussion around resilience, and this is an upcoming discussion for the UAC as well, is, is relevant and it's, it's relevant but somewhat separable from the specific issues we're dealing with tonight.
Well, you said somewhat separate.
We're talking about the building side of that equation or the system, so to speak, aside from the transmission system.
Obviously, you know, I mean, that's still a concern, whether we can actually sustain it should something bigger happen and what is the backup plan should the PG&E go down? So I, I think that's just something that I, I think we need to kind of make sure we address coming up, just so that I can lay to rest some of my concerns.
When, again, just want to be real specific, the UAC actually has an upcoming workshop on this topic.
Okay, very good. Let me see here. So utility rates, right? In, when I was on the finance committee, I think that the utility rates had gone up twice in one year. Or in the last five years, can you, do you remember how much has it gone up since, in the last five years and how many times it's gone up?
We didn't bring that information with us tonight.
Okay. Do you see that something as something that will potentially be more or less expensive as we move forward since we're going fully electrified? I don't want what happened with the water rates to happen with the electricity rates. You know, I mean, people conserved water and the water rates actually went up. Now we have everybody moving towards one source, there's no other option. And then the utility rates, I mean, the power rates continues to go up. And that might be a separate topic, but they're also connected and there's some, some connection where people are going to be hesitant. Or they might not have electricity because they can't pay for it. So I just want to make sure that that's addressed as well. I don't know if UAC is going to take it up as well, but it's something that should be addressed as well in terms of the rates.
That is definitely a relevant issue, perhaps less so on the electric side than it is on the gas side. So to the, and let me try to describe it quickly, that as the footprint, so to speak, of gas use shrinks in Palo Alto or anywhere through electrification, there is a concern and an issue around the amortization of the remaining fixed assets and the cost of the operation to the customers that remain. So this is definitely an issue that we're looking at from the utilities perspective in order to ensure that there can be a pathway, as we refer to it, for transition from, let's say, a large footprint on natural gas to a smaller footprint. So it's definitely a relevant issue, even though it's not directly related to the building components talked about tonight.
Are you guys also looking at other forms of clean energy or is it just simply all electrification and no other innovative energy sources?
So we do have a diversified portfolio of our electric supply currently. Our electric portfolio, half of that is actually coming from large hydro resources that the city has a long-term contract with the federal bureau. And we, we have hydro, we have solar, we have geothermal. So, so the electric portfolio is pretty diversified and we are procuring renewable energy at a very competitive rate. In terms of other types of renewable energy supply, we have looked at renewable gas supply at one point, but the, the supply of renewable gas is very limited. We looked at some cow gas, you know, gas from dairy farms and it was significantly expensive, more expensive than the, the commodity, the natural gas, the typical natural gas commodity. So we thought that it would be imprudence to incorporate renewable gas into the, the gas portfolio.
So was there a motion that was made already? Oh, it's about to be made, okay. Thank you, thank you.
Can I ask a question, staff, before we go to the Vice Mayor here? We had a discussion about, you know, how do we deal with the uncertainty of when modeling will be available for commercial buildings that's not available now for? And one of the questions that was asked earlier, you guys said, well, what if we, what if we apply this, what if we apply this code to a building that the modeling isn't available for? And the answer is, well, I'll come back and ask for an exception, right? So why would we not just do that, right? And as the, and they'll just ask for an exception, right, until the modeling becomes available? And then once the modeling becomes available, they won't ask for an exception anymore. Wouldn't that be simpler to administer than sort of trying to track a moving target versus when modeling for this or that's available?
I think part of what we're waiting for is a cost effectiveness analysis on the modeling.
Right. So without that, people would come and ask for an exception, right? And we would grant it, right? And then once the cost analysis is available, then they wouldn't ask anymore. Or is that too much of an oversimplification?
No, Mayor. You know, I think we could offer exemptions, we could look at that exemption, it just is a lot of paperwork and we'd be offering a lot of exemptions until it's finally done. So we would be, we would be requesting or putting forward a code that we can enforce. So we're just going to continue giving exceptions till we can enforce it.
And so the short answer is it's actually more complicated to administer.
It really is, yeah. Yes. Because there has to be justification behind it and it has to all be recorded.
Vice Mayor Fine.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's actually helpful. Can we just go to the staff recommendation quickly? And I'm sure this is going to have some amendments and things, but I'll try to keep it simple. So I want to move the staff recommendation, but make letter B effective July 2020. And then one additional item, which is to return with a plan for electrification of accessory dwelling units.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Councilmember DuBois. Just speaking of this really quickly, I think this is absolutely the right thing to do. We have a clear reason to do this for our climate, we have a clear reason to do this for our community, I think our staff is behind this as well. I think there's been some debate about the date, but the discussion tonight has pushed me that we can pull it up. And while it may not be perfect, and I know this is going to strain staff a little bit, I apologize. And while we may grant some exceptions at times when we're not ready, putting a marker in the sand is better to do than not. On the final piece, letter D, on electrification of accessory dwelling units, I just don't have enough information tonight really to include them. I've heard that smaller ADUs maybe can't contain the heat pump units, that larger ones maybe we have to exempt them in the setback or give 100 square feet for them. And so I just don't know what the contours of that look like quite today, and so I'd just love to see information there. The last piece I was thinking of adding, but I think staff is already on this, is a plan to incentivize decarbonization of existing structures, but actually the discussion tonight has roughly convinced me that staff is coming back with those things. So I would encourage solid support. Councilmember DuBois, thanks for the second.
Councilmember DuBois, care to speak to your second?
Definitely support this motion. I guess my first question for staff is, is July a reasonable timeframe? I think if we can do it in 2020, that would be great. If it came back after the summer break, I'm not sure that would be a big deal for us. So how do you feel about July versus just maybe saying 2020? That's a question for staff.
He's going to respond for staff. Okay, so on B, I think if I'm understanding the motion correctly, you're not declaring a mandate, the intent to mandate all electric. I think you're telling us that we will be all electric on July 1st, 2020. Is that correct?
This, this is the resolution declaring our intent to mandate it on that date, right? So I mean, just letter D, B, there is a resolution declaring our intent to mandate all-electric construction. So ideally, over the next six months or so, there's something that returns to us, I assume. That would say on this date, we're all-electric.
So the only, that gives me a little bit of pause, only that, I think it depends on when we come back to the council. And this begins to stretch my, you know, knowledge on, on the state process for how these things get approved. But there's roughly a, you know, 90 to 120 day period of time from when you take your first action to adopt the ordinance before it can become effective. And so if you made a decision tonight and we came back on second reading in, say, December, that's kind of like our timeline for, for doing this. And so when you talk about on B, your intent to mandate it, that pushes things back a little bit further. So if we came back in, say, January, December or January with a new ordinance that reflected your interest, then you have to have a second reading, then we got to go through this four month process to get the, it approved by the state and move forward. So I don't know if I'm making it easier or harder for you to sort through that.
Yeah, I think the mayor's saying, you know, what, what would look good here so that you are not able to build gas into your residence or commercial come, you know, October or this time next year?
Okay, so for residential, and it's unclear to me on if we're, it looked like this might include residential and commercial, but if we're just talking residential, I believe this evening, if it was the council's interest to move forward on that, you can make that part of your motion, that on a certain date, the, we'll just, you would have to do an all-electric residential project home. And so if we went through the dates that we have today, which is kind of scribbling out what those numbers might be.
Right.
It looks like the soonest that we would be able to come back is April 20th. If you took action tonight to require all-electric for the residential, low-rise residential buildings, we can return with a second reading ordinance, and I'm looking at the folks that are going to be mostly working on these things in early December. And then we can begin that process of getting us scheduled and the public notice periods with the California Electric Energy Commission.
So just to clarify, this is essentially the staff motion with the change of date, right? So it sounds like it's, like, why would we start to split off residential, commercial, make it more make it more complicated?
I think commercial is going to require more work on our side to really understand what those different components are.
Just a guesstimate, I mean, if you're saying residential by April, so maybe call it middle of next year, is commercial end of next year, or 2021?
Part of what we're grappling with is the, sooner would be messier with more exemptions, a little bit longer, we might actually have a stronger policy in place?
Would Councilmember DuBois's suggestion of just 2020?
I think that's simpler.
Yeah, I'm starting to lean that way, too. Is that feasible for staff, if we just said 2020?
For everything, and then, we could bring you residential one date and commercial a different date, is what you're saying? We can...
It's pulling the date up by a year, essentially.
Right. It means doing commercial by the end of 2020. So, we would probably need to build some exceptions into that if it kicked in by the end of 2020.
Okay.
What, do we just see what...
Let's, I think we should do that. So, let's strike July. Is that okay, Councilmember DuBois? Thank you.
And then, just procedurally, the way the staff report was written was adopting a resolution declaring the city's intent. So, if you want to just direct us to bring it, I don't think you have to amend the resolution.
Sorry, can you explain that?
Right, you don't, so, we had, item A was adopt the ordinance. Item B was essentially adopt a policy resolution declaring you're planning a flag in the ground for a future date.
Sure.
But if you want us to come back with something more quickly, you wouldn't have to do the policy resolution at all.
You skip the resolution?
Right, you can skip the policy resolution and just direct us to bring it back.
Skip the resolution. Direction to staff.
Direct staff to create an all-electric service for new construction effective 2020.
Right, that's part of what Director Light was speaking to in terms of the process.
Yeah, what's the effective change here?
The change would be, in letter B, would be direct staff to return with an ordinance mandating all-electric service for new construction effective 2020.
Or a series of...
Sure.
So, that if we just split residential and commercial?
Absolutely. Direct staff to return to council with...
Resolution.
With ordinances...
Yeah, it should say, right.
Thank you for that, Claire.
So, on D, on ADUs, I think it's, I guess my thought was, we could direct staff to require electrification for ADUs over a certain size, and that could be part of the initial ordinance. Again, I'm thinking about some of the things we see, like the foothills, which could be quite large. So, you guys were talking about the average application size, but, you know, if it's a 1,000-foot ADU, is there any reason not to do that now?
Staff is consulting on the different possible ADU scenarios in answer to your question. And if we, if you give us some flexibility to come back with a plan, we may be able to bring something that's closer to the council's intent, because we need to look at, is it about size, is it about the placement, is it about attached or detached? And so, perhaps allowing staff to look at some of those different scenarios and bring something that's most reflective of council's policy intent may be more effective than council trying to pick one of those factors tonight.
Yeah, it was just, again, my intent wasn't to change our setbacks or any of that stuff. It was just to say, if it's a large, you guys seem to go down the heat pump route and say it had to be a certain size. Because my understanding is, for even smaller ones, you don't really need a heat pump, but we could leave it this way, I guess. Again, it just felt like, why have an exemption if there was a solution for ones over a certain So, I don't know if there's any appetite among my colleagues for this, the performance component of the high rises in the hotels. So, again, my understanding was, because we have two choices, all-electric or the performance, we could raise the bar on the amount of savings on the performance side. 5% just seemed very low to me. What's that? Do you have a question? So, I guess I will, I don't know if I want to propose the motion unless you, the makers will...
I'm just trying to figure out, you're thinking of the table with two columns, and one is the all-electrication route, and the other is the percentage efficiencies. I thought I understood from staff that we can't require percentage efficiencies that exceed the cost-effective study. Is that right?
We can if there is a path, that there's at least one path. So, the question to council is, do you want to mandate...
The all-electric is the path.
And then, the other is a standard that is not cost-effective, imposing a standard that is not cost-effective.
I mean, Councilmember DuBois, I'll just point out, you know, with this, what we have right here, ideally, you know, new construction by the end of 2020 will be all required to be electric, right, including ADUs, hotels, et cetera. And I really wonder, you know, given we have one hotel a year, maybe?
Fair enough, fair good point.
Well, I was going to ask a slightly different, given the accelerated timeframe. This complicated regimen of, you know, calculating EDR reductions and so forth, given the accelerated timeframe, is it actually worth doing that, right?
Right, same thing. Okay, and then, the last one, we've had a little bit of discussion, I'll just go back to it again, is this, do we build flexibility into our ordinance to handle larger commercial? You were proposing exemptions, maybe that doesn't make sense, but, again, I think what Berkeley did was try to build it into their ordinance where it would take effect once it was possible, without having to go through the whole process, come back to council again, which, again, is going to add once to a year, you know, to the ability to add it for large buildings. So, I guess I'd ask staff again, I mean, do you see a way we could include large commercial in a flexible ordinance that, again, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be required until the necessary conditions were there, but then it would automatically be part of our ordinance?
If I can just reiterate, I think our concern about that was the notion that it's not a one-time change, it would be a continuous evolution. And so, the notification to those affected would be very difficult to manage, because we wouldn't be, it would be an ordinance that keeps changing over time.
Would that be based on size, like, it would become feasible from 50,000 to 75,000? Or, like, why would it keep changing?
Because we're not waiting for calculations to be unveiled just once. It's one set, and then another set, and then another set, and then another set. So, there wouldn't be predictability for the building community, because they would, one formula would come out, and then later on, another formula would come out, and so...
So, when would we be able to pass an ordinance? Like, how long do we have to wait? Till all those things come out, or till the first one?
This is, you're asking us to predict the timing of the work at the CEC?
No, I don't understand. You're saying there's a series of changes. Can we not have an ordinance until all of those changes roll out? Or... But I'm still, I honestly would like an explanation, like, what is staff's current plan? Like, when would you bring large commercial back to us? Like, what events happen that makes it possible?
Well, the motion as currently drafted is by the end of 2020.
So, you're including over 50,000 square feet in that? Okay, so, I'm sorry, misunderstood. I thought you were still saying it wouldn't be possible because of the software issue.
Is it enforceable?
George Hoyt, chief building official, once again. I think the question is, when are the models really going to be ready to model that? And we don't know when the models are going to be ready. That's why we shot for 2022, because we wanted to make sure the models were ready. And we think that the CEC is going to make, get the priority to get the models ready for those buildings. Residential, ready to go now. ADUs, I'm sure we can find something to get it in. Tenant improvements, I think, becomes a lot more complicated because of the scope of work. New office building, I think there's some modeling issues that need to get worked out. That's my perspective.
Right, but are you saying, you think, again, focusing on the large buildings, you think that'll be ready within 2020?
I don't know. It's hard to say. The models are very, very complicated, and you fix one thing, you break something else. You fix something else, you run a different scenario. It's a very, very comprehensive model.
So, Councilmember DuBois, I think I'm starting to understand, staff had proposed 2022, because there are a couple different streams here, which aren't exactly delineated in this report, and they were intending to work on them and bring them as they were ready. And now, we're pulling that up by about one year. And so, you know, the large office, we will see what we get.
Right, and again, my intent was to try to avoid having to go through the whole cycle to get an ordinance in place, which is time-consuming. We're having the discussion tonight. Seems like there's generally agreement that we'd like to make the supplies generally as possible, but what I'm hearing from staff is, you don't see a way to write a flexible ordinance that could just add those as they become enforceable. Is that, is that correct?
It would be very, very challenging to do.
Thank you. Okay, then I will leave the motion as it is.
Councilmember Niss.
Okay. It's a good motion. I'd like us to go back to why we're really here tonight, and why these people are still hanging out or sticking around, unless you're waiting for our discussion on taxes, and I doubt that you are. So, as I said earlier, I thank you all for coming tonight. It's good to be reminded that we're on the vanguard here in California, even though I worry about the car manufacturers who suddenly have switched their allegiance, and that bothers me a great deal. But this is our opportunity to make a difference tonight. And I think moving it up a year is probably difficult, but I think that we've sent the message that we're serious about reducing our greenhouse gases, we're serious about making a difference, and we're serious about attempting to save as much of this planet for our kids as we possibly can. So, I hope we're getting unanimous on this tonight. I think it's reasonably straightforward. But staff, thank you so much, because I know you've had to confer back and forth, and there were a lot of sticky questions. So, thanks.
Councilmember Tanaka.
Yeah, so, I think, you know, given all the discussion, it seems like everyone's trying to do the right thing, right? We're all trying to get this happening as soon as possible. It's just this practicality issues, and so, I think, to me, I feel good about this. I think this is trying to do the right thing. It may slip into 2021, who'd never know, but it all depends on things outside our control. So, I think, I think the message is really loud and clear to staff. The one thing that, and it's kind of what I was talking about earlier, I think the elephant in the room really is the existing homes, right? It would take us over 100 years for us to make headway, at least to get rid of all of natural gas. And so, I think, earlier, staff mentioned that you guys were open to exploring the concept of maybe expanding rebate program, not just to replace the heat pumps and the water heaters, but to also allow add-ons that were, that are much more cost-efficient. So, I just wanted to ask the maker of the motion if staff, could we put this in the motion for staff to explore this possibility? Just because I think it'll really allow greater adoption of electrification in the city.
What specific language do you want?
To explore using a, I don't want to use a product name, because I don't want to tie it to a certain vendor, but, so, a explorer rebate with a retrofit heat pump, water heater, hooked up to air conditioner.
Right, staff's agreed to do that, I think, but we can put it in the motion.
Okay, thank you.
I would accept that.
Councilmember Koo.
So, staff originally had it for the year 2022. That involved also community outreach and engagement also, right?
That's correct.
So, what is the plan now that it's going to be in 2020? Are you going to do a very quick, how are you going to engage and kind of get the education out and make awareness?
Our community outreach would be occurring no matter what, around promoting the adoption of electric and the benefits of electric, because most of that is geared toward existing rather than new construction. And so, we're trying to educate folks who are, who could choose voluntarily to change out their appliances to all-electric, which is different from the new construction mandate.
And who, and how are you going to do the reach to the new construction? Have you already been doing it for the builders?
Yes, we have, we've engaged them through the technical advisory committee throughout this process.
Okay, thanks.
So, that said, and this is a little risky here, because we're trying to do these sidebars while the conversation's going here, to be responsive, quite frankly, to the council, and it's a complex topic. So, that's really challenging. So, that said, let me try to have this conversation on the record. John, in response, Councilmember, to your point on the outreach and the work ahead, especially as it relates to B, let me see if I've got that correct. Yes, B. If I'm interpreting it correctly, the issue of concern is that, let's say, for large commercial, we don't know that there can be an ordinance in 2020 that addresses large commercial, and just use it as a specific example. So, given that, I'm not sure how we implement B. I think we could implement it if it were for categories of building for which we have a methodology to, and that may not be the right term, but, again, it's categories for which there's a way to get to compliance for an all-electric mandate. But again, at this point, we don't have a confidence level that it will be all categories of building.
What if you modified B to say, mandate all-electric for new construction effective 2020 for which a compliance path exists?
Does that work?
I mean, I think if we just leave it as is, that's, we're going to get that response.
Or we go with what Councilmember Niss had suggested earlier, to go to a 2021, which would give you a little bit more time to have some clarity. I don't know, you tell me. I mean, I get the feeling that you guys feel rushed, and it's a tad bit messy.
Well, the latter part, for sure. And, you know, that said, I think we're sensing and appreciate the sense of urgency from the council.
Yeah, there is an urgency, right?
And so, as such, if we keep it within the timeframe, you know, what I think the revision allows staff to do is to come forward with those pieces that fit within that timeframe. Your earlier question about outreach to the... You know, I think we want to be conscious not only of the work that staff needs to do in drafting the ordinances, but also, as was pointed out in item A or 9A tonight, the ability to then vet those proposed regulations with the community that will be regulated by the ordinance. So I think we will need to build that into the work plan, and I don't know that we have the calendar quite figured out yet. But again, setting this target of 2020 tells us, get as much as you can done within that year, and we'll be reporting it along the way.
I mean, did you have something to say?
Yeah, but I'm just biding my time.
Okay. I was just, I just wanted to add, you know, I mean, I've been getting calls and getting emails, and I don't think enough of the community knows that this is towards new construction. This portion here is about new construction. A lot of them are emailing me about, what am I going to do about heat? You know, I don't want to go to electric, you know? And I know some people might say, you know, get off your gas stove, but it's a big issue for some ethnic groups, you know? So there is a concern there, and therefore I say that, you know, community engagement is very important. One, to let them know it's new construction. Two, is for the public to know that, you know, this is when the timeline is going to come into play.
So John, can you live with what's either revised or any other feedback on that point? And then I would like to touch on E, because I think it, quite frankly, well, why don't we come back to that? Go ahead, John.
So on, thank you. A, what A does is approve the ordinance that's included in your packet, and that includes the recommendation that residential be preferred for all-electric, but also has the mixed-use option. And also in the packet is the, what A responds to is the commercial construction that has the 5% and the 12%. So if you accept A, that's what you're accepting. And so I would, I think, maybe, if I'm hearing this correctly, there is an interest to adopt the all-electric residential and not have the mixed-use option for residential, the mixed-fuel, excuse me, the mixed-fuel option. I thought that's what we were hearing, because we were saying that we can go all-electric on residential. And if that is your interest, I would suggest that one might amend A to say, you know, to adopt the local amendments with the change to require all-electric for low-rise residential by April 20th. I mean, I don't know where the council is going with that, but you could do that tonight, and we can move that piece forward.
Yeah, just to interrupt you, sorry. I don't think we were just saying residential.
I understand. B, so...
That's an increment. I think you're referring to that as an increment, that we do have certainty around.
That's right. And then, thank you, City Manager and Councilmember DuBois. B then speaks to the commercial side of the equation, which we're telling you is a little bit of a black box for us right now, because we don't have the data. And so, you know, I would feel more comfortable, and this isn't exactly how it's written right now, is that I'd like to come back in a year from now to report on what we've learned, what changes have taken place, and commit to, you know, bringing forward ordinances that affect your interest in moving us closer and closer to all-electric for a commercial as well. We just don't know what those options are right now, so we can't really draft an ordinance that reflects that. So B, to me, kind of goes back to our intent to mandate all-electric service for a commercial, because we can capture the residential this evening, if that is what the council's interest is.
Okay, and then if I could, one more point. This is on E. As was noted earlier, in terms of reviewing a specific rebate for a particular appliance, staff can certainly follow up on that. I do want to give due, though, to both the utilities department and to the UAC and the ongoing work, in taking a step back from the specific appliance and, again, trying to channel the earlier discussion by council. What I think this is really attempting to hit at is scalability for existing buildings and a particular dimension of an appliance. But just, again, to do some justice to the work that's ongoing already, I think there's a much more significant effort involved here. One is the appliance and the type of appliances for which we do rebates. Another might be the amount of the rebates, and, you know, what is the financial tipping point for which the consumers will pursue these? And then more significantly, what's the scalability of a rebate program, or what is the program to get to scalability, which really then touches on a question of what are the other barriers to conversion of existing, again, water heaters particularly, but appliances more generally? And again, this is a topic that, quite frankly, it's probably good to refer back to the UAC to really look at the scalability of our existing rebate programs and whether and how it best be focused in order to achieve significant conversion of existing properties. And we've got some thoughts on how that is scaled from the utilities perspective, but again, we're really, I think, talking about the consumer's perspective and what incentives and what barriers exist to that conversion today. So I wanted to note that, that while, you know, again, staff can and will follow up on the specific here, it might be of some value to refer the larger issue of this conversions back to UAC.
Can that be done under the framework of the motion as written?
So, yeah, I think, Adrian, if you were willing, I think, again, capturing the intent, councilmember Tanaka, that we would change E to maybe refer to the UAC to explore rebates for retrofits. Kind of leave it at that. Is that...
Yes, because I think that's better and scalable incentives.
Yeah. So staff slash UAC? So refer to, or ask the UAC, replace E, refer to the UAC to explore rebates for retrofitting. What's that?
Scalable incentives.
Scalable, yeah, rebates for retrofitting existing homes.
The only thing I would ask is just maybe as an example, that's an example. I'm not so hung up on that one, but as an example, that could be one. So maybe you could just put that in as an example, just so that we know what we're talking about here.
So eventually, I'm going to get a turn, I'm sure, but could I just suggest cost-effective? Cost-effective, but does that capture it? If you add that, scalable, comma, cost-effective?
All right. I just wanted, I just threw that as an example, just because I know, like, I just bought a water heater, right? So I'm not going to replace it now. I just bought one, right? So I just know that replacing stuff that's people already bought is actually a big deal. So if there's something that someone could add on and get a lot of the benefits, they're more likely to do it than if they have to throw away all the things they just bought. So that's the point. And so this is just an example. It's only $600, so...
Such as the one that, councilmember, such as the one.
Yeah, I understand that. I don't know that we should be referring to specific products. I mean, there's a little hesitation there, but, yeah.
Such as heat pump water heaters. And then councilmember Cormac is still waiting patiently, somewhat impatiently.
Thank you. I still have some concerns. I don't believe that we have worked with A and B successfully to do what Director Lait mentioned, which was where I was headed. So can we, will the maker and the seconder accept modifying A to have residential use only all-electric starting, I'm sorry, the date you suggested was doable is April?
April.
April 1st, 2020?
April 20th.
April 20th, 2020? Could you just say April? That's a lot of 20s.
May 1st.
April. April works. Comma, April 2020. So I'll just go through, do you want to take them one at a time, or do you want...
Sure, I will accept that. I will accept that. Look, there are different streams of work here.
Yeah, and we need to separate them out. We have to separate them out. This is not working.
Yep, that's fine.
Okay.
So make sure that staff gets this.
All-electric residential new construction in April 2020. Okay. Now I want to talk about ADUs, because if we're talking about residential new, sorry, residential new construction, should we just be abundantly clear? I heard that if we include ADUs, that something might happen, right? There might be ways for us to modify, okay.
So we don't need to rewrite the whole ordinance? You just move D up to there?
Yeah, let's move D into there. Perfect, thank you. So D is now B of A or A2 or whatever it'll be. Great, thank you. And then in B, so would this be, so one part we haven't really touched on, so when we say residential, we're still including multifamily, right? No? Okay.
Low-rise.
All right. So I think we're missing some things here, which we do have cost-effective studies for, right? So we have low-rise multifamily is cost-effective now? Office buildings up to 54,000 square feet are effective now, and retail buildings up to 25,000 square feet are effective now. So we could conceivably put all of these in A, and then have B just be about commercial that's 50,000 and larger.
So what I heard Jonathan Lait, I think what I heard him say was, if we just turn B back to adopting a resolution, the intent to mandate, that would mean they would bring everything back that's possible.
So, but we'll still miss some things that are currently possible.
I think they would be included.
I think there's a gap between residential and commercial, that there's some specificity that we might have an opportunity to work on.
Right. And I think our recommendation is that we use our, the way that the amendment, the ordinance is before you this evening, is that we would encourage all-electric, but we would also allow for mixed fuel until such time that we come back with the ordinance under B, where we would require even more, we would mandate electric for the buildings that we can mandate it for. So you're right, there is a period of time where if you wanted to be, if you wanted to require all-electric for that subset of buildings, we could do that. Again, we're not having a lot of development activity in those areas right now. I don't know that the universe is extraordinarily large, and so, and we have a fix in the code or a plan to address those buildings.
Okay, so we could theoretically comfort ourselves with the idea that even if it's not all-electric, it's still a quite high standard.
It's an exceedingly high standard.
Extremely high standard. Okay, all right. Okay, great, we solved ADUs, not solved, we moved ADUs, we've got April there. And then in B, do you want us to modify it so it just says "commercial"? B now seems not totally aligned with A.
You know, I think B actually is okay. And then it's not too specific, and if there's other areas where we can require more all-electric, then we could explore that.
Okay. And do we want to give the UAC a date, maker and seconder, for working on these rebates, since we all acknowledge there's a lot to do?
I think we let staff manage the schedule of that.
All righty.
Mr. Mayor, just a technical point here. So I think A, little 1, little 1 is an amendment that you're making on the dais to the ordinance that you're going to pass tonight in A. Little 2 is direction to staff. It's not part of the ordinance. So if you would please make that B or E, it needs to be, it's not part of the ordinance you're doing tonight. It's direction to staff to return.
Let's plot A, little 2.
Yeah, so that one goes back to being an E.
Thank you. A, little I, is modifying the ordinance in front of us tonight.
Sort of looks a little wonky with including the following, and then there's one bullet.
Jonathan, I think this is for you. If we are saying by April 2020, if the architect, I don't know if there are any architects here, but knowing how long it takes to design a house and hearing how long it takes somebody to really get this all organized to start it, if something is already designed now but doesn't get started until the summer, does this mean that the architect has to go back and redesign the house so that it's all-electric?
So the way that I'm, thank you for asking that question, because I think it's important to put this on the record. The way that I'm at least interpreting the direction is that, one, you would adopt the ordinance tonight, we would come back with a second reading in December, and in that ordinance, we would stipulate that any project that files a building permit on or after April 20th, or some date in April, would be subject to the REACH code. And for any project that also requires a planning entitlement, this is the pre-planning, started it, whose application was deemed complete prior to April 20th, would be exempt. This would be the pipeline card out. So that gives us between now and April to have notices at the development center, on our website, to give people enough advance notice about those timelines.
Let me ask the litmus test question, I think the former mayor is trying to ask, which is, the construction season is May to October, or something like that. So let's say, I got everything ready to go. I've got my plans, I've approved by the city, I haven't pulled a building permit yet, because construction's not going to start till late, but I'm ready to go today in November. Do I have to go back and change my plans to do all-electric?
So if, a couple of assumptions that I'm taking, you're building a home, you got an individual review approval from the planning department already, then you are in the pipeline, you're exempt from the REACH code. Okay.
I am going to guess, though, that this is going to cause some consternation. Is April going to be late enough? If it were June, would that make it easier for any of the residential designs that are currently in play?
So again, I mean, I think you're touching on the point that staff was originally addressing when we brought forward the ordinance, that we're trying to balance a lot of competing interests in this area. We are able to return, April is as soon as that we can procedurally return, and I guess it's up to the council to decide if, you know, that is enough time for the public to be able to respond to the code changes. But we can be ready in April.
Are you stuck on April?
I think this is fine. It's going to come back to us. If at the time we're not comfortable with April, we can push it out. It's going to come back to us in December for second reading. If we find there are issues that April is coming too soon, we can push that out.
Well, can we change it then, or not?
I'm flexible, a month or two, if that's what your concern is.
Yeah, I'm... What, you can change...
You can change it on a second reading. If you make significant change, it converts it to a new first reading, but yes, it's not passed until the second reading.
By that time, we'll have heard the, I think, the ire of some people who are in that predicament. So that would be helpful. This will definitely get their attention.
And then, if I can offer one other comment, I think the mayor had a comment about the way section A was written, and I agree that having the word "include" and "include" is, there's another way that we can construct that. So to include local amendments but require maybe, except, you know, except to require all-electric residential new construction in April. And so that sets forth in the record that we're accepting the ordinance that was presented to you, but we're making this discreet change to require all of the residential new construction to be all-electric. Okay.
Councilmember Cormac.
Yeah, one more. I realized I neglected earlier when we were talking about new construction. Does staff believe that B includes the definition of what a substantial remodel is?
No. So that was the piece where staff during the discussion indicated they're coming back to us with some work on substantial remodel and other incentives to decarbonize the existing stock.
Yeah, but that was a year and a half, they wanted a year and a half, so I'm wondering if we can move that up.
So we're not specifying that, but if you want to specify it by 2022 or something like that, we can do that.
Will that be later than now?
I'm, I know, but we've given them a favor to do here. And I think staff understands that is of interest to the council, and it will come to us when it comes to us.
Seeing no further lights. Ready to vote? Let's vote on the board, please. And that passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Now, thank you. Now, we have another item on the agenda tonight, and it is, our policy is to review whether we're going to take up things after 10 o'clock at night. It is now 10:15. However, there is no council meeting next week, and so if we were to continue this, the first time we could do it is two weeks from now, and there is a time-sensitive, a time-sensitive component to this. So I think the thing to do is, I know we've been here a long time, but I think we should power forward and take up the next item. Everybody okay with that? Okay. So let us move to the next item, which is regarding polling for a potential revenue generation measure. Is there a staff discussion?
There is a brief one. Let's, let our staff switch out. Oh, there you are. Hello. Come on in.
If I, if I recall correctly, this is referred to us by the Finance Committee, which passed it unanimously. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
As the team pulls up the PowerPoint, good evening, council. I'm Kylie Nizay, Administrative Services Director, and with me, I have two of our consultants that were looking at, to help us with our discussion tonight. Dave Metz, who many of you have seen and heard recently, as well as Charles. Dave is from TB, not, no, I'm getting you guys mixed up. Dave is from FM3, Charles is from TBWB, and they're here to help facilitate this discussion tonight.
Welcome, gentlemen. Thank you for joining us.
Thanks. Okay. So before you this evening, as the mayor noted, is a basically work plan and the administrative actions necessary to execute direction that the Finance Committee provided staff and recommends to the full council in regards to polling and outreach efforts specifically regarding a potential ballot measure and a tax one at that. So as you know, the, I'll move on to the second slide. We've been working with the Finance Committee and the council intermittently since June of this year on a potential ballot measure, and three main components of it would be the analysis, that's us trying to decide and do analysis on what the tax level would be, what the tax structure would be, exemptions, tiers, et cetera. We're not talking about that tonight. That's the green one. What we are talking about tonight are the two to the right, the polling and outreach components associated with the ballot measure. And what staff is proposing is the use of these two firms, FM3 and TBWB, both of which the city has worked with previously, both on business tax measures in 2016, as well as the most recent TOT measure in 2017? Maybe 18? 2018, it must have been 2018. And the Finance Committee has worked through at a really high level an outline for the overall process, which has been worked into the two, the contract that's before the council for approval this evening, and then also provided their guidance on what the initial round of work, meaning the initial round of polling and outreach should look like. So let's move into the timeline. I'm going to go quick tonight, given the hour. Before you is the rough timeline that we talked about at the Finance Committee that is recommended to the full council. In October, the committee reviewed and recommended that framework that I just referenced. Tonight, before the council, are the contracts, the solicitation exemption requests, the budget funding approval recommendation, ooh, my words tonight, and lastly, basically direction to staff to actually execute the initial round of polling and outreach. So that's today. Then between December and January, we'll begin working on, well, rather, November, December, January, we'll begin working on the business and stakeholder outreach, which will be a continuous effort, but with the initial targeting to be done in the December to February timeframe. We'll do our first round of polling in the November-December timeframe, with polling results coming in January and outreach results coming in February. You'll see some of these timelines are a little, some are compressed and some are large. We're trying to anticipate the holidays, so we're not sure about people's availability, let's put it that way. So we're trying to give ourselves some fluctuation within that. As I mentioned, tonight's specific direction is to actually go out and execute the initial rounds, both polling and stakeholder outreach, and then staff would return with those results and further refinement for what round two would look like. Just for context, the council heard a timeline for outreach and community engagement associated with the rail and grade separation initiative. This is just staff trying to overlay those two to show that we are trying to make sure that although on separate tracks, that we are marching towards the same timelines, so that both conversations can continue to inform each other as the council is making their Just at a high level, what the Finance Committee recommends in terms of the initial round of polling, so very specifically what the consultants would help with staff do before we return to council. The initial round of polling is recommended to be really based off the same methodology used in the 2016 Funding Transportation Citywide Voter Survey. At a high level, it's looking at a scan of what's going on, general community sentiment. Are we looking at a general tax or a specific tax, sentiments towards tiers or exemptions? And the committee really focused on wanting a format that would consider trade-offs. So really force the, those that are being polled to look at, and as responders, choose options, as opposed to being able to say, I want all of the above. In terms of the stakeholder outreach, similar again to that 2016 work, and looking at business types of multiple sizes, so we're looking from small as well as medium and large, and then strategically selecting groups and focusing with them on their sentiments towards a potential tax. This is going to have to be a living, breathing, and what staff recommends and the committee agreed to was an ongoing stakeholder outreach effort as we continue to refine our analysis. We don't have, we are not yet at the point from an analysis perspective where we've narrowed the options of a ballot measure enough that I think that we will be able to obtain the detailed feedback from both any stakeholder, whether it be resident or business feedback for, so, let me pause and think my words, choose my words wisely. We, as we further refine our options, we will be able to obtain more clear sentiments from the community. Right now, we have a large gamut of options, and so it'll be hard to test very specific things. And that's the iterative approach that staff is proposing with the committee, so that we can get those general sentiments now, continue the analysis, further narrow the potential measure, any tiers or exemptions, and then go again out to look at that outreach and look at the polling to see what happens once we have narrowed those choices. Also, the intent is to help use this initial polling and outreach to help the council make their choices in making those narrowing decisions. So I guess what I'm trying to articulate is, this is the first shot of many. So this will be an iterative approach over the coming six to eight months. So very specifically, what's before you tonight is a very long recommendation language, but ultimately, it is to direct staff to begin that stakeholder outreach and conduct our initial polling efforts. It's to approve a competitive solicitation exemption for both FM3 as well as TBWB. It's to approve a contract with TBWB, because that does exceed the city manager's authority. And then it is to amend the appropriation ordinance for 2020 to pay for both of these, which is about $179,000. Now, the cost in the contracts, just so that the full council is aware, is not just for the initial round, it would be for both rounds, round one and round two. So please don't think that it's $180,000 for one round of polling and one round of outreach. But overall, that's what we are here for tonight. We have, like I mentioned, our consultants for any additional feedback or questions or comments from the city council, but otherwise, and I don't know if the chair wants to summarize from the committee meeting at all.
Thank you. And I was going to go to the chair of the Finance Committee for, do you want to comment on this?
Yes, I think Kylie gave a good summary. We had a good discussion at Finance. This is, this is an incremental step. I think we see the need for polling and to start business outreach. This is very similar to previous polls the city has done, and it was linked in the staff report, but we just did this in 20, yep. So we just did this polling in 2016. At Finance, we heard from Dave Metz from FM3, I think several of you are familiar with him. They've done multiple rounds of polling for us in City Palo Alto, they did the polling for Mountain View's business tax. So he's quite comfortable, I think, with kind of the high-level goals of an initial round of polling. In 2016, we did two rounds of polling, and so again, this is just that initial set of questions. And in addition, it's, it's starting the stakeholder outreach, which we did not do in 2016, but I think we all agree that's a good idea. I think it's important that we move forward tonight. We wanted to get the results back in 2019. And then the next step would be more detailed polling, as we get more specific parameters of the business tax. We are getting more detailed analysis, so it's going to come back to Finance to talk about the types of taxes and the tiers, and we'll have that discussion and get that back to council. We did pass this unanimously, but we believe it was important enough to put it on as an action item. And given, given how late it is, I'm happy to, I'm sure we're going to have a good discussion, but I'd just like to go ahead and make, move the staff motion.
Actually, you know what? Let me interrupt you there for a second. We actually have a public speaker to this.
Ah, okay.
And let me, let me go to the public first, and then I'll come back to continue. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council. My name is Dan Kostumvater. I'm the Vice President for Tax Policy, SOCON Valley Leadership Group. Once again, pleased to address you about this, this business tax. Again, one of the key criteria that our organization uses in evaluating taxes is that they, local taxes, is that they be special taxes designed for a specific purpose. We believe this increases accountability and transparency and actually helps to build some public, public support for, for taxes. I also want to point out that although there, this may be couched as a small percentage of the total budget, just a reminder that businesses in the city provide a great percentage of the existing revenue. So an additional small increase percentage of the total budget is really going to be a significant increase in the total amount that businesses are paying. And just a reminder that business taxes will be added on to the cost of products and services that the local businesses provide to our community.
Thank you. Thank you. Let me go back to Tom. Go ahead. Please continue.
Yes, I would make the staff motion that we direct staff to begin stakeholder outreach and polling, that we approve the exemption for FM3, the exemption for Terrace Barnes-Walters, and we appropriate the money to move forward with this.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember DuBois, seconded by Councilmember Cormac. Care to speak further in your motion?
Just, just one quick comment. I mean, we did include in the outreach and the polling questions about special tax versus general tax.
Councilmember Cormac, care to speak to your second?
Briefly. I wonder if staff could just put up Slide 4. Very, I think it's absolutely appropriate to have these two firms working with us, and I just want to say that I have never seen a Mondrian chart take all of the time. But thank you very much for adding all of the colors in there. I think it is actually helpful, but it is literally the first time I've served on council that I've seen a Mondrian chart, so thanks for that.
Councilmember Ness.
So let me ask a couple of questions, because we're, this is the pathway to a business tax that we agreed. The reason we're here is we're going to talk about doing polling in order to talk about a tax of some kind that might pass, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Who are our three biggest employers who would be paying those, those taxes? Won't be the city.
It depends.
Won't be the hospital.
It would depend on the tax, honestly. If you did, so the two of the taxes that are, for example, would be, if we did a parcel tax, it would be based on square footage, or a headcount tax would be based on number of employees. And so you potentially could have a firm that has a larger square footage than an employee count, so the top three may be different depending on the base of the tax.
And the city would pay a parcel tax?
Would the city pay a parcel tax? No, we're a government agency, and so we would not contribute to the parcel.
So my, my point being that I think our three biggest employers are not taxable.
It would depend.
One is us, one is the hospital.
Sure.
Yeah.
So depending on the tax structure, you're right.
So I think one of the things, and I don't know if you discussed it in Finance or not, is what, what, how many, how many potential employees are there for us to tax? Do you know?
That's a separate item that's coming back to Finance. Staff is doing a bunch of analysis.
Well, for me to make a decision tonight, I'd like to know that. I find it difficult that we don't know. Secondly, the business climate isn't terrific at the moment, and we're hearing that everywhere. We're hearing that a recession may loom. You know, I know, I know FM well, they do a great job, we've worked with you a lot. I have no trouble with their ability and their expertise and so forth, but when it comes right down to it, as much as I'll, I'll enjoy seeing the results of the poll, I'm not going to vote to do it tonight, because I think it really does lead us right down the business tax path. I'm sorry, there's just one person here tonight to talk about it. But we went through this in 2016, Dave, you remember? At the end of that, we decided not to go forward. I'm, I'm concerned about this, because we haven't yet said, even among ourselves, and maybe you didn't in Finance, how the money will be used. And we're, I'm concerned about that. If we're talking about grade separations, which of course is a special tax, that's very different than putting some more money into the general fund without telling our taxpayers exactly what they're, what they're buying. So I have that hesitation, and I, I am sorry, Finance Committee, I can't support your, your direction.
Councilmember Tonnaka.
So thanks for the Finance Committee's work on this. I just want to ask staff, in this poll that you guys are planning to do, are you guys going to capture some of the demographic information about who you're polling? Okay, so will we know, like, how many residents actually are working versus, like, not working?
Yes, absolutely, Councilmember. That'll be one of the questions we'll ask.
Okay. So we'll, we'll get that, okay. And then will we also know how many of them work here in Palo Alto?
We certainly can.
Uh, we certainly can ask that question, yeah.
Okay, okay, great, thank you. Does this need, need to be part of the motion, or, okay. And then, and then I think the other question I, I'm thinking about is for the residents that work, how many of them find it important to work near where they live, or to try to find work near where they live, right? Or would they rather work in San Francisco or San Jose, right? Um, is that something that, that can be figured out? Because I think that's, because if there's a business tax, especially if it's a significant one, it will drive companies out of Palo Alto to other cities, which makes the residents that live here, they have to work, drive farther, right? Or commute further. So I'm just curious to know, do residents care about that, or are they okay with long And then, um, in terms of, uh, what slide was that? Uh, slide, uh, slide six. I, um, you know, I, I think it's really important that whoever we're taxing does really like strong outreach to them because I think, um, you know, law businesses are, are on the edge, right? I mean, some businesses, like, even though they may be very famous like Tesla, they're not, they lose a lot of money, or tend to lose a lot of money. Um, and so I think, uh, while it may seem, I don't want to give a few million dollars to this company or whatever, it could mean, it could mean a lot, actually, right? It could mean difference of, of being able to stay here in the city or, or not. And, um, so I, I think, I, I think back to, um, what Councilmember Niss was saying earlier, um, I think it's really important to know, uh, like, that we, we do sufficient outreach, especially the people that are going to be paying the tax, especially if they're going to be paying like millions of dollars. I think it's super important that they know, and we should know who that is. And I'm, I'm actually kind of surprised that, that this comes this far tonight and we don't know that yet. So I, I, I don't know, I mean, what, is there, can there, can there be a more comprehensive stakeholder outreach to really make sure the people that are paying like over a million dollars absolutely you've talked to? Because that, that's been like a must, must do, or even, even a hundred thousand dollars to a lot of people is a lot of money.
So I think that's why we're recommending the iterative approach where there's an initial round of outreach where we get feedback on the menu of options that are under consideration currently. Then once that menu is narrowed, we go back for a second round of outreach where those impacts are more clearly known, and we can focus more specifically on those who will be, uh, impacted by the, the option that's being pursued.
Well, I, I guess if, if, you know, if you have an idea of what kind of businesses are going to be affected with the square footage, or headcount, or revenue, or whatever it is, it's going to be one of our larger employers. I think, I think it's important that those folks know that we do active outreach to them, even if maybe at the end we say, well, we're, we're going to exclude VMware, right? Even if we're going to do that, we, you know, they sufficiently know that they're, they're in the area of a target that maybe, maybe they'll have to pay $10 million, right? Or $21, or who knows, right? I think it's important that they know because, um, uh, you know, I, I think they have to figure out, you know, their business, right? And so I think it's gaining, gaining their feedback is really important. And I'm actually, it's kind of unfortunate it's so late tonight, but, um, you know, I, I think this is a very significant, um, decision for our city, and I am, it would have been great to actually have more people here, but I, I realize the lateness of the time. So it's, it's, it's something which really concerns me in terms of whether we, for a topic this is, this important. Because right now, what's, what this is kind of doing is trying to craft, how do we get a ballot measure that passes, right? That's kind of what, what this, this track that's going down. And for the people that are being taxed, we have one person here, we haven't gotten that many emails on this yet. I mean, it's, it's, it's kind of concerning that the, the people that we're looking to tax and get, you know, a ton of money from are not here.
Well, I just want to emphasize that we are on the front end of the outreach.
Understand.
It hasn't begun yet, and I would think that that would elicit some of the feedback that you're looking for.
Well, I, I just think that, um, it seems like it's a bit early. Last point here is, can we go to slide, I guess slide eight? So the, the, the other part that really concerns me is, um, I guess, and now maybe I'll like to ask the folks on the finance committee, um, does this really have to come from our BSR, the Budget Stabilization Reserve? Is there not another place I could take it from so we could remain budget neutral?
No, I suspect the finance committee will point back to me. At this point in time, no, departments have not been budgeted for this work. This was identified on the fiscal sustainability work plan, but it was identified as an unfunded project. And so we are using as much staff resource as possible to cover, um, but in all honesty, we are using consultant work to help keep this track, uh, keep this project on track at this pace.
Okay, well, I, I appreciate, um, your resourcefulness, right? And, and you guys try to roll up your sleeves on this, but I guess my, my, my concern is, it's kind of ironic where, you know, we're, you know, um, we're busting our budget here to, to, um, raise taxes when there's not really a clear need. I haven't, I mean, there's a lot of things to spend money on, of course, and having tens of, dozens of dollars is also nice to have, but, I mean, there's also a looming recession, and you have a massive trade war. We have, you know, vacancy rates in the industrial park, that's our, our, our double digit now. We have rising vacancy rates here in the city as well. I, I mean, I just wonder, like, what's the wisdom of this, doing this now versus kind of getting our ducks in a row, really making sure we know what the money is for, really making sure that the people that we're taxing actually know about this. And that, like, um, we have this budget, so why not do this when, at a time when, when we have it more together? And, you know, it sounds like also if, if we went at a slower pace, perhaps, we could, Steph would actually have more time to actually work on it, we wouldn't have to spend as much on, on consulting time. So I, I'm kind of concerned about that as well in terms of the aggressiveness of this, of this action. And taking money from our BSR, especially when there's a recession upcoming, right? It seems like we should be sucking away money, not taking money from our reserves. I mean, that's what I would think in terms of a prudent thing to be doing, right? If we were in a deep recession, okay, then you take money out of the BSR because we have no choice. But we're, you know, still, haven't hit the recession yet officially, and so should we be building our reserves first, or just keeping it even versus like drawing it down? I mean, I, I, I wonder, what is the wisdom of that, of, of, of draining our reserves during a boom time? So I, I, along with Councilmember Niss, I, I find this very troubling.
Vice Mayor Fine.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much for the report. So like my colleagues, I do share some concerns about the purpose, parameters, and people around this action. So on the purpose, I think we do have questions about what we want to spend this money on, what's the purpose of the tax. On the parameters, what type of tax? There's a lot of open field there, and to use the term people, I, I'm also worried there are businesses here, and every business I talk to, I try to alert them to this, that this is happening, and they should be involved, et cetera. That said, I think there's a reasonable argument that we can at least explore and pull for a business tax. And the part I'm frankly a little more, I don't want to say excited, but interested in seeing is some of the business outreach work. And we've pushed really hard and specifically for that on the finance committee because Councilmember Tanaka, we do want businesses involved, and to date, they haven't been as involved as we would like them. And, you know, there's still a potential outcome here that we here, you know, are done for businesses, and they are very anxious and worried about this, and, you know, there's no way in hell they're going to do this. And we may hear that, and that's good information for us to get and get some more cards on the table, and that's what I see tonight's action as doing.
Um, just real briefly, I, um, so I, I concur that the outreach, I think, is really important, right? And I'm, I'm glad to see that that's built into this contract because, I mean, there is, this costs more than just doing polling, right? And I think the outreach is, so I think that's actually very important. The, uh, as for the proceeds and so forth, you know, we had a lot of discussion about that, and how's it going to be used and so forth. And, you know, my personal view is we're going to need this in order to grade separation, and that's the driver. And I personally am not going to support if it, if, six months from now, so those of you, right, six months from now, we say, well, we want to use this for general purposes and pay for, you know, this and that and the other thing, I'm personally not going to support it. I think we need to do grade separation. I think that's the driving, the driving thing here, and we're going to need to make a contribution to that. Third, and, and, you know, if, if we don't do this, essentially, we're going to kill it now, okay? And I think it's premature to say, you know, we're not going to have a business tax component of the grade separation effort, you know? We may make that decision after the outreach, okay? But, but I think it's premature to do that. So I think we should proceed with this tonight. Councilmember Coop.
I'm going to pass. He just said what I was going to say. It's premature. Thank you.
Seeing no further comments, would you vote on the board, please? And that passes five to two with Councilmembers Niss and Tanaka voting no.
Fiscal concern.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Um... (laughing) With that, we move on to councilmember questions, comments, and announcements. I have a like from Councilmember Coop.
Um, so Councilmember DuBois and I have introduced a colleague's memo that would address, um, tenant protections for tenants against, um, evictions due to AB 1482. I think that's all I'm going to say about it, and I'm going to let Tom say something and/or Molly.
So, thank you, Councilmember Coop. So, um, did you have something to add?
I just wanted to clarify that this is just meant to be an emergency ordinance between now and the end of the year because some things have been happening.
Right. And, um, so the two councilmembers have sent a draft to staff. Our normal procedure would be we would bring that to council, and there would be direction from the full council before any substantive work was done. But in this case, the intent is to take an urgency action that would put in place some protections only for a few weeks until January 1, when the state law AB 1482 comes into effect. And that purpose would be defeated if we took an additional meeting then to get direction from staff and come back, because really by then we would be into December. So I'm, just want to alert the council that I'm going to take the unusual step of actually working up an ordinance that council could consider that night. You, of course, don't have to do that. You can not take that item up or do what you will with it, but we'll do that, go ahead and do that preparation work so that you, if you do choose to act on an urgency basis, you'll be able to do that on the 18th. And so that, that staff has discussed with the mayor, city manager and mayor have identified November 18 as a day that that item will come to council.
Thank you, Molly. Thank you.
Councilmember Niss.
So it seems as though we've been remiss, Adrian and I, in not reporting on our trip to Albi, France, the sister city that we've been with for 25 years, but no one had been there in quite a while. So let me say upfront, Adrian and I paid our way totally. There was, I don't believe anything was comped or, or so forth. Just so it's on the record, this was on us. It is a wonderful city to visit. It's A-L-B-I, pronounced, we think, Albi. I'm not sure we really got close. And as Adrian said, and I think it's very true, it's kind of like a midwestern city because it's in the middle, it's not on the, it's not on the, on the water, it's not down in the Riviera, it's not Paris. And I, my understanding is that when they chose it 25 years ago, they chose it for just that reason. They said they wanted a really safe place for kids to go on those, on the exchanges that still take place. So they have been very successful. They could not have been a nicer, more welcoming group. Not a big city, it's about 55,000, um, very much the same type of situation that you've heard about with many of the European countries. Very high taxation, very high number of social services. When I asked about the homeless, they said, kind of, what homeless? What, tell us about homeless. Because everyone who wants, uh, someplace to live is provided that through social service, universal healthcare, childcare, et cetera. That's, you know, that's, that's the plus and the minus. So, um, just wanted to tell you that, and Adrian, you may want to add something to it.
Thank, thank you. Just, just really briefly, a few things that stood out to me. One, Albi was really interested in rekindling the student exchange, and, and one of the things they come up against is that Palo Alto teens have a hard time devoting a couple weeks over summer to actually go there and going on exchange and, you know, live with a French family, and that, that was kind of enlightening. Two, although it's a city of similar size, they have 20% unemployment, and when we left, the mayor actually gave me a package to deliver to Tesla and addressed, addressed to Elon Musk, right? And they are trying to look for some kind of partnership where, you know, they've got people who do transportation engineering and building buses, and they're, they're looking for stuff. So the economic situation is, is really quite different. The other thing is they're also working on a bike and pedestrian bridge.
Well, we'll all say something briefly then. So last week, Chantal Gaines from staff and I were in Souchura, another sister city of ours, along with several members of neighbors abroad. It is, this year is the 10th anniversary of our sister city relationship and actually the 25th year of the student exchange, uh, which forms the, you know, really the, the core of the relationship. So they have a couple of, of city initiatives that, that, that I think dovetail well with ours. One is an initiative to promote, promote more cycling and, and use of bicycles, although much of that is for tourism as opposed to commuting. Um, and they also have a major city effort on waste reduction and composting, and their, their approaches are a little bit different from ours. One of the, one of the characteristics in that country is they actually burn their wa, burn their trash before, before they landfill the ashes. And so they recycle, Souchura is beginning to do composting, and, and the rest, and the rest is burned. The other thing that I would say is they would love to have tourism from California, right? It's a nice place. It's, it's a little under an hour north of Tokyo by Super Limited Express, and so it makes a good day trip from Tokyo, and there's stuff to do there. If you go at the right time in October, which we did, uh, their big annual shindig is the Souchura All Japan Fireworks Competition. And, uh, you know, I will, I'm spoiled for all other fireworks, fireworks displays in the United States after that. It is very, very impressive. And so if you like blowing things up, you know, I strongly recommend this. Okay.
Eric, maybe you can form a tour. Every October, we all, you know, you get a bunch of people to go.
I think that, I think that'd be cool. Finally, seeing no further lights, um, we're going to adjourn the meeting tonight, but I want to say that, uh, earlier today, uh, one of the members of our police department, Sergeant Tony Becker, was injured, uh, during a pursuit of a bank robbery suspect who was in fact captured. Sergeant Becker's injuries are not life threatening, but it will take him some time to recover. And so as we adjourn, I want to wish him a speedy recovery and good health. Thank you very much.